Written on it.
Maybe.
Probably.
Yeah. All right, I'd like to welcome everybody to our special council work meeting. First and only item we got is item two point one discussion relating to the proposed Olympia National Development Agreement. Who's got this, Chase?
Well, it's got my name on it, but this is a special meeting that the council requested to negotiate some of the terms and conditions of the development agreement for Olympia. That being said, because this is your special meeting, you can obviously call this to order, end it anytime you want, include any additional discussion items that you'd like. You have the developer here at the table today to participate in those discussions, which is kind of a break from our traditional procedure of special work meetings or work meetings in general. So that being said, this is the beginning of the council meeting, I know that the developer has some items that they would like to discuss. But the council can do those in any order they want, or if at all, and we're here to have staff to simply assist.
So, council members and there, we have the list on the board of things that we're looking at. Do you guys wanna just start going through that list, or do you want, is there something else you wanna do first? Or do you wanna just start going over the MDA? Through order?
If, if I might, maybe, cuz we didn't create the list, I think, Mr. Button, maybe you might ask him what the list represents?
Please.
Yeah.
So, these five bullet points are take, well, the first three are taken from the list that I received from council membership about the items that he thought were most important to, to discuss tonight. They're consolidated, there were, I think, ten items if I remember right on the email. They've mostly centered around, centered around the first three. The second two are items that we have talked about in our smaller groups, in our working group meetings, and need to come to some resolution on how to deal with the final two items. So, those are ones that I've added, just to try and get a consensus, if you will, on those. So, I'm happy to walk through those, but I'm also happy to let you guys go through it however.
But that's a direct response to the email that we all received from council membership of the list of concerns.
Email is, is the place to start, there's a ton of other smaller things that's been from the council.
Oh, absolutely.
Big mark baby. That's a big one, the humidity's.
Just so that we don't lose track, could you write phasing up on the board for me?
Who's not handwriting this up?
It's, uh, it's my.
It's over here.
You should strive.
I wasn't intending to write everything up there, those were just.
Just, just the points that we don't forget to talk about, I would hate to forget about something.
You want me to write benchmarks and key? That be enough of a reminder?
It's rather good.
Yeah, you're right.
He's nervous and we're gonna see his writing.
Very good, good job.
It's going off.
All right, where do you guys wanna start? You guys wanna start, go down the list, or you guys wanna start somewhere else other than units?
So part of me feels like this is an algebraic equation, right, and there's lots of variables.
Right.
And so, almost like if you, if you know what one of them is, you can solve for the other two, right, or other three, or whatever it is. And so, it's almost like if you're trying to solve all of them at once, you can't, right? You need a starting point to say, okay, here's the thing, here's, here's a place we can start from, and then if we're gonna make a movement over here, maybe this impacts this a little bit, and then get those, and then we do something else, and that maybe impacts the other one a little bit. Feels like if we were talking about units, the number is currently six thousand three hundred and thirty units. If I'm just echoing what I heard in the, uh, council meeting the other night, there were questions about, in our typical MDAs, we have a density calculation based on acreage, right? So you take the number of units, times the acreage, you get, sorry, units divided by acreage, you get a gross density per acre. In this case, we're not applying that number. So it, it questions whether or not as land use, land uses change, essentially, the impact of the agreement, the way it's written, is that it just would increase or decrease density in certain areas based on how those things expand or contract. I guess that the question is, is do we feel like that's a good way to do it, feel like that's the right way to do it? And then, um, kind of an understanding of, you know, where your position is on that, is this something that's a negotiable item that you guys are willing to, to move on? And what would it take to have you move that kinda stuff? So, that's a lot of questions, but I don't.
Is there also the question about the makeup of those units, is that something?
Yeah, the composition of the units was something I, I did bring up. I, I was corrected partly in that some of the earlier drafts of the county's MDA had the single-family unit count at about nine hundred, the individually plotted single-family homes. Right near the end, as they were negotiating, apparently, that was changed to the nineteen hundred units, so that what is currently incorporated in the draft MDA is reflective of what the final parts of the county's agreement was, the nineteen hundred single-family. So yeah, the composition of the units, the total unit count, and how that impacts density, I think that's, those are probably the topics we need to hit on.
Position and unit count, what was the other one?
And, and how it impacts density, right?
All right, so just maybe to get started, can you, in regards to try to do your best to answer some of those questions, give us kind of a start as to where, what we're looking at as of right now?
Yeah, no problem. So, Steve is correct, our current entitlement allows for six thousand three hundred and thirty, um, units total. We, we're comfortable with that number, that's what we would like to continue with. We've kind of talked about at the very beginning when we started meeting with Harriman, that that wasn't a number that we really were interested in negotiating. I mean, there's always a way, I guess, to talk about that, but it's usually if there's some, something the city has to give, you know, in that sense. It hasn't really been something that we have ever really tried to negotiate against, um, cuz we've been just trying to solve a lot of different issues regionally in the area. So, I don't really think that's probably a talking point at this point, we have traffic studies completed, a lot of analysis has been completed. At this point, if we were to change that, then it's quite a ripple effect of the information that we need to be prepared. So I think, I think we're pretty well there as far as unit counts and the composition of units.
Is that just off the bubble, the composition is that, we're just going off of that bubble line that we've seen so far?
Yeah, so the composition is spelled out in the MDA where it talks about that we've gotta have a minimum of thirty percent of the units have to be single-family homes, and then no more than, I can't remember the exact number, Chase is scrolling down to it now.
Thirty-seven.
No more than thirty-seven percent can be apartments, and, and so then, you know, you're, you're in a range there. So, I believe that's basically a copy and paste from our, um, our current development agreement on the property. So, um, I don't know what else to say to that issue.
I know, I know one of the questions I asked as we worked through this, this process, I asked it in the meeting, and I'll just reiterate it now for those that weren't in that particular room, but I asked Ryan the question of, of that number, the six thousand three hundred and thirty. You know, I didn't wanna sit here and, and play this back and forth, you know, negotiating game to where, you know, one of us felt like that, you know, they either came away with the win or not. So the real question I asked Ryan was, is how many units do you think you can build? Is that number a realistic number, because it doesn't really do any, any of us any good to, to have a number in there that isn't somehow based, at least on some calculation. That's for them on the planning side, and also us on the planning side. Because again, as we, as we go through this, this process of review, I think we as a city need to, again, know what the reality is out there. And, and Ryan's answer to me was, when I asked you that question, what'd you tell me, Ryan?
We're there, we can use them.
And that's, that's basically barring any, well, major land changes within there, but as the plan currently stands today, and there's some things that are up in the air, but that's, that was, you know, Ryan's response, because, and again, if that's, if that's the number that they think they can do, then I think that that is obviously a valid point, starting point, and for at least additional discussion. But I certainly understand from their side too, that, one, they have an entitlement for that many units currently under the, the county's plan, and honestly, if I was, you know, in their shoes, I wouldn't wanna change that a whole lot. But there's a lot of other things, like you mentioned, Steve, that have been talked about around that, and some of the other things, and how those, how that affects the numbers, but I just wanna say that that was a question that was asked, and that was the answer that was given at that particular time.
So let me, I just wanna link to one part of that, is our initial entitlement was for over nine thousand units. So, the project's been reduced by a third, this will make for a better project, if you look at the density ranges on what the land use plan permits, if you take the low number on every one of those ranges, we would use all of our units on the low range. Does that make sense? What, meaning our neighborhood, neighborhood areas go with four to eight units, so if I end up doing eight in some area of that, and some areas are gonna have to be lower than four, I'm gonna use too many units. So we're gonna have areas where, um, again, I know it sounds scary to have a couple thousand apartments up there, but again, that, if you cluster those in the right areas that are next to the major roads, then it means the rest of the units are larger, the lots are larger. And so, in some ways, that's beneficial to increase those densities, and you get a good mixture of units that way. So, that's, that's how we've kind of looked at it, and feel very confident that those numbers are viable. Again, as we talk about open space and commercial, all these things dovetail into each other, I totally understand, and it's really hard to only talk about unit makeup without talking about the supporting open space, or supporting, supporting commercial, and some of those other.
Let me, let me make this point though, it's the, it's because the MDA is written the way it is, that allows you to forecast that you can build those units. I mean, if this was traditional zoning type of things, or, you know, we had so much density in this area, and so much density in this area, you couldn't necessarily move all those units around if some of your land use plans changed. Because of the fact that we don't have a unit maximum in your most dense areas, you just keep piling them up, I mean, you, ten-story buildings, right, I mean, that's, it, it, there are elements of this that just make it so that you can build all those units, no matter what you do. I think the concern is, is it's six thousand three hundred and thirty units, if a trailhead doesn't come in, and there's no Utah State University, and there's whatever the commercial number you have right now is. If the commercial increases, if Utah State comes in, if a trailhead happens, if some park amenity, or civic amenity, or a hospital, or a police station, if any of those things come in, you still get six thousand three hundred and thirty units. If you sold off a piece of the development to somebody else, you'd still get six thousand three hundred and thirty units. That, that's, it's just, I, I think that's where the concern comes in, is that there's no, there are no limiting factors whatsoever that prevent you from building literally almost any density in some parts of the project.
The majority.
There, there, there are, Steve. Well, no, in some areas, I mean, there, there are limits to density, there are limits to density in, uh, everything except for the, was it the village center and the town center, can you pull that up?
Village center's limited.
Yeah, nine to twenty, and then the, the town center is no limit, yeah. Right, so in those areas, I mean, it's an unlimited amount of density. So theoretically, I'm just saying, i- if you're moving along through your, you know, phase one, phase two, phase three, and you get over to phase four, and you still got three thousand units left, you could put three thousand units in that little space. No, I, I'm, I'm just saying this theoretically, now that's, there's market forces that come into play, there's what the demand is, you know, I don't know that you're gonna find a lot of people wanna live in ten-story condo buildings.
I don't think our code would allow for that, it really allows certain height anyways, so.
I think, ten, ten story I believe is the max in that red area for the ZIGA.
Yeah, yeah, ten stories, right, so, um, I'm, I'm not exactly excited about how all of those things add up in a worst-case scenario. And I think that, although I, I understand the desire for flexibility and moving things around, I, I think that, I don't think we're being unreasonable or unjust in saying, what are the, what are the conditions in the MDA that prevent this from being a shitshow at the end, frankly? Like, ten-story condos on U-111 by the mine is a disaster, like, nobody wants to see that. And frankly, if you guys build it, you're stupid, right, nobody would want that. But the fact that it could be built is concerning.
So, um, Steve, what's yours, what would you wanna see to help that be mitigated?
My first suggestion is, I think we need to limit the stories on any building in this development, so no more than five. And if you're gonna have your big condo, or apartment buildings, or whatever, they just can't go over five stories, I mean, there's nothing that size in the whole city anywhere, that's.
Would you, would you say that's, um, also in regards to commercial, or just in residential buildings?
I don't know that there's any commercial buildings over five stories that I know of in the Southwest Valley, I mean, other than the, other than the Larry Miller Building at, um, Jordan Commons, I don't know any other buildings that are over five stories.
Just, I'm asking, I'm asking this question.
Yeah, I, I would say both, yeah.
That's, that's what you would say is?
I, I would just say, especially when it comes to the residential unit aspect, at least there's some limiting factor, right? That you can't just build unlimited, but there's at least something in there that says, if you're not using your units as you're going, you don't just get to dump all of them with no limits.
At the very.
Farther down the project.
And the design guidelines, and, you know, the parking requirements, setbacks, and, to your point, market forces, I mean, if I built a ten-story building there, and there's not demand for it, it, it isn't gonna work, right? So nobody's gonna make that kind of investment.
I'm definitely willing to talk about the ten-story issue.
The, the normal version on apartments, if I can, is that most people are building in with five over two, it's two-level podium with five levels of sticks and bricks, and that's driven by economics and fire code. So the normal, the normal number that you see is a, is a eighty-foot, five, uh, sorry, is, yeah, is an eighty-foot, five, seven-story, it's, it's two over five, that is the standard, I mean, that's the standard template, you see it all the time as, from the fire standpoint, it's two over, it's five over two.
Just, I don't know what that means, but.
Five-story residential over two levels of parking.
Or two levels of podium, it's called, Eric can explain it better than I can.
Well, if you build the two out of concrete, you can build five out of wood over the top of that. Once you go over five, then it changes the structure.
And nobody goes past that. Economics, it changes the fire code, so that's why most, most cities you'll see five over two.
Okay.
I'm just giving you, I just, I'm trying to explain it, I'm not arguing for it.
We're sitting right next to the freeway in Draper right now.
Yeah.
So, so.
That's kind of the economic sweet spot.
You're suggesting that, that if this five-story limit really isn't a big curb, cuz you can't really build anything above that?
No, I'm suggesting it's five over two, so it's a total of seven stories. It's seven stories with two of them being what's called podium based out of concrete, and sometimes it's got retail, usually it's got, mostly it's got retail in the bottom now, and then parking somewhere, and then the, the top, the bottom two stories are a mix of retail, parking, and a different type of apartments or office. And then the top five stories are wooden construction, and they are apartments. So all I'm saying is five is a number that, I don't know anybody that uses five, uh, for heights, it's quite common to use either three or seven, uh, for heights in most zoning codes for residential.
I have a proposal.
I'm just saying that the apartments I've lived in, they're all three stories tall, right?
It's because they can make them out of wood.
So, let me make a proposal that's maybe happy medium, what if we said if it's strictly residential, it's capped at five, and if it has a mixed-use element, then it can go up to seven? Something like that be agreeable?
Well, let me, let me just say what I'm, I'm trying to articulate what I see as the problem. My, the, the one solution I, I offer, I, I'm just suggesting there's a, there's no limits, right? It's build whatever you want, as much as you want, wherever you want, and I'm not saying that's, that's, that's a little flippant, and I, I don't mean it exactly that way.
I think that's the point, the height, to me, is.
So, I, I, I think the issue is not necessarily, from what I can understand, and in all honesty, in my, in my opinion, the issue is not necessarily specifically the unit count overall, it's the unit count in any particular area, and seeing a, some sort of stability that we can have a guaran- guarantee, guarantee that we're gonna have roughly that in that particular area. So when we go back to the land use map, um, what, you know, what we're looking for, or at least what I think we're looking for, and what I'm looking for, is something more that clarifies that, hey, in this area on the west side that shows us neighborhood, um, how do we know it's gonna be actually neighborhood and, and not clustered neighborhoods? Does that make sense? So how are we avoiding clustering density into the west end of the project because we just didn't use it, as opposed to, uh, just giving a free-for-all to say, okay, down the road? Now, there might, I'm sure there's ways that we can, we can figure out how, how to do that, um, whether it be, um, what I've seen done before is where you have to keep your density within the pods as they're designated on your land use pad, or you have to keep it within the phase, or something like that. I think what that would do is that would give some measure of comfort to this body, saying, hey, look, we just wanna make sure that down the road, we're not running into a situation where now all of a sudden we have all of the density all down at one end.
But if there's a limit to the percentage of units that you could build in any one particular phase?
Like of the total count?
Right, you have four phases, right? You've got sixty-three hundred units, and we put a cap on the number of units that you could build in any phase, so we say you can't build four thousand units in a single phase, I mean, I don't know, I don't know what the magic number is, but you can't build, I, I don't know, right?
It's probably easy to work around that if they wanted to.
I, I'm sure it is, right, but at least it spreads it out, right? And, and I don't know that that's, again, I don't know that that's the right plan either, right? Cuz I'm thinking, if you're gonna take a whole bunch of apartments, and they're way over on the west side, and you're clustering a thousand units over there, right? It spreads out the rest of the units, you get, I mean, I, I think I was doing the math the other day, that if you put a thousand units on a hundred acres, the rest of the project would be three and a half units an acre.
I think that's actually his point, it's gonna surprise people then to say this, but I, I don't like the idea of the limit per phase, because then there you are just spreading it out, and it's.
There's no clustering of it, right?
It's the unit, and it's basically army workers, right?
Right.
There, there's no differentiation if we, it makes more sense to put some of the heavy stuff in certain areas, it's red, red stuff, but we need some limit to the units, rather than you say, well, we didn't use them, we're gonna stack them all there, and do whatever you want. And we need to have some amount of certainty, flexibility is great, but your flexibility is our uncertainty, and we need to have some certainty.
Well, I think the proposal in terms of some of the, the building heights are going to.
Limit some of that.
They're going to cap that, by, by doing that.
Maybe, I, 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 I don't know, I'm not.
Well, certainly, certainly if you.
I'm not a builder, I don't know, I can't look at two acres and go, I don't know how many are given.
But, but certainly if you.
Realistically, it's probably seven and ten.
The point is, it's certainly.
Stories, I mean, it's.
Probably not.
I mean, once, once you get to that height, what, what's the difference?
Or, my, my point is.
What if it's, okay, then let me ask this question then, instead, sorry, just instead of the phasing, what if it was a situation where you said, okay, instead of spreading it out, you need to concentrate it in a couple places?
That's what I'm getting at.
That you say, you need to build this, this many units, and it has to be only in this area.
We wanna know that that's where it's going, so that it's where it can get infrastructure to.
So, so go ahead, you had, you had a comment.
Well, what you keep saying, Steve, is the west end, the west end, the west end, and I, I'm just curious.
You're saving it up, sorry, that's, that's, that's what I.
And, and what I'm hearing is you may be more comfortable with that density, kinda like you're saying, in that town center core, not as much on that west side next to U-111. Is that?
No, 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 all I was saying was that, that's your last phase, I'm just saying, I don't want you to save it till the end.
Right. But if you were to create a, a cluster of density anywhere, it wants to be around that town center by, you know, our design standards, and the division, and all those things, right? I mean, if we were looking at those two areas, which one would want to have more density, it would be that one.
I think it would be by a hundred twenty-sixth, thinking one eleven, right? I mean, that makes sense, and if it was this area where, you know, where you have the huge park in the middle.
Good guys get the green one, by the way.
Um, as long as there's no blue.
The blue one, that one's the green one.
That's the one, I'm colorblind, like, that's blue.
Hey, you don't, you don't look into it like that, that's not how.
Sorry, so what I would say is, it, it would make sense, and if I'm, I'm, I'm kinda thinking as I'm talking here. So where, where you have the main intersection, and you have the, the big, you know, central parks, that's what I keep calling it, right? Yeah, that seems like an area where it would make sense to put a, a large concentration of units, right? Um, maybe it's, I don't know, maybe it is a thousand units there, I don't know, where it's a bunch of apartments, and it's, it's a, you, you know, a really dense area, I, I don't know what the magic number is, but. That way, cuz I, I literally did this math, if you took, if you took a thousand units and put it on a hundred acres, the rest, if you took the rest of the fifty-three hundred units and put it over the rest of the eight hundred and thirty acres, you get three point eight units per acre, right? So, I mean, there's ways to, to dilute it out, but in order to make the, a lot of it less dense, you need to have concentrations.
So let me just throw out another idea, just to consider, maybe this makes sense, what if we did the concept of up to seven stories in this core, we can call out these pod numbers that are listed here, just as a reference, and then anything, you know, I don't know, we could pick a point.
It's the, it's the breakpoint on the topo.
Yeah, it's the break, yeah.
See, obviously, the break is right there.
There's a breakpoint right here in the topo, and we say that any of these areas can't exceed five stories. That would be an option, again, that, that encourages us to cluster here, where it makes the most sense, to your point, and then we're tapering off as we come here. We like the idea of sum up in here, because we've talked about the idea of, of having kind of a resort up there, with a trailhead up there, I think it could make a cool spot for a hotel, if we can get somebody up there, uh, for events and whatnot, and so, um, I don't really wanna go below five up there, but, I mean, if that's a.
Deal killer for somebody, then we could talk.
Yeah, the height, to me, just doesn't matter.
Yeah, I would.
What we wanna look at is some real, I know that's not what you guys want, you probably want some real ways to limit, to limit. So that doesn't all end up like Steve said, okay, we haven't used them, we're gonna dump them all here, I think, and it makes sense, infrastructure, right? Thing I've been saying for years now is that the more density you put out, less, the more that compounding factor is on the rest of the infrastructure. I mean, the, a better, better way to address that, at least from our perspective, would be to limit the number of units in, in those areas.
So it's almost, it's almost not by phase, it's by zone.
Yeah, I'm kind of, yeah.
Because the, but the height actually works.
But the, but the height actually works.
And I don't care, I don't care if it's ten stories high, if, because it's, to me, the quality of life is what, is what I care about, is what I believe the residents care about, right? And if we can do it in a way that better, just better fits the infrastructure, or potential infrastructure, that, like, that's what we, I think, we, in the city, we need to act here. And limiting that on the west side will help.
You should know we keep talking right now.
There's two, well, there's two, there's, what I'm gonna suggest is this, the, the typical, one of the typical ways to limit the number of units is perhaps, is precisely by limiting height, because if you've got, it, it just, it's just math, if you can't do the height, then you can't put those extra units up there, so that's a classic way to do it. The other way to do it, if Ryan's interested, is it would be to create a, uh, a, another, we could call it like west-side town center, where the density on those pods to the west would be somewhat lower, uh, so you could maybe take that density down, uh, and so it's not unlimited, is my point. So you could take it so it's not unlimited on the. So you could take it, so it's not unlimited on those three pods to the west, which seems to be what your concern is, is stacking all this density on the back.
Nathan just made this, that same suggestion, cause I think, I think the concern.
Okay, well, great minds work alike.
The concern is, is that obviously if you're building and that, those are the last phases, then you're gonna try and cram whatever's there. So just, let's figure out what a cap is for those three, because that's really the limiting factor.
Can I, can I tell you?
Allow, allow that other, I guess, flexibility within, especially if they can get a higher concentration. At the, at the transit corridor and then allow that to continue to develop. And once they get out there and they brush up against where we have those caps at. They're, they're gonna be limited regardless at that point.
Let me say one other thing about this, cause this'll tie into a, a commercial conversation, right? I think that a concentration of density actually better serves a, a commercial component, right?
No question.
Yeah. You put fifteen hundred units in a small area, that's, you know, five or six thousand people that can all shop at one grocery store, that's, you know. There's some, there's some thing, yeah, without getting in the car, right?
Before we get way too far down this road, cause there are some actual, you know, we, we've thrown out a suggestion, let's hear what you have to say in regards to that.
Well, I just wanna understand, so I know there's some concern about, I'm hearing this area, these two red areas here, because they have the unlimited density.
Let me just restate this.
Okay.
My concern is, is that units would be saved. Based on, you know, market demands, whatever's going along.
Whatever reason.
And then, yeah, whatever it is, and then at the end, and the, and that's the only reason I'm saying the west side, that's the only reason, is at the end, you could dump them all there.
Okay.
That's what, we don't, that's the.
So do we wanna come up with a number, a total number of units per acre, right? So this is twenty plus units per acre, do we wanna come up with a number that we cap these two red areas to make sure that we can't do that? I, is that, would that resolve the issue?
I, I think in a lot of ways, it would go a very long way to doing that, yes.
How many acres of, of that town center do you have in this picture? I know, I know it's a cartoonist drawing, but what, what do you anticipate?
Town center by the U one eleven, one twenty six.
Well, just any of the red.
Oh, I'm sorry, actually you meant town center.
Calculated, it's gonna take.
Five minutes.
Five minutes.
While, while Eric's doing it, could I, could I point out one thing, Clint? It's, it's, people equate dollars. I'm sorry, doors with necessarily with dollars and saying you're gonna put all the units in there. It's not really correct because not every door is equal to every dollar. And when you get to the end here, the odds are it's gonna make more sense for, for a bang for the buck basis. To not cram little units in there. It's gonna make more economic sense. In, in many ways, it's self-correcting because it's not the doors that count, it's the dollars that count. So you're not gonna see a, a ten-story, three-hundred-square-foot apartment. Because you don't make any money off a ten-story, three-hundred-square-foot apartment. Uh, so it does have a self-correcting impact on the backend. But I understa- I think that's not to diminish, that's not to diminish the concerns that you have.
I don't disagree with that. I think what I've heard expressed here is that there's just really no language in there to ensure. That that self-correction really happens.
Sure, there's an, an easy solution.
Just in case the self-correction doesn't happen, right? So the invisible handle is those to the pods.
So what if we capped that, I'm just gonna throw out a number, at twenty-five units per acre? That's a, that's not a very dense apartment density. Um, I know a lot of projects around the city are at twenty, um, so that, that would be a little bit more dense, but not much.
Technically three pods.
So which, which, which area is the?
Little pod.
These three red ones, right?
Yeah, those three red ones.
There's that.
Thirty-five point eight.
Thirty-five acres there, what about by the U one eleven? So.
This area up here?
That area from the topo down is ninety-two.
This is ninety-two acres?
Yeah, point one.
Which is where you want the high density.
And that's also where commercial is. So again, if we, if we call this area, we can change it to a different shade of red, we'll call it town center west, or.
Yeah.
Town center west, that's awful.
Okay.
Well, uh, just, it's, this is designation, whatever. We'll come up with a name.
It's kinda interesting.
Yeah, I love the round resort area.
Around U one eleven, those ninety acres, it's eight, so just the twenty acre, or twenty units per acre. You know, you've got five, that's eighteen hundred units, so you only have five hundred and forty-two apartments left to spread.
Over the rest of it.
Over the rest of it.
Right.
Right.
Which again, to be honest, we don't wanna do twenty units per acre right here, like, that's where you want to do increased density and have more urban town center. In that location, so. And that's what I'm telling you, that we're gonna do higher than twenty in some of these areas here, which means we have to come off. Everywhere else.
That's Steve's point, that when you eat it up, uh, i- i- there's not that much left over, so it'll, as I say, it's a self-correcting in many ways.
We just want the, we just want the reassurance in the M D A's and it's, yeah.
So let's, let's.
Want the language to allow or to enable the self-correction to take place.
In the interest of the comments that our residents have made, I don't think self-correction is really an option.
Yeah, I, I, we understand, I understand. We, we, I understand the difference between practicality of putting it in line writing, a trust but verify kinda thing.
Yeah, I think that's good, and I think it's also. Frankly, we can, we can debate all the units, but that's, that, the units really isn't the point. It's good design is the point. Is do all the elements work together? Does the density and the commercial and the amenities and, you know, um. Job centers and the transportation and, do all of those things align to support that land use intensity, right? There's a way to do that, and I think the, the village center concept is a way to make that happen, right? And that, that works.
By the way.
Sorry.
Okay, so I think what I'm hearing is, if we need to pick a point, maybe it's not just these three, and I'm not trying to negotiate it to myself. I'm just trying to come to a solution that will work for everybody. If, let's see, where's Blake? He was here. Tell me, bring me with the name of the, what's this, what's this coordinate of this road? Is it seventy?
Oh, that's further west, that's, that's gonna be like, that's gonna be like eighty-two hundred west or something.
It's the one that comes up through Hidden Oaks.
Yeah, that, that's a far west, that's like pod seventeen of Hidden Oaks.
Okay, so what I would propose then is we would agree that everything west of this road. We would cap our red areas at twenty-five units per acre.
How many total acres is that?
A lot.
So that is roughly.
I'm, in these.
Scientifically.
Sixty.
Sixty acres.
Oh, sixty acres of red.
Yeah, that's all we're talking about, is the red, that's, that's one that doesn't have a cap, that's the one that makes sense.
So fifteen, that would be fifteen hundred of the maximum two thousand three hundred and forty-two.
Which isn't gonna happen, cause. It's not counting the trailhead twenty-five.
Right, which is just the wrong color up there on the map. That means the only, there's gonna be.
What's that?
That's not.
Okay. One or two blocks that have something like that, and the rest is gonna be.
Mike, Michael, I'm gonna, I'm gonna look at you here for a second, Michael. It's fifteen hundred acres built out on a, on a five, on a five-story building plan. How, how, how does that, do you, can you give me an example of something that I'd be looking at to understand what it looks like? Like, how much acre we, do we look at?
You said.
Fifteen hundred units.
You said fifteen hundred acres.
Fifteen hundred units, like, give me, give me an example of what we'd be looking at, if we, if we, let's, let's say that we put it on. You know, all together in one spot, fifteen hundred acres, or sorry, fifteen hundred units, add twenty-five units per acre.
How many units are up over here by the high school?
That, that's what I'm asking, is what am I, what am I looking at, what am I comparing it to?
Do a little looking on R G S, see if there's a compare.
That's a great.
Here in the region, and I'll have to.
Town center apartments are about twenty-five units an acre.
Town center apartments, town center are twenty-five, but there's not many units. I will say, the plan really does reflect some really common best practices when it comes to urban design. A lot of designers will advocate that you limit your overall height limit to about four stories, five. And then you punctuate you with special places that exceed that. And that's the village centers, right? These, these, these centers that are being planned here. Having a height along the west edge, it's a two-edged sword. I, I was just thinking, and, and Bruce, maybe you, this goes back to your old Salt Lake City days, the, uh, the condos there on the east side of, of Salt Lake. Very controversial, except for those residents who live there. They love them because of the views, right? And that's exactly what Ryan's talking about. There's gonna be fantastic views across this whole valley from that west edge. And I think you're right, I think there's opportunities for some resorts.
There's some, there's some ten or twelve stories on Kennedy, on Kennedy, who you're talking about. At the mouth, Mike, you're talking about the mouth, like those right there, immigration.
And the below, I love it.
Yeah, nobody can see it from this.
Yeah, what is, what is that? Those are both twenty units per acre.
Yeah.
It's your typical walk-up apartment, your typical three-story.
Three and four stories.
How, how many total? Question is, to give us a real idea, how many total units are there?
This one is four hundred and eighty-eight units and this is two ninety-six.
Six hundred, so we'd have, so we'd have two, two of the. It's almost eight, it's almost eight hundred.
And, oh, what is the acreage there? I'm just curious, is that, what you're saying is that?
I know that there are twenty units per acre, so you can work it backwards.
So you're saying that's about forty acres?
Yeah, this, this is right, these are both right, basically a twenty units per acre.
Twenty-two.
Yeah, so you say twenty-five and eight.
You missed this whole edge.
That's not a limit.
Right, that's true.
Is, is this offensive to look at up, up at the west end of Olympia?
We don't like it when we go to high school.
Well, I, I, I'm just saying, is, I don't know that this feels insanely dense. If you come over here to this project that he's referring to.
It's very dense, both of those are especially when you're there as, during commute times, it's insane. And, and, and then, and af- and after, you know, seven P M, there's cars parked all over the streets, it's a mess.
Of, is it offensive to look in? I think is it offensive to live in? It's, it's, it's the traffic and the impact it has from, and putting that, all that much people in one space. It's not, does it look pretty? It's how is it filled if you live there?
Again, that compound.
Has the impact everyone that's surrounding it. In a bubble, you can make that look gorgeous. But what we have to say is how does it interact with the whole, the rest of the community, not just Harriman, South Jordan Riverton, everybody downstream from it. It's not about, is it look pretty?
And I would argue, one of the issues with that is it's only got two points in and out.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's pinned in, that agrees.
Specifically the, the, the thing we're concerned about when we come to, like, I'm, I'm guarantee you that's the next word out of Jared's mouth is, yeah, that's the point, is.
Ingress egress.
Ingress egress, when we're up against the, the mountain is, is an issue. I'm not saying that.
You can have four points in and out of there, and they still all dump onto the same roads, and that's worse with Olympia Hills, that western part. Again, the compound, it all funnels down basically two streets.
So I think the goal for us is, we've made a, a suggestion at twenty-five, and I guess. Uh, I just would appreciate some sort of feedback to say, there's an issue, or what, what is a reasonable number so I can respond to it, I guess.
Ryan, just based on this discussion we've just had, what, twenty units an acre on those out there, instead of the twenty-five?
Fine, if that's the number, then we'll do the number and we'll be good. But what would be the height restriction at that point?
Well, in the, in the current draft, it has a cap at, at ten stories.
Could, could we maintain that height for resort key or hotel or?
Go to seven, two-five.
I think up there, I'm okay to go, so, so if we, if we refer to town center west, if we create a new.
Mount, mountain resort.
Okay, mountains, mountain center, let's call it mountain center.
Center, that would be.
A mountain center that comes right in here, we'll keep it at five stories and it's capped at twenty units per acre.
I can live with that. It's an easy fix.
Steve? That, that keeps us from stuffing all of our units or saving until the, I, I mean, again, that wouldn't be advantageous to save until the end. It prevents us from trying to cram them all in at the end. So.
This is gonna be antithetical to a lot of things that I've been advocated for. But let me just say that this is just an inquiry I'm saying out loud, right, a thought. What if there's, what, what if we think about this in reverses a little bit? And we say that you have to have, I think I said this earlier, is. You have to have a certain number of units in the main town center, the one at the big intersection.
You mean in addition to this?
I'm, maybe, maybe either or. I mean, there's, I'm, I'm open to options here, but.
I'm really concerned about trying to figure out what that number is.
Yeah.
There's so many variables that, that can affect that. I don't think, just me thinking, I, I think that I would be very hesitant to try and figure out a way to define what that number is.
I, I frankly, I'm really hesitant to define it, any of this stuff, cause I just, I'm guessing, right? I, I don't know. And I don't know anybody in here definitively knows, you know, that this is exactly what's gonna be built here and what it looks like and how many units that's gonna be.
And my only point in saying that, Steve, is if we're, if we're, again, encouraging, again. To, to utilize how we believe that that will develop out and allow the flexibility to increase that density there. So then it then does decrease the density elsewhere. Then, again, I, I wanna leave that flexibility in there and not, and not tie our own hands in trying to define what that is.
Then, like I said at the original, right, the formula. Leave it, sixty-three hundred units, stick to this plan, that's great, it's locked in, we got that variable. Right? Then we go to talk about commercial.
So then that means a whole bunch of other things.
Yeah, that's a whole, that's, then, then there's other things that need to be talked about, and that's, you know, if you're gonna have six thousand three hundred and thirty units. We're gonna have commercial requirements that need to be put in there, right? We're gonna, th- those, I mean, you have to. It's, it's in the design guidelines, you have to include those things in these areas, right?
That's why I think we need to leave the, the flexibility on the residential side alone.
And then I think, I, I'm, I'm okay with that, but then there's changes we have to make to. Commercial and open space conversations, right, to make those things work better.
So just as a, this is not an agreement, please don't take that, so that we can start to, cause we kinda, start to really kinda move through this. Let's, let's move on to the next item and come back to this one, once we've had more of a discussion of that, now that we know kinda where we have a basic understanding of where everybody is on. Maybe we're looking for this, so, uh.
With the possibility that we may do this twenty units an acre out on the west, is it possible?
I, 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 understanding that, that, you know, it's, we're, we're not a hundred percent on anything yet. We're just, I don't wanna get so hung up on one item that we forget that we have.
It's a calculus.
Yeah, so, that takes, go ahead. So I just, so let me restate slightly what you said though, so I think the open-ended issue on units, then what we're talking about is possibly restricting height. And units per acre in certain areas, right? That's kinda what we're gonna circle back and talk with.
Particularly in the, in the mountain, uh, center.
Mayor, if I, may I say one thing before you?
Sure.
Steve, I, I would disagree with you about one thing. I don't, I don't think quote, we're all guessing. You have a very good professional planning staff. And we have professional planners as well here, and there, I, I would agree with you that it's more of an art than a science. But I don't think that art is just guessing, so they, they didn't just throw, they didn't just throw crap at the wall, uh, without thinking about it, so.
It's an edge.
Yeah, that, okay, I, I, it's, it's, it's more than just a wag.
I don't mean that disrespectfully, but, and, and I know there's a lot of hard work and a lot of thought, deliberation.
I didn't wanna offend Mike and Eric about just, you know, their whole job is, they went to school for four years to learn how to guess.
They just draw pretty pictures.
Yeah, okay, alright.
So, so the next thing that we come to is, is, is commercial, right? Cause that's almost the, the, the opposite way.
First thing you have to talk about is roads.
I'm okay, if that's what we wanna talk about, it's, I'm happy to, to know that direction, so wait, we don't talk about that.
The main thing that stands out for me is east-west interstate.
East west, interstate?
Guys, you guys have all the numbers, not paying attention to them, then shame on us. But if it's up to us to preserve a corridor wide enough to connect U one eleven, thank you. That's in the southwest study. If we don't preserve the corridor, it will never happen, it will be ninety south. Be horrible. I tried to go, I had to get to Grant School District offices on twenty-first South and Redwood this morning at eight A M. It took me an hour and a half on mountain view.
It just took me forty-five minutes to drive from the.
I mean, it, it got, we, I got completely bogged down, this is at, you know, left house like seven o'clock. At, by the time I got to about thirty-third south, it was taking three or four cycles to get through a light and then twenty-first south. S R two oh one was completely bumper to bumper. I mean, we're talking Colorado Mountain View all the way up. We don't even have that here. Right? We've got a couple of four lane roads, hundred and twenty six.
So is, is your question preservation, or is your question?
Primarily preservation of the highway, right? I mean, the, the surface roads are the surface roads for this project, whatever, but if the right of way is not there, if houses are built right up to it. Will be ninety south. There's supposed to be an east-west freeway at ninety south. But nobody preserved the right of way and they let them build houses right up to it, and that's never gonna be. So there, there's some basic things like that. I mean, this is the backbone infrastructure, the purple lines, that, that's it, is east and west. And I'm sorry, the traffic study, we talked at.
I mean, I understand that thought.
To, to assume that fifty percent of people are gonna take public transportation that does not exist and will not exist for decades.
Yeah, but here's the problem, you want us to preserve the corridor out here when there's no land preservation to the east of it?
If you don't do it here, we're never gonna get pass up. I mean, I, I, I understand what you're saying, but that's thrown in the towel saying it's never gonna happen, so why do it?
Okay, but, but, I'm just, just putting it in here, is you're saying, okay, we can preserve it, and if they wanna come do it. How does that impact all the rest of the people who live down here on a hundred and twenty six south? Like, do you think all those people are gonna wanna have a, a freeway going right by Atholos Academy and right behind all the houses in there?
I live right there and I'll say, yeah, I do, and some houses will have to be torn out just like Bangater. But if, like I said, we can throw in the towel right now and say it's never gonna happen, cause that's what we'd be saying. There will never be an east west.
I'm, I'm gonna ask a question. How much right of way does a?
It's in the study.
How, how much, how wide of a right of way are we looking at? I, I understand it's in the study, I don't have all the data, I, I can't, what are we, what are we looking at roughly for a, for a?
You know, it's in the process of doing the environmental right now, but there was a study done for the seven three hundred west corridor about seven, eight years ago. They were looking, I think at that time, can't remember, like a hundred and fifty feet for, for that right. But as U dot goes through their environmental, they'll, they'll analyze that, they might be a hundred and twenty feet, which is consistent with what has been preserved to the east.
So, you'd need much more than that.
Hundred twenty feet allows you to build what?
Bangater, is it Bangater about a hundred?
Bangater's more like two hundred, is it two hundred?
The Bangeter is a fourteen mile long street that serves.
Trying to get people perspective of what we're.
Three hundred thousand people.
That's what we're talking about.
So my, I, 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 I'm fine having a discussion about wanting to preserve corridor.
Cause we're thinking just this, it's not just this, it's.
Everything else.
Right, but if we were to.
Eighteen acres across.
So there's, there's two parts to that conversation. One is, is the realistic option of putting in a Bangater in, in this area. Two is, if that's something that we even want to begin to discuss, where does it fall on us as a community to go after corridor preservation funds? If there's something wrong with that, and to, to, cause I would almost see this as, alright, if that's something we wanna go after. We, I would want to see something that.
Of course.
That says we go over and we start pushing for corridor preservations for that specific road, not necessarily places.
Why you have this, this south, again, the southwest study, you have lots of people who are willing to want to see that happen, but. If we move ahead with this and totally ignore that, then we'd make a decision for everyone.
Well, I don't think.
The challenge of going after corridor preservation funds, though, is where, is we would be going after preservation funds, and I, I don't disagree a bit with, with the planning and set aside, but we'd be going, trying to argue for corridor preservation funds for something that is not on a plan anywhere and that honestly wouldn't support even looking at our option for corridor preservation funds. That's just.
The reality of it.
That's the reality of it, so. I don't think that right now, that's a feasible option for us to do, because we're not gonna get any. There are so many other more projects that are way more, way more pressing for that, so.
It's, it's absolutely long term, but if.
I, I guess.
You don't put it in a plan.
But. I, I, I would love nothing more than to see east-west freeway connectivity out here, right? I think, you know, and I read in the plan, that connection between Mountain View and Bangater, right? I love that idea.
But to your point, none of those people that live there will want that, but it's, it's needed.
I got it, but here, and, and, and I understand your point. My question is, this is the end. Would you?
U one eleven.
Yeah, but it's, it stops right there, right? That's what I'm saying is that. Like even the Highland Alpine thing with that big wide thing that goes in, once you get into the city, it goes and narrows down to just a big collector road, right, or a big arterial road.
Yeah.
So, I, I, I'm, I'm, I'm just using the example you gave, I can see bringing, you know, arc, to a, a, a major freeway connectivity to a certain point, but then. I don't know that that would make sense to extend it all the way through.
So you don't think that there would be, again, again.
Are you talking to the new U one eleven or the old?
The new.
You're just talking to the new.
The, what's the proposed right of way on, on Harmond Boulevard?
And you're talking, see, there's twenty thousand acres of, of billable land that Kenickah intends to do just the same finger across the west bench.
Which was four, what, like, seven lanes.
So again, all that traffic collected to go south?
So.
So like, where, where is the option to go east-west?
Mayor, did you hear that question?
To get, to get to.
Mountain. So, so what I'm hearing is that that current planned right of way for that road is already one hundred and twenty feet, which would allow for a seven lane road.
Which is Redwood.
Which is essentially what Red, Redwood Road is now.
All the way to there.
All the way there is a hundred and twenty feet, okay? Um, what is, just out of curiosity in regards to this, what is the setback on, on your, from your road, from that type of road in the design guidelines? What's the setback we have?
It's like eight feet on here, this is intended to be really urban through here.
Okay.
Um, I, I think you bring up a good point that, you know, Clint, that, you know, obviously one twenty six coming up, even if it becomes a freeway, at some point it's gonna taper and it's not gonna punch through at a freeway all the way up to this.
No, I'm not saying all the way up.
Yeah, but I'm just saying that, um, I, I'm just concerned about getting bogged down in this kind of discussion, because we're following what the city's master plan is, we're following the Wasatch Front Regional Council's plan.
Right.
Um, I think to talk to us about anything above and beyond is fine if the city wants to go out and apply for corridor preservation, but I don't think they're gonna give it to you, because you aren't following their adopted plan. And so, but again, if you wanna put it in there, that isn't where we're gonna start, because we're waiting for U dot to come in and construct this, that, that funding's already been appropriated, so. We're not starting in this area, and if you wanna widen that out, um, later corridor preservation, then by all means, preserve the right, and we would not get an object to that, but I, I just, yeah.
I, I, the other thing that I look at here is, I don't, I'm not sure this is necessarily the. And I, and I may not be right on this, I'm not sure this is the, the. I, I don't see this as being the, the, the infrastructure that we can go in, how do I say this?
Way I mean it.
I'm looking at this project, um, and also looking at what's coming down the road, right? We have, as a city, we have the responsibility, not only plan for what's now, but also what's coming. We also have a responsibility to, to work with the developer on what their project is, and so as I look at this. I don't see any imminent project coming down the road. I don't, I don't, I don't know of anyone talking to us about any imminent projects down the road. Um, and so even if something like happens, we're looking quite a long ways down the road before that infrastructure would even be considered needed.
Yep.
So I have a hard time saying, hey, you know, let's do more than what a Redwood Road is, cause what, I, I'm. A- as I look at it, Redwood Road, or what we have often, we use great sized road for, for what we need, you know, if we could, if we could get that out there.
I'm thinking more than that, and this is gonna tie into some of our other discussion, but. This isn't guaranteed yet.
No.
That, this, this could, this could come across and intersect up here, right, which changes some things. There's another possibility that has been discussed, but I, again, we don't know, that's the possibility that U one eleven comes down and connects right in here, and all of that just bypasses this whole thing entirely, right? And then, you know, none of this will ever connect. This, this will never be a freeway, so. I, I, I understand thinking ahead and making sure that, you know, here, all the way out to Mountain View and beyond is preserved, and I think that we can. I think we should be having those conversations, right? And we should be looking to get this added into those plans and incorporated in those plans, so that we can get trans, you know, corridor preservation money. I, I would say that maybe we put some language in, it says if we can get corridor preservation funds, at some time you'll, you know, you'll agree to sell us the right of way, you know? Right? Something like that, that way, there's at least a, a mechanism for us to, to obtain that at some point, right?
Yeah, with, if, as long as it's a short enough window, right? I can't hold off on doing that.
Sure, I understand, right?
Till, till built, yeah.
Next three years or something, if you wanna, or something?
I don't, I don't know that that's, I, I, I don't know what the right number is, but what I'm saying is, is, is if, if this happens or that's up there. It, it really changes the dynamics of this project, right?
Sounds like you.
And so. Cause I'm just suggesting. Philosophically, I don't disagree, I'm not sure how to do it practically.
I'm not saying that I do either, but if it's, if we don't start somewhere, we'll get what we've always got.
I, I think it's incumbent upon the council to be having those discussions about the future needs out here and working with U dot and Wasatch Front and all of those other organizations to talk about what those future needs are, so that, again, we're planning ahead instead of trying to play catch up, and we can try and, if, if there's a determination that that alignment is different to where, you know, the future needs shows us something, I think. To your, to your point, if there's some language in there that at least allows us the option for corridor preservation within a reasonable window, I think that, then that shifts the responsibility where it should be, and it's on us. To, to go out there and to actually advocate for something like that to be on a plan, and then to have the funding to help support it.
Do you have a suggestion on how to, how we do that? I mean, how we accomplish this?
Some language gets things started, right? We all have those conversations, as has been discussed. And, and we really have to strike it up, we have to, and we need their help to do it. There's other parties, right, the others, Kenickah, whoever. Everyone would benefit from this, right? If you get people on board, then, then you've got some real viable area there for some big stuff. But if that's what it would take is, is for it to be actually on the table. If it's not mentioned, if we just pile ahead and build. Right, then, then that conversation never happens, nothing gets started, and it will never involve us.
I would say that. Yeah. Uh, so I, I like the idea of putting some language in there, we can de- debate what that time horizon should be, but I think some language in there gives us at least some ammo to pay to these other groups and say.
I'm not saying we're gonna demand you give us this, that, or the other, but some language in there gets at least the conversation.
Yeah, I, I would agree, cause I think that it gives us ammo then to say, we wanna get this, here's the southwest visiting study that was done, we would like to get this incorporated into the Wasatch Front. You know, regional transportation plan and incorporated into the long-term plans, so that there's at least. An, you know, a mark on the, on the list, we can go, we'd like to get corridor preservation for this, right?
Then there's an option to actually apply.
So what we're, what we're.
Cause you're not gonna get on any plans in any of this.
So what we're asking is that our, our developer partner, or, or the, the developer here, uh, agrees in their writing to work with us in regards to trying to make those things happen. In some, in some form or fashion.
I think it's simple for them, I think, I mean, true, they can go advocate too, but I think, I think simply, I don't think we need to overcomplicate this, it just truly says that they're willing to work with us. Should we get a regional, something put on a regional plan for us to have the option to buy with corridor preservation funds?
The, the simple answer is it's, that's in their benefit.
Do you, do you have any major concerns with that?
No, as long as it's a reasonable time, you know, like three years or something, right? That's kinda what U dot's talking about when that's original.
Somewhere between five hundred feet wide and a hundred feet wide, and between one year and twenty years for preservation, there's a deal to be had.
Well, and to Ryan's, to Ryan's point.
Exactly.
Like, let's not lie, we'd have to clear through this one, yeah, just to.
Wait, 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 you, you agreed with Bruce, that's.
I mean, how can you disagree with somewhere between a hundred feet and five hundred feet and one year and twenty years?
And to the point, the clock's already ticking on that with U dot A, and, and county anyway, so those conversations need to be had now, and if there's going to be any changes to that. They have to be part of the conversation now, otherwise that train will move down the tracks.
I honestly think it helps with the plan to bring it down into the project too.
I thought you were gonna say.
Uh, again, this is mutually beneficial, I'm not, there's no opposition, great, so.
But a lot of you know, but more a lot of that, or a lot of the genesis of this happens is in those discussions that you guys will have with those other partners of where they want this to be.
Ju- just to let you know, I'm gonna suggest to Chase that we wind up putting a separate section in the development agreement called special provisions, and we're gonna put basically these kinds of things that are negotiated in that special provision section, so that everybody can see them right, so that they're right there.
Literally all about.
And we don't have to worry about smushing them into where they might belong in the development agreement, we're just gonna do, uh, one, one little, I, I hesitate to call it negotiated provisions, but considering everything's negotiated, but we'll just call it special provisions.
Okay.
Was that?
That's okay with Chase.
Was that your biggest concern in regards to infrastructure?
Sorry, can I say?
That, that was the one major thing I wanted to bring up that really has not been talked about at all. The rest of it, I'm all ears, get there with it.
Okay, sorry, I, I, I need to tell you one thing. So we've already gotten corridor preservation for a hundred and twenty six south at a hundred and twenty feet wide. It hasn't been a quite, the county hasn't closed on it yet, but it's already been appropriated, we've already applied and were awarded those funds, just so.
That is good.
We're just saying if, if there's some.
If it's gonna expand from there.
Put on a plan that says it goes to a hundred and eighty foot right of way.
No problem.
Yep.
I just wanted to let you know, we've already gotten that.
Or five hundred according to.
What I keep thinking about, especially looking at your plan, is that cluster right there in that area, right? And then your desire to have the commercial in that space, if that, if that happens in that area, I would think next, that the property owner adjacent.
Pretty good on it.
Would think that's a good thing as well, right? If you have, if you have that kind of road, think Alpine, you know, commuter lane, and it's just easily accessible, will draw all kinds of traffic from. North that's going south, right? Uh, this becomes a hub of sorts versus just, just another.
You have enough traffic to do something like a Traverse Mountain almost, right?
If, yeah, you have a commuter lane, right?
Maybe not the rebellion, but.
No, it's not, it's not I fifteen.
You got I, you got I fifteen running right by.
It's not I fifteen, but if, I mean, like if you said twenty, it, it's staggering and terrifying to me that there are twenty thousand acres. Right to the north of this, that are gonna be developed probably at a similar. And there are no, right now, there's no plans for where that traffic goes, and it's all. East-west other than U L F, right? So, at this stage, if we can bring those people together. Because of what Clint's talking about with the timelines of these plans that are coming together, there's something that, that could happen there, but not if nobody starts it.
Good.
Great, okay, so Chase, you're, you know what to write?
Yeah, we go over tomorrow's.
Yeah. Alright, so. Are there infrastructure issues or wanna go straight to commercial? I'm all about, I'm all about, let's talk about commercials.
Well, that ties really well together, actually, with.
So just to kinda recap on our infrastructure, what our obligations are, we're obligated to build all of the roads that you see on this map. Well, I, let me clarify, the red ones are, are not actual, they're, they're hypothetical roads, just to kinda show a grid system, same with the green ones. But all of the purple and blue, it's kinda hard to see the difference between the two, but, um, purple, blue and orange are what we call backbone roads. So those are all things that in theory would be impact fee eligible roads to be constructed. We.
Contract fee eligible.
Yeah, he said in theory.
Well, i- if we weren't doing a contract fee, which.
There's system improvements.
There's system improvements.
Should be eligible for reimbursement through.
Correct. So based on the size of this project and the number of roads we have crisscrossing through us, we would easily use every dollar that this project would generate in impact fees for transportation to construct these roads. Um, we are proposing, as we work with staff, to go with a contract fee, which gives us a little bit more flexibility, so we can do the P I D to help fund, you know, and bond against the one-time, uh, contract fee. In addition, though, to having to build these roads, and again, U dot would be responsible for U one eleven, that's been funded, um, portions of it have been funded, not this last section. But some of this we got funded from the county already. Um, the state in this previous session has funded this section of road, U one eleven from one eighteen over to one twenty six. So, um, in addition to this obligation, we have also agreed to pay for our proportionate share of off-site impacts. As determined by a traffic impact study. The reason that's important is, we're being held to a very high standard, something that is above and beyond. The normal, um, I, I'm not aware that the city has ever done this before, I'm not aware that any city actually has ever required a proportionate share. Again, impact fees could be paid for off-site uses, absolutely, but typically, uh, in development agreements, in Harmond City and elsewhere. Uh in development agreements, in Harriman City and elsewhere, if you're eligible, if you have system improvements on site. To receive reimbursement for everything that your project generates, what I'm saying is we would gobble all of that up on site with the roads that we have to get built. So it really is an add on for us to be paying for offsite improvements. In this scenario, so I just wanted to point that out, that's a that's a big deal.
Can I ask you a question on your on your cost estimates you provided to us? You have local roadways and roads, so local roadways and utilities is a hundred and twenty five, almost a hundred and twenty six million. Then roads you separated out, would you tell me the distinction between the two?
Are you?
You have fifty three million for roads.
Is it in the PID documents? Um, I don't have that in front of me, it's probably the backbone roads versus the local roads, meaning things that wouldn't be impact fee eligible. I believe it's the distinction.
So on your total improvements in the PID, the the cost estimates that you provided to us. That, sorry, I don't mean to di- to digress from what we're discussing here, but how much of this four hundred million dollars is actually. Already funded by county and state like you you. So so the county and state money for the U one eleven roads are not included in any of your?
No.
So I really add an add a line there because the finances don't work, so I I would like to understand and perform on that. So if you wanna add a line up there, we can discuss that at appropriate time, that would be fine, but that you're you're talking four hundred million, that that's. You're 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 pushing five hundred thousand dollars an acre for infrastructure in dozen pencil. So that the kids that goes into infrastructure, asking you to pay for certain things, and if you assume that, it's like. You have to be able to financially do this, or all we end up with is is a half buck project that's off the ground, sorry. But um it just won't fly.
Okay, we yeah, and we aren't asking to bond for four hundred million dollars either, I, we need to review that, I.
Perfect, oh, it's up there now, sorry, thanks.
Okay. Um, so as far as infrastructure goes. Sorry, I kinda lost my train of thought.
Outside, thanks.
Anyway, so we got inside and outside, so we're obligated to, you know, pay our pro rata share for both, I guess is what I should say.
Are you obligated that same way with the county? Cause they're making you pay offsite shares also with the county plus all your insides, so you're obligated the same way as the county.
Uh yeah, it's slightly different with the county, but but in theory, yes.
So it's pretty much the same, we're not asking anything different that you've already agreed to with the county, correct?
Um, yeah, the the way it functions is slightly different, you get the money a lot quicker than you would have with the county.
Right, so it's a benefit.
It's a bene- the change is more beneficial to Harriman City now.
So it's not, it's not naked, we're not really asking anything to the county, because you've already agreed to it, county, is that correct?
Yeah, I would, I think that's fair to say, what I'm saying is if we were to annex in and just say, hey, we just wanna pay your normal impact fees. We wouldn't also be paying for offsites, we would just be paying an impact fee, so would it be both?
Right, but obviously then the density and all that kinda things change.
I understand.
I would keep saying, as opposed to what normally would be done and you're talking about as opposed to what they negotiated with the county.
Two apples and oranges really, because if you annexed in, you're coming in at an acre loss, and it it you know, A one zone kind of thing, so it's like. Then the whole discussion changes substantially, so.
Alright, um, I think we're saying the same thing two different ways, uh so, commercial. Let's talk about commercial. Okay. So. Steve brought up three issues or or items to discuss relating to commercial, so requirements for services. Commercial square footage, commercial benchmarks, those are kinda the three bullet points, sub bullet points under commercial. So. He fairly brought up. That we had just plugged in numbers for square footage requirements that we didn't have, we hadn't really had an opportunity to back up, which we needed to do. So we went out and talked to two different brokerage firms and other people, but I went to try and go to brokers to try and get. More of a neutral, unbiased opinion, you know, as much as you can say that, I I realize everyone has their own complex, but. So we went to Mountain West Commercial Real Estate, they are our brokers on our anthem project. So just to give some context, Anthem right now has a hundred and forty four thousand square feet of commercial built today. So as you drive over there and you look from the liquor store to Winco and all those pads there, we're at a hundred and forty four thousand square feet in existence on the ground. So. We talked to them and just said. What do you think is feasible with our land use plan here? Projected population here with Kennicott next door to us, you know. Again, we have to make some assumptions, so we don't know what's gonna happen, we don't know what everyone's time horizon is gonna be. So assuming we get the intersection of U one eleven and and a hundred and twenty six south on our property, or or half of it, right, we're like we're showing on the plan. What do you think is a reasonable amount of commercial? So. Mountain West suggested they thought we could get two hundred thousand square feet. That was what they thought would build out there in that location. What they said is if we are unable to get a hundred and twenty six south and U one eleven, so if we don't get that intersection onsite, they think. We would be able to get somewhere between twenty and thirty thousand square feet in that area. It was that it was that dramatic of an effect, which it clearly makes sense, if the roads bypassing the project or swings out and around us like we've talked about as a possibility. Maybe we can throw it, Chase, maybe could you throw it back up on Google Earth, or our land use plan, I think is the better one, actually.
In comparison, how many acres was the Anthem development?
It's on fifty acres.
So fifty acres, they have a hundred and forty four K.
Well, that's what's built today, there's still, there's a lot left.
Future pads and stuff to pull up.
But that's right next to the freeway with.
Right. So, so there's really three scenarios and I know. I think Steve outlined, you know, what they were, there's. What UDOT is, what we're hearing from UDOT is that this is one option that U one eleven and and one twenty six make this connection here. This is our preferred, when I say are, I think, I speak for the city as well, I think both sides would prefer to see that this intersection line up here. Because it's mutually beneficial for commercial. So, we are hoping that we get both these two sides of this um interchange. The other plan that we have seen is that this hundred and twenty six south comes up, when U one eleven still continues through, and that. That interchange happens right here, just offsite, which is on Kennicott, Robert. The other plan that we have recently seen is an idea to take, I'll come from up here, U one eleven as it comes down and it just swings and free flows. Into one twenty six. Kind of eliminates an interchange, if you will, I mean, yes, there would need to be connection points, but we don't know exactly how that would work and, you know. Where it would dive into, obviously, we know this is the connection point because it's constructed to there. So we kinda need to look at the commercial with these three scenarios in mind, because they all have dramatically different effects on. On how much commercial would be viable on the site.
When you say commercial, it sounds like you're just talking about retail square footage.
No, I'm lumping it all into one, so commercials would be retail, office, restaurants, grocery stores.
Hospital.
Hospital, all those things are commercial. Anything that generates a job, basically. So. Um, again, so that first brokerage thought two hundred thousand square feet with this alignment. They thought twenty to thirty thousand square feet is all if that intersection moves off the project entirely. Um, we also reached out to uh DRH brokerage, they came back and thought that it would be. Let's see, I don't know if they're combined, cause they split theirs, one a hundred and fifty five thousand square feet. Total with the intersection and without it, what was the number, Kirk?
They didn't have a number on that one.
Oh, we, yeah, they they didn't study it that way, we didn't.
So so let me ask in regards to the essence, what area exactly are they looking at in regards to this this? Are they just looking at the town center or are they looking at the entire project?
Uh, you mean as far as commercial goes?
Quarter mile of that.
Yeah, they're they're looking at the project as a whole and what this would drive, and obviously, one of the biggest uncertainties, what is Kennicott gonna do?
Yeah.
Right, and again, we can't make decisions, we can't ask you and you can't add up, ask us to make decisions based off of what Kennicott may or may not do. Right, we can't, we don't know what city they're gonna end up in, we don't know if they're gonna create their own, we don't know, um, there's a lot of variables that way. So the things that we do know is that it's mutually beneficial for both sides to work with the state. To make sure that this intersection happens onsite. You know, in Olympia, we we do know that, that's something I think that. Both sides can agree on, so then the the real question comes down to, I think we need to create three scenarios. In the development agreement that deal with these three different road connections, cause they're, those are the three likely scenarios that that UDOT's exploring now. And determine an amount of square footage, now again, we don't have any obligation to build one square foot in our county MDA. I I've heard a lot of people saying, yes, you do, uh, we don't.
Ryan, just really quick, I was actually gonna ask you to to clarify that, obviously. Still a public meeting, um, people online or can come back and watch it, but there's been a lot of. Um chatter uh the past week about that and a lot of uh misinformation. Provided out there in terms of what uh what they believe was required because of some numbers, can you talk to? Just for clarity for everybody to make sure that everyone understands where that uh number that keeps being referred to came from. And what your current obligations are under the ca- the the adopted county master development agreement.
So are you referring to this number that's like a million something?
One point seven seven million square feet.
Yeah, so that came from a traffic study, I honestly can't tell you where the number came from, I I really don't, I. I I don't know where that number came from, it was in a traffic study looking at assumptions of what the area could potentially support regionally, I guess, I'm not exactly sure.
And when was that traffic study completed?
Um, two thousand nineteen, I would guess with our county MDA, prior to that, it was part of that. If you read the county MDA, there aren't any requirements to provide any commercial, now there are requirements. That say if you do this phase and it has commercial in it, we wanna know a whole bunch of things, right? How many jobs is it gonna create, what's the average salary, right, there were some things that they wanted to know as we submitted an economic report. We didn't have any obligation to build any commercial.
So, but when I look at this, I'm like, okay, you're you're gonna pack sixty three hundred units out here, which is. Which is what, uh, maybe eighteen thousand, twenty thousand people? Well, I'm pretty positive that people go to the grocery store. Definitely positive they go to the gas station, definitely positive they might use the dentist, the bank, the orthodontist, Harriman has a lot of those. Uh, so I I just can't imagine that all these little intersections, major intersections, you can't. Have provision for a gas station, grocery store, the kind of things, services that people need, and they well exceed the hundred and fifty thousand square feet. So it baffles me to think that unless you're only staying right here at U one eleven, how much would it? But the whole development certainly has place for for commercial, because. I don't, I don't think they all wanna drive down, especially if they hit Harriman Boulevard and leave, they're not gonna come down into the other gas station.
Let me add, I think some justification for that, what you're saying. So in our um balanced economy study that we had done, there was an analysis of. The amount of retail and office, they actually spread it out different, um, in a lot of cities. And they measured cities that had similar buying power to Harriman, right, in terms of, you know, average income, household income, right? So I'm gonna discount, you know, Sandy and Draper, cause those are. But Cottonwood Heights is a total city acreage of five thousand four hundred acres. Right, and they've got about nine million square feet between retail and office. You look at, you know, Highland and Alpine together. Those two areas together have, we just fi- counted, it's a little over seven thousand units between Highland and Alpine together. Um, and those two cities together have one point three million square feet of retail. And five hundred and sixty thousand of office space. And they're downs- they're downstream from massive retail and, you know.
They're in a.
Yeah, they're in a cul-de-sac like we are, and upstream is all of the big retail stuff, right, you know, Traverse Mountain and. Thanksgiving Point and all that stuff, right? So, to to talk about what she was talking about, I mean, if you just look at Highland and Alpine, which are similar income, household incomes. Similar household size, similar u- number of units in the area, although.
Doubling that.
Right, yeah, we're we're talking about. You know, taking about the same number of houses in Highland and Alpine and putting it just in Olympia Hills, right? Um, you know, they're on eleven thousand acres, this is a thousand acres, so it's much more population dense area. I mean, this is. Two million square feet of retail and office to support six thousand, seven thousand rooftops. A a hundred thousand or a hundred fifty thousand square feet to support six thousand rooftops seems. Absurd. I I mean, I understand what the brokers are saying. But I think especially if that intersection is in there, the numbers that you guys have been presenting are. Completely unrealistically low. Um, I'm gonna say another part about this too is that. The the key design element of the town and village centers. Is this, it is highly dense people, but. Employment, service, retail, jobs and transportation are all included in that. That is the primary driver supporting that level of density. Twenty five, thirty units an acre, spread over forty, fifty acres, a hundred and fifty acres. Nine hundred acres, right, you're you're talking about a an impossible situation if you don't have those elements in that. Now, I'm not suggesting you need. You know, one point four million square feet of retail and another. Five hundred and seventy thousand square feet of office space, I think that's probably a little. Ridiculous, I think the greater area, if if, you know, the neighbors to the north are gonna contribute some commercial stuff to service this area as well. There there's some, there's some discussion to be had about what share of this need they'll be able to provide as well, but. I I I. Hundred thousand, two hundred thousand, three hundred thousand, that's just not nearly enough.
Well, can I say one, one, one thing to consider too is, we're only talking absolute best case scenarios, we only get half of this interchange. So the other half located here, to to your point, right, which is what you're saying, regionally, you're not.
I'm not saying you have to have all one seven million south of a hundred and twenty six, right?
Right.
There could be some of that on the north side, right?
And there will be, right, I mean, obviously, if if the roads line up this way, you're gonna see it on all four sides, I mean, that's just the way that works, so.
But we want as mu- capture as much of that as we can inside the city of Harriman. Right, there's um service budget, retail sales, all those kinda reasons, right?
If we just say, yeah, you can just build houses all along there, then we'll never see it.
And I haven't, I'm, maybe you guys misunderstood understood what I was saying, I was just merely explaining what our current agreement is on the property and not what I'm asking you to do.
Sure.
I I was just saying, our starting point is at zero, do I wanna do zero? No, I'm not asking you to do zero. So I I don't, but somewhere between a zero and some number, we gotta come up with a number. And and it's not scientific, unfortunately, we've tried to.
Is five million, the whole thing is just gonna be.
So I I think, yeah, you're trying to say what the agreement actually says and you're trying to. Make sense of what.
He's gonna make a proposal too, so.
Of what the pu- of what the public thinks it is, so I'll tell you of what the public thinks it builds when it went through county. And I'll tell you what what, you mean county council. Built, I talked to, is that the reason this level of density was awarded was the promise. Not much commercial jobs, the workplace will bring all of that here. And at the time, I screamed from the rooftops, there's nothing in that document that says they have to do any of that. I know full well that it's zero, right? But no one, no one heard or or saw that, it wasn't even talked about despite us trying to bring that up. But from the public's point of view, and even those, some of those folks already know that's what was promised.
Let let me read the two paragraphs, okay, the source of this is the Salt Lake County Olympia Hills project website.
And as soon as we're, you you speak, he's, he was in the middle of something, so I wanna make sure we continue. Uh, but we interrupted him, we interrupted him in the first place, so, once you're done, I wanna make sure we get back to.
Um, a place where Utahns can live, work, learn and play. Olympia Hills is the kind of livable, walkable, twenty first century community that will come to define the future of Utah development projects. With a sustainably planned mix.
With a sustainably planned mix of office space, residential neighborhoods and hundreds of acres of open space. Olympia Hills residents will never be more than a quarter mile away from Park Trailhead or other natural areas. The world-class design and development team, or sorry, cutting-edge office space will attract the high-tech employers that continue to flock to Utah. Creating a strong local economy built around a west-bench version of the thriving Silicon Slopes area. And since employees can live near where they work, they won't have to commute across the valley. The world-class design and development team behind Olympia Hills has planned decades into the future. To minimize traffic and construction impact on surrounding communities. And account for the infrastructure, schools, resources and open spaces that will make Olympia Hills such a great place to live, work and raise a family." What has changed from that vision of the development to a hundred thousand square foot of commercial? What changed?
Well, COVID was a huge deal. I think we'd be insane to not consider the impacts to COVID. I don't think you're gonna see for years to come, the huge office buildings being built. Yes, you're seeing them in Irvin, well, they were partially built, so they kinda had to see that through. So I, so I would say that's a huge part, that's a huge part. And I don't, I don't know how to equate what the impact is, none of us do, we're all making it up if we do. So I'm not talking about a maximum commitment, we had a maximum commitment, not commitment, but requirement. We were prohibited from developing more than seventy-five acres in the county. We were capped. We're not, I don't see why you guys necessarily would want to do that, and that's not currently in this current M D A. So we're not talking about maxims, we're just saying what's the minimum that the city would like to see. We're trying to base it off of what the market is telling us today. Now that could change, but today, the market is telling us somewhere in the one fifty to two hundred thousand square foot range is what they think. It doesn't mean we can't explore a different number, I'm not telling you that. I'm just telling you, you guys asked us to go out and get some opinions from people that are in the field, and that's what we did.
Well, why the difference today's numbers versus planning decades in the future?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, that's a problem.
Cause the, maybe, so what we've continued to see in this community is that once, and you've made the point already. Once you build that, that's what's there, and if that's the most likely place, then we're just ensuring it happens on the other side.
Well, one of the problems is, uh, Harriman, Highland, and I did a lot of development work in Highland and Alpine, I think thousands of units there. Many of those properties were sat on for twenty plus, thirty plus years. And stayed empty uh for twenty, thirty years before somebody put a store on it. I mean, you can, you can verify that, but I guarantee you I'm right. Uh, I don't know if, if it makes sense for Harriman to leave massive chunks of a hundred and twenty-sixth. It certainly doesn't make sense for the developer to leave massive chunks of a hundred and twenty-sixth South. Uh, undeveloped for ten, fifteen, twenty years, cause that's how long those projects sat there still. I, I completely understand that, but. They sat empty until there was a house tops to support it.
Yes and no, they, they.
It was the same time, like Anthem, right? It was planned years ago, and it sat empty for a long time. Until you got enough houses built up around and enough density and enough stuff happening, and then boom, you get the grocery store, and now the restaurants are coming in and all stuff, right? But then the question is, what is it held for? And again, I'm getting philosophical here for a second. Because there's, there's a certain level of commercial that's necessary to support the residents. I don't think anybody disagrees with the amount of commercial that's necessary to support the residents. So there's some that would be helpful to have jobs there as well for cutting the traffic flows and, and for, for some tax issues. But the other reason people were, a lot of cities were holding those out was because that was in the old era where. You wanted those commercial nodes to bring in the sales tax, which now is distributed, as Alan will tell you, more towards the residents. Rather than towards those sales tax nodes. Many cities, at Springville, I've, I've mentioned before, had a four hundred acre. Section of it, where they, their theory was if they zoned it, they will, commercial will come, and they will get their uh, sales tax from that. Well, sales tax doesn't go that way anymore, and they wound up losing lots and lots, like leaving your apartment vacant for two years, cause you want an extra fifty dollars worth of rent. Uh, by the time you get two months into it, you've lost all your stream of income, so it doesn't make a lot of sense. So it's always a trade-off between what you can guarantee, what you can hope for, and what you can wish for. And uh, Ryan's gonna make a proposal about what we think is, he thinks is a reasonable proposal. Not a final number, and it fits those three what-if scenarios. Cause the original D M D A has two right now, but we've, we've realized there's really a third. And we also wanted to address your issue about some neighborhood support facilities as well. So he's got a proposal regarding this.
Before we go there, I want to speak to this sales tax partner, and I, and, and you're right, Alan's right, if you're looking at just sales tax. From a resident's point of view, right? I wanna see, and really, just a, a global economic point of view, we need balanced land use. If it's all one or the other, it doesn't work, right? The, my, um, just talk to you guys, most people around this table have heard me ad nauseam for however many years I've been sitting here now to talk about this. Property tax, the city largely is not involved in property tax, right? Now, we, we are with police and fire, and they're, they're a separate thing. We don't, the property tax doesn't go to the city. Goes to the school district and county and the water district, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera.
We get this much of it.
Right, so we, we need, we need balanced land, we need balanced land use for several reasons. One, just economics, it's not, to me, it's not all about sales tax. It, it can't be, that doesn't make sense. To, to make things work globally. It might make sense on the city's part of the ledger when it comes to that. But when it comes to providing services to the area, we need those office buildings. Well, it doesn't have to be retail, that's why I can stop and say, when we say we're commercial, everybody thinks retail. We need employment centers, places that draw people to go the opposite direction, so we won't have the effect on the traffic.
And to your benefit, we talked about a hospital, not a revenue generator, but a big employer, right?
Right, but, so that, I mean, that one's different, that doesn't really apply to the property tax, because they're zipped from, from a lot. Let's say if it's an office building in Bullfrog, they're gonna pay a hundred percent property tax versus housing is fifty percent. Hundred percent property tax to the school district, to the county, to the water district, et cetera, that helps offset those costs that the residents would have. As if it's all houses.
Plus it's a benefit to our buyer.
Right, not to mention.
And police.
Not to mention public safety, right? If there's fewer calls to that place, and they're paying a higher portion of the bill, it really helps balance that out. So there, there's a bigger part to that economic equation than just the sales tax.
Sure, we, I, I think I, I tried to say that.
So we, we love beating everyone in the head in regards to taxes and to revenue. What is the proposal that I've heard mentioned a couple of times that we're about to hear?
Okay, so I just said, are you driving this?
Yeah.
Is your email connected? I just emailed you a map, a map.
You made me air my laundry, but everybody?
Oh, sorry.
You, you showed me a preview of this part, so I kinda know where this is going.
So the, the plan is at seven thirty, it's two hours, I was gonna. I, I know, but just so everyone knows, at seven thirty, I was gonna uh, take a, a recess for about ten minutes. As we've been going for two hours at that point.
That makes eminently good sense. Yeah, it's gonna hurt like hell if you walk it off.
Oh, yeah. That's why I've been standing at the back of the room. Who's vibrating? I hear it now, this phone.
So same land use plan, uh, hopefully the rest of the layers loads, there we go. So again, there, we've talked about, there's three different, it's still kind of coming in, it looks like, but there's three different road alignment scenarios that.
What you say is a little unquick.
That's what he said.
That's what theoretically it was.
There we go, there we go. So I really think, as far as when we have this discussion about commercial, I think there's really three different things we need to address. And it's the three different road alignments. So what's the requirement if we have half the intersection? So again, both sides of U one eleven and one twenty-six, two of the four, maybe I need to say it that way, okay? So we have this side and this side, but we don't have these. So that's the goal of the thing, that's best case scenario for us. Possibility two is that this road, a hundred twenty-six South, ends up continuing straight through, and this intersection happens completely off-site. So I hope we would all understand and agree that we have a huge impact, negative impact to us commercially. If that intersection moves off-site completely. And then option three is that uh, a hundred twenty-six South makes a free-flow loop into U one eleven. And kind of ruins likely the interchange altogether, meaning it's, it's just not there. It becomes kind of a bypass road, which might be great for traffic flow, but it's not great for commercial. So those are the three scenarios that I think we need to come up with a if-this-than-that clause for, to kind of deal with those three. So, and again, I, I'm just gonna throw out some numbers, and these are up for discussion. So my first thought is, and Steve's already told me, no, it's not enough, so I'm just gonna tell you what I wrote down and we'll just talk about it. If we get this intersection on site, we would do a hundred and fifty thousand square feet inside this ring right here.
Quarter mile radius.
Yep, quarter mile. That's the town center, again, these names are just placeholders, town center, commercial node. Um, in addition to that, we would do an additional, commit to another ten thousand square feet up here at the top. This is where we've talked about doing kind of a resort, like to get a few restaurants, um, maybe a little bike shop, something to kind of support the trailhead.
How do we get a gas station?
An actual gas station?
Yeah, like the Maverick.
A thousand square feet, maybe?
Depends on.
Well, depends, well, Maverick's tricky, cause they build little and big, but. So ten thou- again, we're talking about gross leasable area, we're not talking about a ten thousand square foot lot, we're talking about ten thousand square feet.
Right.
So that, that would be kind of scenario one, so we'd have so- some, a hundred and fifty thousand here and another ten thousand up here. Option two is U one eleven and one twenty-six, the intersection happens off-site right here. If that were the case, then we would reserve thirty thousand square feet in this area here, in this node. And we would do ten thousand up here still. And then option three is that U one eleven and one twenty-six turn into this swinging road where it kind of bypasses us. And in that scenario, we would do ten thousand square feet of commercial here, eight thousand here and ten thousand here. Again, recognizing the need for some of these small boutique uses, again, so let me back up. Obviously, if we have the intersection, we're gonna do something way more substantial. Wherever that intersection lands, it's gonna be where the grocery store, the main grocery store. A Smith's, a Harman's, a Macy's or something, it's going to land at that intersection, wherever it's at. So that's why we're saying it's a substant- substantial reduction or negative impact to us, and we wanna do commercial, why would we not want to do that? So I, I think sometimes that the city thinks that we're at odds over this issue. I think we're only at odds over maybe what the amount is of, as far as a requirement, but we have every interest, desire. The community will be better for us if there is commercial, so I just wanna say that. So again, a hundred and fifty here, that, you don't necessarily need these little small infill, we'd have something up here substantial. Not as substantial, but something large here, but again, it just kind of scales, you'll see how it tapers depending on what happens with the road. So that's kind of what we're proposing.
The logic came from that is to be sort of like the park system, you wanna be neighborhood, so you're gonna be within certain radiuses, and you need. Community support facilities, so that's where the logic came from.
And these are.
And those are, those are minimums that you're proposing, Ryan?
Correct, not maximums. We're not proposing any caps on commercial. But again, the county did have a cap on us at seventy-five acres total, um, we're not asking for a cap, I guess you could put one on us, but.
So have we? I appreciate the, the information that you've provided from some of the other people you've reached out to. I know internally, we've been looking at ways, having a, what are they called?
Retail recruiter.
Retail recruiter or coach. Have we, have we done, I guess, any of our own looks, our own research? In terms of some of the entities that are out there and what, if we have what information? Again, this isn't, I think, we all would love to say, yes, you know, five hundred, whatever the number is, you know, that we're all but. The reality of it is, is that there are some limiting factors, and there's some metrics to how they determine that, even the people that are in the business. Have we done any look at that, and if so, what is that information?
So I did ask um, our retail consultant to look at this property, we gave them this map. Well, we gave them the one of the roads, so that they could see where the proposed intersection is. Um, they said that, you know, they gave us a very rough estimate, and it is based off of if that intersection. Is where it is on this paper. Um, and then said that there's several other factors that have to be considered. If you have other retail entities that are within four miles. It, it changes. So they gave a rough estimate that two hundred thousand square feet of retail. As long as there is a grocery anchor, um, and then that would lead to additional neighborhood retail, pharmacies, fast foods. Small office, um, but again, these things will also depend on the layout of the development. Where housing types are located, um, and then housing prices, so. It's kind of laid, it, it kind of depends on a lot of factors, but based off of that intersection and where all of the roads intersect. They have two hundred thousand square feet of retail.
Within, they looked at the, the entire development?
It's not just one area.
And they just did retail.
Well, no, it's all, it's everything. He said, when he says retail, it's everything, so.
And tell me, you mentioned something else about a four mile of. Just recap what you said there, sorry.
He said that if there, so that we have retail centers within so many miles, so if there's large shopping centers. Within so many miles of this development, this development is not going to have large shopping centers. So like, a Mountain View Village is likely not to happen based off of mileage. But again, it's just going to depend on what destination could you go. If you get a destination, that changes everything. So, so then you might be able to get more retail, so. There's, there's a lot of determining factors at play. And that's just his rough estimate, just basically looking at that map, plus what Harriman currently has, and then our neighboring areas.
So, so that did take into account what other commercial slash retail, however you wanna phrase it. Exists or is, is planned in the city?
Yes, he looked at the city's map, and then the map of this area, and then knowing.
A four miles would include most if not all of Mountain View Village.
So Anthem, Anthem was included.
And Anthem will pull in surface questions.
And again, if you have, if you get a destination in there, that could change it, your numbers could go up. So, and again, he said, this is a very rough estimate, I mean, it's, this is usually something that takes them quite a bit of time to examine. So he's going to keep looking at it, but that's just his rough number.
Chase, can you pan a little bit to the east?
You know. It's interesting, right? Cause pre-COVID, you guys had a different view, they probably would have had a different number.
And he did pre-COVID.
In the middle of a pandemic, people have definitely, I would say. A more pessimistic view of retail, not, not a lot of people are expanding, we're not seeing office buildings, people are telemuting. We understand all that stuff, right? And some of that is temporary, some of that is new trends, right? Um, so. I would put this out that. The current circumstances probably bring the numbers down low, whereas the previous circumstances and the. The one point seven million of the traffic study are probably wildly optimistic, right? So I, I think we're kind of at the two extremes a little bit. I understand why, as a developer, you would want to be on the low end of that extreme, right? Makes it a lot easier for you to meet those thresholds. Um, but I think as a. As a city, we, I think we wanna advocate for as much as we can as well, right? And somewhere in there, there lies a compromise and a, and a reasonable place for us to be, so. And somewhere in there, there lies a compromise and a reasonable place for us to be. So. I I don't know what anybody else's thoughts are. Um I I'm gonna just spit this out. Probably get beat up over it, but um. I I like the Highland Alpine comparison just because demographics are similar, the cul-de-sac idea is similar, right? Their total square footage built up. Again, this analysis was done in twenty nineteen, right? Twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen.
Sixteen numbers.
Right, twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen. So this was way before there was a pandemic problem, right? So I I I understand that, you know, one point eight million of total commercial square footage between retail and office. I don't think that's a realistic number. I'm just gonna put that out there. That's probably ridiculous here, right? I think I could cut those numbers in half easily, just based on pandemic, right? I think you go easily from one way to nine hundred thousand without even blinking. Um I think you could cut the office part down probably even farther. I don't see ten fifty thousand square foot office space buildings being built out here. That's just not likely. You could maybe, like you talked about, maybe get a hotel out there. That's forty fifty thousand square feet for a big hotel, right? Probably even a little smaller for like a courtyard or a Hilton or, you know. Maybe maybe we get a a grocery store or medical facility or something, right? That might be forty to eighty thousand square feet, depending how big that is, right? So you know, start adding some of those things in, maybe, you know, hundred thousand, hundred twenty-five thousand of office space. Something like that on a, I'm, again, I'm being optimistic, right?
Steve, just really quick, I just wanna, I think, support where you're going, at least on the office space. I have a, I have a family member who works in the banking industry. Think you relate, but they've worked for Wells Fargo. I've worked downtown for years. Um have now been in their basement for the last eighteen months and uh and as I had a conversation the other day. Doesn't believe that he'll ever see the downtown office building again because they have found deficiencies and some of those other things. You know, some of them forced upon him, but they're finding that they're just as, I guess, effective in their workforce. So I I think you're right. I think, I think we want, to your point, I think there is a little bit of a pessimistic view of that right now. But I think, I think what comes out the other side, especially when it comes to office space, is going to be drastically different.
Be different.
Drastically different, I believe, than what we saw going into it based on how people have adapted.
And and you know, with the idea of a silicon slopes, a lot of the tech companies have announced, like Google. Saying we won't bring any of these employees back, right? It's just not gonna happen. So I I I understand these new realities, right? I'm gonna throw these numbers out, right? It's just a place to start from. I think that a really optimistic number for this area. Might be five or six hundred thousand square feet. That's all in. And that's, that's really on an optimistic view, okay? I think the pessimistic view is probably closer to that under fifty to two hundred range. Cause that's kind of what we're getting, maybe two hundred. You got one at two hundred, we have one at two hundred, another one at one fifty. That's, that's probably the the pessimistic range. I'm gonna lean towards a more realistic range and think that that number's probably somewhere closer to. Four hundred-ish, three fifty, something like that. I think that's. Based on all the numbers that I can see, based on all the feedback I've gotten, look, I've worked in in real um. Residential and commercial finance for twenty-five years. I've financed shopping malls and all kinds of things all around the country, ski resorts. So I I have an understanding of what some of these aspects are. Based on all the resources that I've reached out to, people I've talked to around the country and all the analysis. I don't think that that number is an unrealistic number. Um I would say it's on the higher end of a realistic possibility. So I'm, I'm, I'm not saying it has to stay there, that, you know, four hundred is the magic number. But based on my numbers, that's kind of where I'm coming in.
Steve, are you, are you saying, just to clarify, you're saying that that's if the U one.
Yeah, that's it, that's with this. Yeah, best, best case scenario, I think it's probably closer to four hundred thousand square feet.
Okay, I just wanna make sure.
And if it moves off, there's a totally different. I I mean, I, I had actually come in with the idea, okay, we say it's six hundred if it's on. It's four hundred if it moves a little bit different and then it's, you know, two hundred if it moves totally different way. But I I kind of threw that out cause I, as I looked at it, I just don't think, I think we're gonna get six hundred out here. So I I'm open to debate and discussion and challenge. I just. I'm trying to be realistic and hopeful for our city as well, you know?
I guess I would go back to some of the comments that were made, uh I think by Bruce earlier, just about um the, you know, the. And then the comment that was made again, it was like, of course, there will be land that sits that that. But it's no different than we're talking about preservation, corridor preservation. If we don't have a vision and preserve it, it'll never happen. And it will just infill with houses and it just simply will. If we, if, because right now, that's what's selling. You can, you can build all these houses in a hurry and sell them, cause that's what's selling. But if we don't preserve the commercial. I don't wanna have the same scenario. I have no idea what Ken and Scott are gonna do. I've met with them uh a while back and they said, no, we're not even interested in that right now. Now, I know they have other meetings with people, but they are interested. I don't know. It's it's not, it's not, it's not to me. It's such a different landowner. They may wanna come in here, they may not. And so again, what I don't wanna do is. Is say, yeah, but if that intersection's up there, we're never gonna get anything here. So like Riverton. All that's gonna be built across the border from Harman. I don't wanna, I don't wanna set it up so that has to be. Because we didn't do a good job of preserving the opportunity for commercials to come in. I understand the frustration of a developer for sure. It's sitting on land with money, right? And and that's difficult, but but uh for, and that's different for your role, but for my role. And what I believe our role is to be is long-term planning of cities. And I want these residents to have access to services. Without hacking to necessarily leave, like they could jump on the new U one eleven and and go to their jobs. Because they've already rented the grocery store. On their way home, they hurry and hop off and go to the grocery store and go home, or they grab some gas. Or a bunch of them drop their kids off at the ice cream shop, cause that's where they work, or at the bike shop or things like that, that that provide some jobs and things like that. I don't, I don't, never ever, well, even in our studies that we have, never ever. Assume that there's gonna be a mega shopping center like with Zet Mountain View. It's already been told to us it's not gonna happen. The proximity is wrong, right? And and retail has changed, but I I don't think, I think that we will see commercial come back. It might look a little bit different and we're, and we're gonna make some tweaks. We have people at the water district, I was just there. Some of those people might continue to work from home, but lots of them are starting to migrate back into the office. I don't think that this is a forever change. I think some, like Clint said, yeah, it makes more sense. But I think that we'll see that balance out and equal out a little bit more. So I think to make decisions based on what COVID did. I think would be short sighted. I just think we have to look at more of the long-term range of of things than.
So I'm gonna cut in at this point. Uh it is now seven thirty. We wouldn't go for two hours. So I'm go, uh I'm going to ta- uh to call for a. Ten minute recess till uh to to just give everyone a chance to use the restroom, get a drink, whatever you can do. And we'll come back in about.
Alright, so um what I'd like to do, um so we've got a kind of a range that we're looking at in commercial, somewhere between one hundred, four hundred and five hundred, somewhere in that range, right? Uh what I'd like to do is I'd like to move on to some of these other items, uh see if we can knock some of these out. And as we, once we get everything really on the table, kind of come back to the overall conversation we had. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to move on to open space at this, at this point. Uh thoughts on open space?
So I don't know if you guys talked about this before I came, but um one thing I I would feel adamant on my my portion is that little tiny corner or S T A. It doesn't get to stay red and the other thing. If you're gonna call it neighborhood park on a on a park thing, there take it off there or take it off the other because it sends a mixed message. And what it does is it entitles that piece of property to be worth a whole lot of money. And then and then if you're only gonna use it as a park, that's a problem. So I I think that that should not be, I I think it's improper to have it reflected in both things. It's counted as part of this itself.
Okay, I can explain to you why we've shown that way, but maybe you can explain. So on the open space map, uh which one you want?
Sorry, go go back, open space.
Obviously, the intent is that there's going to be a trailhead there, but it's, the county is not a party to develop.
This isn't an open space map, this is a park map.
Oh, sorry, Chase, can you go to R?
I think that because.
R did open it.
R did open it.
Oh, no, no, this is a, this is a.
How, what percentage of your open space requirement is this represented?
Uh a little more than half.
Right, that's what I'm saying, it's, it's not really, it's it's where the parks are gonna be.
Right, right, it's, it's, cause a lot of royalty pop apart including the town.
Right, all that other stuff, right.
And not designated, they're not designated, it does not be enough to be used in the city, right? Or this is anything too little, right?
Two acres of arcades.
Yeah, yeah, right. But that, but I, but I understand that the county is talking about that as trailheads for sure, I understand that.
So one thing that we want to talk about with open space is kind of a, if for some reason the county, and I know this is like a very unlikely, they've already appropriated funds to start doing the improvements there, but we have to come up with a scenario that we deal with, the possibility that for some reason the county doesn't accept that property, then what are we gonna do with that?
Just make it into a park.
Yeah, well, that's what I want to talk, that's what I was actually gonna suggest.
Got it.
So, so that's why.
We're jumping on the gun there, Sherry.
So.
Give you what you want.
Um if you flip back to the land use plan, we had a specific reason for wanting to show it red is depending on what the makeup and shape of that actually looks like. Um we would love the idea of trying to put a little bike shop and maybe, again, it may end up up around the corner, but like I was telling you guys before, uh I go to mountain bike races all the time because I have a son that's in it. And there's nowhere to eat, there's nowhere to get your bike serviced if you need something real quick. So that's why we showed it red is so we have preserved the ability to do some commercial there. Yeah, and but again, it shows intent, I know it's confusing, but that's why we've shown it both ways. So anyway.
I I my my problem with it is is just entitling land with density increases the value of land at different points. And so if if this is gonna be exchanged with the people I pay taxes to, I don't want this to be valued at more than it's really actually valued and what it's worth truly is going to be for them, does that make sense to you? I'm not suggesting that that's your your arterial motive and you guys are going after that, but that kind of thing does happen, right? If you get entitled and this land right now is worth, it has no water, it has very little value because without water on a piece of property, it has no value, it's dry land farm. No value to it. That piece, I think, is done more in the creek bottom, right? Except where it has a kind of butt up into like where the wild boar's trails and stuff are.
Yeah.
Yeah.
You can see the topo, this part sits higher and then it comes down and meets the rate, the middle rate.
Yeah, right. And so, um yeah, there's forces going out, time and stuff, yeah. Um and so it has some water, so it has a little bit more value because there's water associated with it. But until a land's entitled with development rights and things like that, then the values change substantially. And if we put the maximum, the value on here, it's the very maximum that you can build anywhere, then the value increases substantially with that. And so that that concerns me, that that it inflates the value of that piece of property. The intent is the intent is really only to put the trailhead there and maybe a bike shop versus saying you can put twenty, you could put a whole lot of apartments on that piece of property, do you see what I'm saying?
Yeah, I do, I guess I'm, um I guess what I'm trying to say is I don't know how to, I I don't know that the city is interested in building a trailer there if the county doesn't, I don't know, I've never heard that you're interested in doing it. It's a road, it'd be a piece to nowhere for the city because they don't own all the trails and stuff, that's the county and state that own that. So I I've never heard any interest from the city to construct that trailhead. So that's why we've shown it both ways to signal intent, but not be locked into that in the, in the event the county for some reason didn't want that property.
And so if they didn't want it, you wanted to put apartments there?
I don't know, I'm.
You're gonna put a park somewhere.
No, she said apartments, not apartments.
Oh, apartments, oh, I thought you said a park.
I don't know, I mean, that's what it's shown, I guess, to your point. And and again, the red isn't just for apartments, you can put townhomes in there and stuff as well.
Are you selling that property to the county or are you dedicating it to them?
Um we're not, I don't, we wouldn't be selling it to them, no.
For trade.
Could be a trade or it could be. It could be just a straight dedication.
Cause that was your concern, right?
Yeah.
If we're turning, if we're titling it with twenty units an acre, then we turn it around and sell it to them at that price.
Or we trade, it doesn't matter, sell or trade, whatever the value is at that point is what is what the value, the new value of the land is.
So if the, if the county does what they're gonna do with it, you want to do counted as park space in this.
Yeah, if they're gonna put a trailhead there, absolutely, that's a park.
Why wouldn't you count it if it's not the city, to your point?
If, if the trailhead went to the county and the county spent.
Why wouldn't you count it towards this?
Cause it's open space.
It's in Kennedy, not in Herrmann.
No, it's in, it's part of the annexation here, it's annexed into Herrmann, it would be.
The trailhead would be within Herrmann City, go to the other, go to the other map.
It'd be a county park inside the city. Paid for by the county, yeah.
Yeah. And and the understanding is they've allocated for that entire area, that entire pond, or is it just a portion of that pond? This is a twenty acre area, which is what we've been talking about with them for a drill. So.
So is there an option to do just something like we've done on a few other things in here, and if then?
Yeah.
Statement to to clarify that.
That's exactly what I was gonna suggest that we do is because Steve had brought this up about we need to address the different scenarios. But again, the county's not a party to development, so we can't be obligated to give something or or transfer something to the county if they're saying we're not gonna do that. So our thought was to say, signal intent, our intent is that the county ends up with this. And if they don't accept it, then we would agree to put a park there and we need to determine jointly what size park that is. I mean, two acres absolute minimum because that's your minimum standard for a city park. So somewhere between two acres and whatever, we gotta come up with a solution tonight, so that's one of the things that I do want to talk about.
And where is the rest of that park space then?
We're still have the same obligation overall that twenty percent of the project has to be open space.
So they have to find it someplace else in their development to meet their minimum.
Yes. So when do you have a question then?
Okay, I'll try.
So the other day that I got like addressed this stuff from the rugby team and it's like, it'd be really nice. So how big is a good big programmable park? More than two acres?
So a rugby field is about one and a three quarter acre, it's the biggest field.
Right, but like she was talking, I think, more than just a little field.
Sure.
Well, that would be, I mean, if we were going, that's just a field, you gotta have all the.
All the ancillary stuff.
Cycle, parking.
So let's talk about Butterfield Park as an example, right, one of the biggest parks. It's about fifty seven acres, more than half of it is encumbered by shop space and arena. The actual active play space is about twenty five acres.
And it's packed, all of that?
Pretty much, yeah, well, during spring, summer, fall, right?
Yeah, in the the sports season.
Oh, in in February, it's it's really busy.
Yeah.
Right.
The top field where we can fit three uh football fields for our new leagues is five point six acres.
Can't tell where that is from that picture.
So that can, oh, yes, there you go. So that area right there is five point six acres, the parking up there is one point seven two acres, that's just that lot adjacent to us.
So that section right there.
That whole, that whole section.
With the baseball fields.
With the baseball fields is about twenty five acres.
So it's a little bit bigger than this parcel that we're talking about?
Just a little bit bigger than the parcel you're talking about.
And it's just simply a few football fields and a baseball.
That's not enough with just houses.
And the pavilion, yeah.
Square.
I guess again, when we're talking about the the type of housing that you're wanting to put into Olympia, there's gonna be a lot of kids in there. And they're gonna need some programmable places to put, programmable park space, not just, not just trails. Cause a lot of this open space that you guys are counting towards twenty percent is trails. And it, that does do use, no, well, yeah, they can run up and down the trail, I guess, but it doesn't.
It doesn't relieve the pressure of the density.
It doesn't, yeah, and it doesn't address the the real need for programmable fields, simply doesn't.
So how many, how many, uh can we go back to the other map? Parks map? Yeah, I know that they're minimum two acres, how many of these are larger than five acres? That have flat, like, so, look at K, how big would K end up being?
It's about fourteen, fifteen.
About only seven of us.
Two fifteen on the one side or on both sides combined?
That's combined, those two combined, they're about, they're about seventy.
One side.
Sorry, only seven from Olympia and seven is from the Dantie. And there's some topo on that too, right?
And that.
That's pretty fun.
That was pretty good.
That's my last.
It's one of the best places that we found for open space.
I just see some wavy line here.
The sandy side.
There's a contour.
Those are ten foot contours.
Those are fives.
Or fives.
Yeah.
So over the park it drops fifty feet?
Thirty.
Thirty?
Thirty to forty feet.
Anyway, and 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 but we're on the hook to put that one in.
Right.
So so that's.
As of right now, right?
Yeah, right, so in that agreement, that's not, so that, the only real big programmable park is something that Herrmann's gonna be putting in. Cause this park in, it's not very, none of the rest of them are like what I would call people wrong with the parks, like we have a Butterfield or something like that.
Yeah, there's a, what a forty seven acre park just right there, yeah.
Forty seven.
Just north right there.
Yeah.
But there's hospital apartment units and a whole bunch of density that's going in up the Cree Creek.
Time for the population in that area.
You know, I mean, that's that's the problem I have is like sixty three hundred units, how many children do you think are gonna be there?
We're talking thirty thousand people in this one space, that's a lot of pressure.
Yeah, I I just.
So so maybe I would look at Wendy and say, on a, on a regional park of forty acres, what kind of populations would we be looking to have that support?
I haven't done an analysis on that on a population base, right?
Would you expect that that would, would you, a- and I'm, like, like. I don't know how there's even a metric.
I know.
Like the shortages we already have in the city plus the Cree Creek's development and the Teton development and everything else and Olympia Hills, that forty something acre park is gonna be able to alleviate all of that?
No, certainly not.
Exactly.
But maybe the developer or Eric, he could speak to what each of these is.
Well, let let me just provide, I think one number is I think helpful for you guys as well to consider. So again, we have a twenty percent open space requirement on the project, which is consistent with our entitlement, but it's also consistent with what you guys have um been entitlement in your ordinance or your.
It's not consistent with our current ordinance.
Yeah, our current ordinance has adjustments up to twenty five percent for different topos and things like that, so so it's not consistent with our.
Honestly, that like, that's the big sticking point for me, is you want to do less than what we require for anyone else in an area that is far denser than anywhere else where you need it most.
Okay, so it's, the numbers I have is that the current open space within the city, there are three point seven acres of open space per thousand residents in Herrmann City. In Olympia, we'll have seven point six acres per thousand residents within our area, so it's more than double the amount of open space that the rest of Herrmann currently has. Now, we can argue about programmable.
Yeah, that that's the problem, I understand your openness.
Well, and we haven't, I mean, again, so we can talk about some of those things, that's why open space is on here, because I know it's a, it's a sticking pointer, it's an important issue and it's important for us too. We, we have spent a lot of time, maybe Chase, switch to the trails map, we believe that the trails are a huge benefit to the community in the whole. And these trails aren't just Olympia trails, these connect regionally to trails that would go through Riverton and into South Jordan. And will bring people up from all over the place that we think is a huge regional trail. Do the kids need programmable space? A hundred percent. Are we on board to provide some of that? Absolutely. This Cree Creek's gonna provide a lot of that where it has more favorable topography for a massive amount of football and soccer and lacrosse and rugby fields. Absolutely, the, all of these things have to be part of the solution, but we also have to recognize our topography is lends itself more towards trails and mountain biking and hiking paths than expanses of grass. And so that's why we've been trying to come up with areas where it makes sense to put programmable areas. And we, again, there's different areas that we could talk about, but definitely this is the major one, has favorable topography comparatively on our site. This is definitely another one, I think right now it's shown at approximately five acres. And you know, some of these other areas are gonna be a little bit more challenging um to put fields. They're not impossible, but they're gonna be more challenging. This park in here is designed to be more of an urban park and not, not a soccer field, not a rugby field, this, it's more of a long linear park or um more of a turbine park.
For events and gatherings.
Yeah, more of a gathering area.
So I mean, total, point taken on the topography, absolutely, but that's why we put those provisions into what we're attempting. Cause why should the owner of Cree Bridge give more than you? Right, if it's, if it's basically the range we put in, it's like if it's unusable, it doesn't get counted at a hundred percent because it's unusable. Right? Long, proportionate amount of usable space.
And I maybe, my understanding is from staff that where these are system improvements going through those areas, that does make them eligible.
Not according to our, out of our rules.
So so hold on, we've got, I'm I'm seeing.
Might make them eligible for impacting free investments, but not by twenty percent.
So. I'm seeing, I'm seeing maybe some disagreement on whether or not that's the way it's being administered administered by staff. So it's a, it's a very legitimate point that you're making, but I don't wanna go in and say yes or no, until we have clarification of what we've actually been administering and what that decision would have been up to this point. Cause that's some clarification we we need.
What does it say?
That's what, that's what I'm, and they're, they're desperately looking it up, so I don't wanna keep going and saying yes, 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 when that's not what we would do.
Well, so is the question, what Cree Creek's is doing or if there's a trail, does it count to that? Well, so is the question what Cree Creek's doing or if there's a trail, does it count as kind of something?
Well, what what does our, cause we.
What does our ordinance say?
We may change these two ordinance on how we count open space going forward.
It's four.
Because we're tired of this happening where it's unusable space that gets counted acre for acre, right, square foot for square foot with usable spaces. The distance, right?
My understanding and I don't disagree, you're.
We did.
I think your interpretation is is right. I think I think my understanding of that is though is that when you have clearly just. A hillside that you can't do anything with, it's at twenty five percent, but when you have trails that that create connectivity through that, that changes how that is looked at. That's at least my understanding, is that accurate?
And I think that's what we're trying to find an answer to in regards to this.
But so I had a conversation with Ryan, I don't even know, time has just changed. And then you're asking me what 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 why I said open space, what 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 I was trying to get to. The point is, is that it's not open space we're looking for. We're looking for programmable.
No way.
I don't I don't agree with that.
No, no, wait, wait, wait.
We're looking for both.
Right, but when I say was we need more usable open space, I don't think that's we need more trail.
I do.
I don't think that's we need more.
I don't I don't agree with us and 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 I don't agree with that either. I think we need, we absolutely need trail connectivity. I absolutely think that that is part of it.
A twenty two acre trail does not provide recreation for the kids. That's not a recreation space for them.
Sure it does. It de- it depends on your, it depends on your view of recreation. That kid that's that likes to to mountain bike or likes to just hike, absolutely that does.
Sure, but there's tens of thousands of more kids that are involved in soccer and lacrosse and baseball and football and everything.
I don't I don't agree with that. I absolutely don't agree with that.
So so do you have, so so you're, I think there's good points on both sides. And I don't think we, I think we have anecdotal evidence on either side of that argument. So I don't wanna get too heavily into the the argument either way. The question goes back and what I'm still trying to get out of staff here is and they're they're desperately trying to find it for us.
I guess. So straight subdivisions aren't required in the open space.
Okay.
PUDs are required twenty percent.
Okay.
If that area is unbuildable, then it counts as twenty five percent. So one acre would, for example, if you had one acre unbuildable area. Cause it was in a flood plain or a wetland or something, you'd only get quarter acre.
Correct.
That's the way we've typically applied our MDA.
But define un- unbuildable.
It's right here.
The slope.
Thank you.
What section are you in?
Open space is unbuildable because of.
Yeah, what section is it?
Blake, what section?
It's ten fifteen C dash six. So open space that is unbuildable because among other things, smoke, wetlands, flood drainage or contamination, twenty five percent of the acres required to satisfy applicable open space requirements.
So is any of this slope?
Is there any? Is there any provision anywhere in there that talks about if there's a system improvement, if there's, if it's.
You can count the pension basins if they have a recreational amenity.
So what's an unbuildable slope? Is any of this an unbuildable slope? So then it's kind of a challenge.
Oh wow.
Then it's right there, right?
Well, I think if you're over thirty percent.
I mean, that's not buildable.
So if you wanna go back to code, unbuildable in our city code is if you're.
It's not. Yeah, it's not a much, yeah.
Thirty percent, okay.
So so I think there's this particular issue, I think just got real complicated real quick, cause I'm not sure. Everybody was sitting on the same understanding and the same plane on this particular item. So I don't, I I wanna be careful. Um, as we have this conversation, making sure that there's an understanding that we're all trying to work in good faith here and that. There's, I'm still not a hundred percent sure, cause I've always been under the impression that if we put a trail or some sort of amenity on it, like a trail. Um, or a playground or something like that, that changed the requirement.
That's just the intention, the intention.
And and so that's what I'm saying is I think that there there's, I still have, I would still wanna go back and look at this personally. But I can understand realistically why there's some um some differences of of what we're looking at here. So I don't wanna get. I wanna make sure that we're very careful about. Being clear that we're all trying to work in a positive way to find a, you know, find resolution on this as opposed to you did or you didn't or we did or we didn't or whatever.
There's no accusations at all. My statement simply, that's my big sticking point is it doesn't conform to our standard.
Well, and remember that what Blake shared was the plan development standard. Technically, this is not, does it have a plan development overlay, right? This is a new zoning tool and we can create whatever the standard is as part of this. You know, the design standards.
I guess that's that's my issue is we we've made these rules for this specific situation and now you just wanna throw it out. Like this is where we need it most.
So I just say you may not, that might not be a hundred percent correct, because this is an unusually topographical property and it just.
Everybody says that.
Well, that that's not, I I don't think that's correct. I mean, you've got, the reason you have the master plan community tool is to deal with unusual pieces of property, especially this situation that's got. Entitlements in another jurisdiction and they're just, there's not very many flat spots on this property to put programmable space. It's just a fact of topography. If you were trying to cut a soccer field, you know, a ten acre, twenty seven acre park into here. You'd be taking half a mountainside away and then we'd be here, people complaining that we're we're having seventy foot retaining.
They put it where where the topo isn't as much.
I I understand, I understand.
Make a bigger park.
That's the that's the one eleven interchange where you wanna put commercial.
But but I understand that that point.
Um, and so.
But the problem with that is is then that that is kind of the the coin of the land, right? Um, there are places that are perfectly nice topo and so their land is higher value because it's more developed and things like that. More usable space, right? And someone doesn't have that. And so you try, you try and mitigate that. But what ends up happening to the city, I can tell you right at the end of my street, if you wanna go look, seventy three hundred west. If you look at the hillside going up like that, guess what the city got? The hillside, that's our dedicated open space. Cause no, no use for us at all, but they but they got to count that as open space because they met the. Cause they had to meet a requirement of that and that's why we had changed the the ordinance to say that so that we we're always just getting. Only thing you can put on there is a trail, you can't do this. And that was satisfying all the open space and then we keep getting farther and farther and farther behind in programmable space for our use. And and this is, this, and you keep saying, we're getting more open space, we're getting more open space, we're also getting. Way, way higher percentage of multifamily density and this is anywhere in our entire city. By by thirty percent, twenty percent, a huge percentage of that. So when you're saying we're gonna pack a lot of people into here in tight quarters. But then our topo doesn't work for programmable fields, but then it's like, where do these kids play?
We never said that.
No, I I'm just, I'm I'm not, sorry, I don't, I I'm just trying to just explain.
So part of where, part of where this came from is the other, those three apartment complexes, right? On the over by the high school in Anthony. That whole area over there is short on parks. And it's it's a way I describe it is it's a pressure cooker. Put that many people, especially younger people in that area with nowhere to go play, they can go hang out at a trail. She's not talked about this a million times, they go hang out at a trail and they're hanging out, basically interrupting what's supposed to be going on there and a lot of times it ended up doing no good. So that's only. And there's nowhere, there's nowhere for them to go out and run or kick a ball or throw a ball or whatever, let alone go play a game, you know, with their organized team. Right now, as it is, we have every time we have a practice, I have to drive out of the city. Right, there's there's, we don't have it anywhere and this is even less with even more pressure. So for me, just the starting point is. What our ordinance is.
Can I just, one question about this too. So in the county plan, there was a requirement for one fifty acre park and four ten acre. I'm not suggesting that necessarily that's the right plan or the wrong plan, but what what were your plans to accomplish that requirement? I mean, how would you have done that?
Steve, can I interject with that too? And were there any trails planned with the county in addition to those?
So for sure trails, but not the trailhead. That trailhead was never contemplated.
Right, okay.
As part of the county.
So these same trails that are up here were with the county, but in addition, there was these parks, is that correct?
Yeah, but the trails have evolved a little bit as we've been working with Wendy, who she's been working obviously with Riverton and South Jordan and trying to connect and make a more of a regional trail rather than a Hermann trail.
Sure.
So it has, it has grown um and evolved a little bit, but it's, yes, we definitely were planning on trails through these areas. The county counted, our current agreement, all of this open space that you guys are talking about counts in our development agreement. So so I understand, I hear what everyone's saying. Our position is it it needs to count. Now, there's two different things I'm hearing. There's things, one issue is what counts and what doesn't count. And then I'm hearing we need more programmable space. They're two different things. So I think we need to separate the issue. For us, it that all needs to count, all the hillside. Now, if we wanna talk about programmable space, then let's talk about that, but they're two, they're two different issues for us. So.
The county, the county agreement did not have a fifty acre programmable space. I just wanted to be clear about that. It was.
I'm not saying it was, I'm just saying.
Yeah, I I know. I just I just wanted to make sure that everybody understood that that was not a fifty acre program.
And let me be clear, when I say more programmable space, I'm not suggesting we want less of this, because I think these amenities are gonna be.
I I'm.
Beautiful, right? I mean, these big long trails of the hillside, I I think it's gonna be a fantastic add.
Right.
I'm not saying take that away.
So.
So if I can, I mean, we're less than three into this and the question over and over from from the public and for us is. Why is this, how is this gonna be better for Hermann, being in Hermann versus the county? That's why we keep referring to the county. What like? How are we benefiting from it being here other than some one time money? Like how is any of the plan gonna be better, right? So far, we're all three, I I I don't know how that is. And that's just, that's just something to 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 new along as we go away from tonight. Like that's really the question the public has and at least some of us here have.
I think there's a, I think I want to consider there's a huge financial benefit, not one time money. I'm going.
I've I've looked at all the numbers and that it's debatable depending on what you look at. When it comes to the plan, that was our thing with, that's the thing with the plan at the county. Why there, why there was a referendum, weren't happy with the plan at the county. How is that plan gonna be better inherently? And I'm not, I'm not asking for an answer now, like.
There's a lot of answers.
I I I I wanna, you just said some of these debates. So you're saying that the financial analysis that we got from our finance director, you're saying it's debatable based on the way we look at it? Is that, is that, I'm just trying to make sure I understood the statement that you just made, cause I get that there's a debatable difference between an outside party and our own finance team.
I'll word it this way, there, I'm not saying that any of the numbers are wrong, but in in how you interpret it, there's one, one part that talks about, and we talked about it tonight already. Is the offsite improvement. Right, the way, the way that it's presented, at least the way it was presented to me is if it's not in Hermann, we don't get this. No, we 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 do. It's in the county agreement, right? There's several things like that. And I'm not saying that Hermann won't benefit financially. What I'm trying to say is that, what, where is the plan different? How are we make, how are we, how is Hermann making the plan different?
Hundred and fifty thousand guaranteed square feet of commercial within uh the word, X number of guaranteed square feet of commercial, uh it's just one. Uh, parks that go to the city are is another.
It's only guaranteed under certain conditions and everything else. I mean, and again, the promise that was made is.
Predictions are hard, Yogi Berra said predictions are hard, especially about the future. Um, and you know, that's.
I'm just posing the question.
You you asked the question and I.
Like we're, we're, we seem to be butting heads on each of these issues down the line and I'm just, we just wanna kind of reset the deck so you know kind of where at least some of us are coming from. Is, like when I answer to but to the constituents, like that's the question, Jared. How how is this better for, you know, insider boundaries versus out? I get that, yet there's a money issue, but how is the plan better?
I I agree with the question you're asking and I think we need to answer it, but I cannot agree with you.
It's just, it's just a general question.
The money issue and sweeping it aside.
What I'm saying.
It's a hundred and twenty million dollars.
Of what?
Even if it's one time money, that's saying, listen, I. In the way I get paid, half of my salary comes in bonuses. This year, about fifty percent of my entire salary is gonna come in bonuses. Those are not guaranteed. Those come on a quarterly basis based on my performance each quarter. Right, you're trying to say, Steve, you cannot be responsible, even though I've I've got a twenty year history of making these bonuses. Your argument is saying, I should not count that money because it's one time money, it's bonus money, it's not my real salary.
See, I, I get paid a hundred percent that way. No.
But the the problem is, you cannot dismiss a hundred and twenty million dollar impact on this city.
And I'm not, and I'm not. I'm. I'm not tracking, you totally took that, you totally.
That's right, you just waved your hand and pushed it aside, are you kidding me?
What I, what I'm saying and waving my hand is that I'm, I don't want to debate the the money, the numbers. My point is, right, and the, and their original point that they made is the question I'm asking, the question people are asking of me is how is the plan better? Right, we can talk about a financial gain. That's that's my wave of the hand. We can talk about a financial gain and and, you know, six ways till Sunday. But the fundamental question I'm getting asked and that I'm asking as we go through this MDA is how is the plan better? That's it, that's the only question.
And and again, I'm not debating that question. I think, I think.
Yeah, if you, when we can talk about the money stuff another, another time, that's the only question I wanted to pose to them. They brought up the money, not me.
Right, but I, again, if nothing changed in the plan, nothing changed in the plan. We didn't make one alteration to the county's MDA and it was annexed into the city, it would be a hundred and twenty million dollars better.
May I make a comment to that? On the hundred and twenty million dollars, are you talking about one time money, about what you're talking about?
In in building permits and total impact on the city. That's what, that's what Alan's total number was, hundred and twenty nine dollars.
Yeah, I I guess because I've been trying to study upon um one time money, building fees and stuff like that. Those are pretty regulated, right? They're they're, you're not, they're not supposed to be a um moneymaker for the city. What they're supposed to do, from what I understand, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, is they're supposed to cover the costs associated with building that. So if you don't have those costs in your city, you don't need a hundred and twenty million because you're not assuming the costs associated with that building. So it is covering your inspectors and your building department and all those people who have to work and all the things that are associated with, is that incorrect?
Partially correct, yes. A por.
So a portion of it is like?
Portion of it goes to cover that.
Yeah, and what is, okay, so what does the other portion go to?
It goes to the general fund, which the city can appropriate as they need.
A a part, like eighty percent of it goes to general fund or how much of a percentage is legal to. Or are we gouging the builders and saying you guys have to pay us fifty thousand dollars for each building and so we can put it in the general?
So the statute. And Bruce, you can correct me if I'm wrong, simply says that the city can charge a reasonable amount to to cover their costs, their administrative costs.
And the Tu- there's a Tuilah, there's a case from Tuilah that says that the city doesn't have to be exact on that and it recognizes that. That it's not a, a precise calculation and everyone knows across the state that the city, that a a a decent amount of that money. A reasonable guess winds up in the general fund of the city. But there's also, Alan has pointed out this, you get the sales tax that's point of sale as opposed to just the one time monies as well.
No, I I for sure. I I'm just trying to deal with the one time money.
The one time money is uh, some of it is for cost, providing cost of services, some of it goes to administration, which is just general overhead. So it does release, reduce the cost of overhead to the rest of the city. Uh, some, I'm sorry?
For a time, cause while it's being built and things like that.
I I understand that, but but yeah, but I'd sort of, you wanna give me a million dollars, I'll take it even if I only get it this week, by the way, so.
Well, I I guess the the only issue with that.
I didn't mean to be too blunt about it, but.
No, I guess the only issue with that is then you'd also take on some assumptions and some responsibilities with that. O and M and things like that that are long term, even if even if you guys put in the park stuff, we have huge O and M on parks that they eat as well. Right, and 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 we're begging for programmable park.
That's what your tax revenues cover. But that's what Alan's, Alan's analysis suggested that in all of those subsidiary accounts and funds.
But they don't.
We would be revenue, we have excess revenue in every single one of those funds that build up. So we would have excess revenue in safety, fire, stormwater, water parks.
Right, and 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 safety, safety and fire, we are gonna need it if we have that kind of gas.
All across the board, we would have excess.
And will will happen.
So I I'm just saying, I'm just saying, I I guess I've been, do you understand me?
Yep. Texas. I I I was.
All right, but I don't.
Just for the record, I did not bring up the money.
I just am curious about that. I'm not trying to argue with you that we got, that 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 it's nice to have a million dollars, like he's.
Of of that hundred and twenty, how much is just for the buildings?
Thirty five.
Thirty five, I think that's.
When I look at it, that that is, that if there's a gain, that's the real gain, because the rest of it is impact fees for all the structures they've described.
I think it's very important share. And we've got forty seven acres plan.
The the twenty million dollars for the off, for the offsite would be, would have come anyway, it's it's thirty five.
Actually, none of it's simple, none of it's simple.
Or.
No, because they're responsible for all the costs inside. That's the whole point. We're not paying any of those costs inside.
Just give me one. And we're not getting the hundred and twenty, that's all the impact fees. We we changed it to a contract.
Get thirty five, is that what you're saying?
Which allows us more latitude in the spending, yeah.
Glaze, glaze, glaze and fire, if if we're in the county, that would, right, that takes care of itself in that area, they cover it. Glaze, glaze, glaze and fire, if, if we're in the county, that would, right, that takes care of itself in that area, they cover it.
So, the, so, so the hundred and twenty went away, and the thirty-five?
It, it, so I, there's, there's a monetary gain. To, to me, when you look at all those things, it's, it's the thirty-five, and there's a use for that, absolutely. I'm looking at the MDA, and I, and I totally take Sherry's point, even the thirty-five, right, the basis is that, that's supposed to support the cost of this in some way, whether it's general fund or not, it supports costs.
Well, yeah, that's a different, different conversation.
I, it's, we can, you, you can use it towards all those other things, it's absolutely a different conversation. My point is with this MDA and trying to get through some of these things is, how are we, how are we affecting this? Cuz that, that's really what people want, is how is Harriman gonna make it better, right? And so, just to think about, this isn't our only meeting to hammer something out, I just wanna make the general point that, as we go through these things, I feel like we're hitting a lot of brick walls. I, I'm looking for where any gig is, and I'm just gonna see.
Are we hitting them or are we building them?
No, I, I think it's a point, I get the same question, like, okay, so Bruce mentioned, okay, what you're getting, a hundred and fifty thousand square foot of leasable commercial.
I did, I just got started a little bit.
No, I, I'm just, I'm just saying, that, that was one thing on your list, right? Yeah.
Trying.
So, it's.
Anyway, I apologize, but just, just a part of the, that's why it sticks for me is that, like, that's our ordinance, our starting point, and we're not even wanting to do that, like. How, how can I, how can I go to people and say?
But again, back, back to that issue though, why, if I was them, if I was in their shoes, there's no way I would ever build a trail on a piece of land I'm only gonna get twenty-five percent credit for. No way I would ever do that.
Right, it's non-buildable otherwise.
Huh?
It's non-buildable, so you can't build that.
My, my point is, is if, as a developer in building out a regional trail system, and I'm gonna dedicate this to the city, why in the world would I put additional expense of building a trail on a piece of property that you're only gonna give me twenty-five percent credit for in the acreage?
Then let's not do that in the contract fee, let's do it in the impact fee.
Say that again?
Then let's not have them pay for the, for doing the trail in the contract fee, let's do the impact fee and we'll build it.
Then we lose the ability to use, have the flexibility to get that, that we've, we've.
Trying to build into the contract fee.
But we wouldn't need the flexibility, it's gonna be used for a trail, gets used for a trail.
We need flexibility. That's why we separated police and fire.
So, I.
So, you would rather shift the expense, again, uh.
I'm just going with your scenario.
I, I, and I'm trying to clarify, you would rather shift that expense to the city though, of, of now being responsible to collect all of the, having to go back to an impa, impact fee model, you'd rather shift all of that back to that, than us.
I, I, right now, I don't have a preference. What I'm saying is, I want, I want to follow our ordinance, I wanna get what, I want to give the residents what we hope and.
I, I do have a preference.
I do too.
I, I, because I, I think the impact fee not only, not only gives flexibility, but it also gives a hundred percent coverage. That's the biggest problem we had, yeah, the contract fee.
The contract fee.
That, that's what I'm hoping.
That's the biggest problem we had, is that.
Uh, so, I'm hoping for, well, that's why I've supported it, absolutely.
Right, that, so, I, I do have a preference that it would be the contract fee, so that all of that stuff gets paid for. And there's not a backstop on the city to cover those costs, which impact fees does.
Okay. And I, and I, and I agree with that in general, if we do this the right way.
Yeah.
But again, huge dancing, I mean, exponentially higher than anywhere, e- even in the western part of the country, right?
I don't, I don't agree with that.
So, we've, so, so, let me step in.
With, without the, with proper pressure release.
We've had, we've had a nice, fairly robust discussion among the council, we've kinda left out about, what I'd like to do is, I'd like to just real quick, get some idea from the council where each member of the council stands, so there's some clarity as where we sit as a body, and move from there. So, it's my understanding that, Jared, you're looking to meet our existing code with twenty-five percent reduction, or to reduction for anything that's unbuildable, twenty-five percent.
To me, that's, has to be the start.
So, so that's, that's what you wanna be. I assume Sheri, that's where you wanna be as well, is that correct?
I, I always think that we always started our, at our, um, our baseline, and then it'd either remove below it or above it based on reasoning. Like, you get credited to do this, or you, you lose credit if you do that again. Should always be our baseline, our general ordinance.
And what are your thoughts? Do you want the current code, are you comfortable allowing the, are you comfortable allowing them to, uh, get full credit for things that, when they do?
Well, to Sherry's point, I believe that we did start at the current code at twenty-five percent. And, and the, and the talks we had previously, that's for consideration, we moved to the point where they got the full credit because of the amenities being installed on it. So, I don't think that we short-sighted our ordinance at all, i- in my mind. So, I am for the plan as proposed in these areas with the trail connectivity, and a hundred percent that goes along with that because of the amenity.
Okay. Steve, are you of similar persuasion at this point?
So, I, I'm always advocating for more open space.
Sure.
I, I think it's, um, it, it, over and over and over, even our general plan feedback was all trails, parks, I mean, that's just what people want. Open space, parks, recreation. They, they love the outdoors and Harriman, they love that part. So, I, I would say, you know, I like twenty-five percent, but if we're gonna do that, we count all that stuff at a hundred percent. I don't think it's twenty-five percent requirement, and then we reduce all of those things by a percentage.
So, you're misunderstanding.
I'm saying twenty-five percent open space is.
No, you're misunderstanding.
Still only twenty.
Twenty.
Oh.
Still only twenty.
It's still twenty percent, but if, if an acre is on a thirty percent slope, then you only get to count that acre as a quarter of the acre.
Oh, okay, but what I'm saying, okay, so you've got this piece right here, you got this piece right here, and you got this that's debatable, right? Is, as buildable, some of it's pretty.
Oh, it, it's.
No, no, it's sixty-four hundred, what's down there.
Right. Okay, so, how many acres is this, and this, and this?
And what's down here, huh? Right, right there.
Right here, oh, and this, this little piece here.
So, most of that, just to.
So, context.
Yes, please.
So, under the design guidelines, this would still be required to include more amenities than just a trail. This is a community park, they would have a, and that's why I was pulling up the, the, uh, design guidelines. I believe this would be a neighborhood park, Eric, I didn't see a community park.
It could be a greenway down below, keep going down. Which is also a community park, which doesn't require amenities, but if we have a trail through a greenway, then it's a bench every half mile, and.
There you go, right there, you can park it. Every half mile.
But the reality is, the topo you see there, it, almost ninety-nine percent of that side is buildable to build. And, and you can put all sorts of residential onto it.
Why wouldn't you just concede the point?
Well, hold, hold on, why, I'm sorry.
I'm trying to say that it's not a big deal.
I'm always saying it's buildable, there's a difference.
I'm just telling you what the numbers are.
Yeah, and that's, yeah, so, back to, back to my original question for Steve.
Right, we consider thirty percent slope not buildable, correct?
Yeah, thirty percent's more down lower.
Okay, so you're saying that, that just that piece, which part of this is that the non-buildable, just that piece?
Pretty much.
I, I would put it this way, I, I think this is actually, I think there's aspects of this that are really great. I, I like the plan. I don't actually have any problem with counting this stuff as a hundred percent, especially with the trails being built, all that stuff. What I, I think there's a conversation to be had outside of this, in, you know, there's a plan for a hundred acre Utah State facility that seems to not really gonna be something that's gonna go forward.
Where did that go?
That's, that's, I would not.
We can talk about that in a second, but keep going.
Sorry.
Okay, but, so, there, there's gonna be this big hundred acre thing, and most of it was gonna be empty agricultural space, and it was gonna be donated. And I understand that's donation to the, um, university, and, and there's some reasons, you know, to do all that stuff. But, okay, that's not happening, all that's getting just filled up with houses, less dense houses, but houses. I, I think there's, you know, and when we talk about the amenities, that's the one we didn't write up here. I think there's a talk about, should some of these parks be expanded a little bit? Should we consolidate some of the green space in a different way? Should we, you know, can we consider some rearrangement? I, I would be, I would like to have some of those conversations, but I'm, I, I don't think there's an unreasonable amount of green space here. I think it's, I think it's appropriate, so.
Can I ask a clarifying question, just, I don't wanna get into the specifics, but how, under the county's development agreement, how did it look at that potential USU site?
It was a hundred percent open space, so it's not getting, weren't filling the site with more houses, that was a hundred percent open space, so a hundred acre campus, a hundred acres of open space.
But then, then did you still have, what did you, were you saying, you still had four ten acre parks in addition to that?
Yeah, fifty acre park and four ten acre parks, right.
In addition to the hundreds.
That was, that was the rest of their open space.
Yeah, that was pretty much.
Okay.
Yeah.
So, that would have met their, their open, that was their open space requirement in total.
But you still had trails in addition, so you exceeded that, the open space requirement that even were showing.
I don't think they ever got, I, I don't think they ever got down to that granular of a level, in all honesty. Uh, like, I've never seen a plan that was that developed that would have had it down to that kind of acreage, in all honesty.
The fifty acre park would have included these ridge lines here. And, you know, potentially like this piece here. More of a greenway.
And they had trails on them.
And with the trails, so.
They could, it, it just had to be at least a hundred feet wide.
Right. So, it wasn't gonna be Sugar House or Pineapple Park?
So, so what, roughly, roughly what I'm hearing right now is that this is where we're starting with, and that as we talk about units or commercial or anything else, we'll up and down from here with, with the understanding that we might get more programmable space, we might make changes to make, depending on where we get. So, that's roughly where we're starting, let's move on to number four, which moves on to secondary water. So, secondary water.
So, what we're, what we'd like to talk about here is the city, Justin, this is where you get to jump in and correct me if I'm wrong. What I understand is that in zones five and six, water zones, five and six, which this would be gen- generally five, and this would be generally six.
I'll pull up the secondary water plan, would that help?
That's a great idea.
Is there is?
Yeah.
Or the, the map, yeah, yeah.
The water zone.
The water zone.
Wait, what? We have a map for that?
Well, a map forever, it, it's a.
There's a map for that.
It's a water, not, not a secondary, that's why I was confused. There is, there's a map for that.
Water zone.
There you go.
Down loads. So, here's zone five, here's zone six, and our understanding is that the city doesn't currently have any plans.
I'm sorry, guys.
Come on.
They don't pay me the right amount for this.
What we understand is that the city doesn't currently have any plans for secondary water in these zones. The elevation of this property, I think, sits higher than the rest of Harriman, and would require tanks or ponds or something to be built way up the canyon to get pressure. Um, as we looked at zones three and four, the city does currently have a system in place for zones three and four, but what we understand is there's not really, um, capacity or transmission. There's plans for it, but there, it doesn't exist today for this property. So, what we would like to request is that we don't put secondary water in this project at all. Now, your ordinance requires, again, in zone three and four, that it be run to, you know, parks, churches, schools, you know, large gathering area type things, maybe in multifamily areas and whatnot. And then, for single-family lots, if it's in a subdivision, and the average lot size, I think, is over sixty-five hundred, then, then you would run into that neighborhood. So, what we're, what, the issue that we have is, we would end up building a lot of infrastructure, which, at the end of the day, just drives up costs for the end user, right? Those things just get passed on, we'd be putting in a bunch of dry lines. And the way you put your sprinklers in, for instance, in school, is different if you're on culinary water versus secondary. Secondary, generally, you have closer spacing on your heads, and it, it's a little bit of a different system. And what we're saying is, by the time the city has secondary water available in this area, these areas, we believe, likely to be all the way constructed, and I don't think the city's gonna go in and rip out the irrigation systems in their, in the parks. The school's certainly not gonna go in and tarry cut their irrigation system to, you know, replant. And so, we just think at the end of the day, just logical, we just don't think it makes sense to pass that cost on to the end user. So, just to kinda, on my opinion to start with, and I know where Sheri's gonna sit on this one. Uh, I actually, and that, that causes me pause, I literally live next door to this, this development. I know the neighborhood next door has dry lines run into it, we don't know when we're gonna get it, but I will specifically look for that to make sure I had the access to it when I came in, uh, so, like, when I went to buy my house. And so, we've required it, we required it next door, don't we require it in all the zones? Like, all, in anywhere that's building in three or four, we, or zone three or whatever they're called, um, we require it by code. I'm, I'm hesitant to, I'd be really hesitant to do anything other than, than requiring in those areas.
Well, right now, I asked Justin this earlier, cuz I got asked this at the water bar meeting, and what percentage of Harriman is currently using secondary water, do you know?
I don't know.
About, maybe around fifteen percent, but a huge chunk of Harriman is plum for secondary water. It just doesn't have access to it, and we have, we have designed it that way, so that at some point, if we don't put it in the ground, it's not ever gonna happen. And this state is in a mess with water, we're getting zero water conversion on your property. This is dry land farm ground, and so, every drop of water you put on there is a cost to, to something that was never there before. All this up here on here, there wasn't water on it. And so, every drop of water we place on there, it's a draw from the system that we get no recharge back from it. So, yeah, I would, I, I, I would be very unsupportive of, of saying no secondary, because anything we can do to reduce that, that summertime footprint in this state, the better. Now, I appreciate a hundred percent what you guys have done with your designs as far as your storm drains, and, you know, all the, all the, um, stuff you're capturing. A lot of that is because you have to, because that's what our ordinance dictates. But, um, I think you guys have worked well with the water district also, trying to figure out ways to make it more water sebby and things like that. But I think it takes a step backwards, if we, if we say that on secondary. I simply don't think that when you have an open trench, throwing an extra purple pipe in there is, is, drives up the cost exponentially.
No, it's not exponential, but it is a few thousand dollars per home, those people are paying it. What I'm saying is, Eric, you're gonna take out your sprinkler system in your yard to convert to secondary?
No, it's set up to deal with secondary.
Okay. I already have, I already have, it, it comes with the, I mean, everyone that's built, everyone already has the, the backflow preventer, everybody, like, that was the way it was built, so that all we have to do is turn the water on it.
My neighborhood was fully dry piped, we didn't have secondary until what, eighteen months ago, Justin?
Any, but, it was about two years ago.
I mean, we've managed that neighborhood, you know, fifteen, twenty years, we've been there twelve years, and didn't even have the option until they.
I, I, I understand the request, and I, and I don't think it's unrealistic.
But the pipe's really gone, and now it's there, and like, every, I, I'd say almost every one of my neighbors, as I walk down the street, are like, this is so great that it's here, or we know it's here, like, how do we make the connection? If it's there, they use it.
So, so what happens going forward when we have droughts like we do this year, and the water's getting shut off in September? And I'm not saying Harriman's done that yet, but that is happening in other jurisdictions.
I mean, it, it's part of.
You need grasscoats, you need grasscoats.
Well, I'm not, I'm not so worried about the homes, cuz I'm more concerned about it at schoolyards and things like that.
And the grasscoats, no different than our parks, it's, it's, it's a finite resource, that we run, we run at risk of droughts everywhere we live. That's why, that's why this kind of, every time, we just had this conversation today, we have to start mitigating the, the cost, the true cost of what this is doing to the great South Lake to do these types of developments.
Justin, did you have something?
There, there's, there's just a huge gamut of things to consider with water.
So, Justin.
Can, can I ask you a question that maybe you're gonna address it, but at least I'll give you a chance to? So, I have really two questions in terms of the projected development, I guess, of capacity that would be able to serve these.
That's a great question.
Of, when do you realistically see what that would be, and, and what would our infrastructure cost be to make that happen? And the second piece of that is, is, one of the questions I really have is, with the adoption of the new water standards that we have, i- and how that relates and will be applied out, out here, I guess, what is the anticipated reduction that we, we would see with the new water standards versus, I guess, what the typical user is, and how, I guess, how long would it take us to pay for what it's gonna cost to service that area with secondary?
One, one addition, uh, maybe that's the same question, but the tier one versus tier two, is that affected by having the secondary in, like, lines dry fitted versus, uh, when they don't have access to it?
Tier.
On the wa, in the water costs, and in the tier one water, and the tier two water?
Tier two waters is whole development, it's whole development.
Are you talking about Jordan Valley?
We have Jordan Valley.
Block two rates.
Yes, block two rates, that's what it's not.
The whole development's on, on tier.
Yeah, so, yeah, Jordan Valley block two rates covers this whole.
And so, does, does having secondary water, even though, just having the dry lines installed, affect that, those rates at all? Sorry, go, Clint's question.
Your question, your first one was, so their, their cost estimate for secondary to install it through the entire system is around twenty-five million dollars, just in Olympia. Now, that, I think, includes five and six in those cost estimates, so that would be reduced by whatever infrastructure would be in there. But the costs, we, we've done some preliminary costs to get secondary water. I'll say a reliable secondary water source here, we have some areas in, in this north area of Harriman that currently has it, but our source capacity can only serve what we're serving now. To bring the additional source and supply in is around twelve million dollars.
Exactly, that's, you did then there twenty-five?
To get it through. That's not. To bring it to this area, build a storage reservoir, the trunk lines to bring the waters and everything. So, it'd be around twelve million to get that. So it'd be around twelve million to get that. So that kind of covers the costs.
Is there, once all that infrastructure is put in, is there actually water to put into the reservoir?
Yeah, so that would bring the source. That's kind of bringing it from Blackridge Reservoir this way, because we have a lot of source and storage.
Okay, okay, thank you.
And then the uh your your second question was just in general, I think, about water use.
Yeah, I I'm really curious, again, based on the tier two and the and the water standards that we've adopted for the area. How much of a reduction do we plan on seeing in the area and how much, I guess, of a savings? Do we anticipate seeing if we put secondary in there? And by doing that, how long is it going to take us to repay all that infrastructure cost?
So Jordan Valley, their assumption is they're gonna reduce total water around sixty percent with the water efficiency standards, outdoor water. Around sixty percent. Our our numbers aren't using that because we haven't seen it. Those are. So we're being somewhat conservative in our water demand assumptions. Um, we're we're currently water demand assumptions are following the state's water conservation plan. We have a goal that we have to meet within twenty-five years. So our con- our current controversial conservation goals are matching theirs. Which are fairly robust conservation goals as well. And so we've we've applied those, working with. Uh, the developers consultants and creating the water demands. And I just got these today at five o'clock, four forty-five. And so I did some cost comparisons to what our water production costs are. For secondary compared to what block two water rates are. And with the amount of water, now this is built out, when Olympia's built out. There's. So a build out there assuming three hundred and eighty-six acre feet per year at build out for secondary irrigation.
Justin, zones three and four?
Well, that's across, that's across the board. Um, and so if we look at the cost of Jordan Valley's block two rates and our. General cost to produce secondary, you're looking at. About three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars per year. In increased costs if we don't install secondary and just use Jordan Valley.
Three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars increased over.
Over our secondary, so if so here, so if we if we take that three hundred and eighty-six acre feet.
Three hundred and and to what, I guess, three hundred and seventy-one spread over what?
So that's per year.
For the whole project.
Those are just production costs. That's how much Jordan Valley costs for us to take the water. That's not. I didn't obviously have time to, you know, say, okay, we have to lift it two more zones. I didn't add operational costs. That is just pure water costs. So we'd save three hundred and seventy-one thousand dollars a year across the project, and that's today's dollars. That's not twenty years down the road. So those are just today's dollars.
So that's that's a thirty-year infrastructure. A twelve million is what you said, right?
Well, that's twelve million to us, but it's twenty-five million of their additional costs as well to put the infrastructure. So it's like, if we just look at the twenty-five million dollars, that's like sixty-seven year payoff.
Plus add it on ours on top of that.
And I guess it's not even the other point, though. You can talk dollars, dollars all you want, but you're talking about water. Not about secondary, secondary water versus culinary water.
Yeah, and that's the other point is it's just. Instead of taking it all from Jordan Valley, we're spreading out that water use to different sources, right? That's the big.
What are what's the anticipated savings we? We hope to realize or plan to realize with those new standards.
So Justin, I want to share with you, you're saying that for thirty-seven million dollar investment, you're saving three hundred and seventy-one thousand a year?
Water costs.
So twenty-five plus twelve is thirty-seven million, and that thirty-seven million saves three hundred and seventy-five thousand a year, so. Point oh one percent?
Well, yeah, like I said, that was done since five o'clock.
Did you check your math?
I'm sorry, I was just gonna ask Alan what that rate of return is, because Alan does better at math than I.
Yeah, but like I said, the full benefit isn't just money.
No, 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 I understand. I understand that, but I've just, I I was just looking at the money. I just wanna make sure I was comparing apples to. Apples. So if the city's got a plan in place, then this isn't like a deal killer for us. This is just a question that we wanna propose. I guess what I'm, I guess what I need to hear from Justin is. Is is zone three and four the limits of what you anticipate the build out is and so we? Wouldn't be considering doing it in five and six? Is that what I'm hearing?
So throughout the rest of the city, we have zero secondary water above zone four. Yeah, it's just not.
And we're not requiring it for any other builders.
So I would have no problem saying that anything above four is not required because we don't require it anywhere else.
So then I guess Bruce, to your point, then that number changes dramatically.
I actually don't know if it does change that dramatically, but.
It sounds like so.
I I most, my guess is both sides of that equation change perypasou, frankly.
So the other thing is the infrastructure, so it's not just you take the twenty-five million away. If we if we don't do secondary, that water, storage and source and supply has to be added to the culinary system. So you have to increase the size of the culinary system.
Okay, so we're gonna, we'll just stick with secondary in zones three and four, based on your current standards of. Needs to run to. Over certain sizes or. We had a rational discussion and came up with a good answer.
We can work with our parks department. There may be just areas where there's no sod, that it may doesn't, it's just drip system. Might not be worth taking secondary to those areas, right? Because it's such a low water use, so we can work through those. We don't wanna install more infrastructure that we have to maintain in the future than we have to as well, so. Chase, you got that one? Sixty-four hundred west.
Okay, um, Chase, do you mind zooming in on Google Earth?
You would think Chase would be able to do that.
He's done this before.
Yeah, we've been through this exercise multiple times.
Okay, so one thing that we need to get into the document or to the MDA is. So here's a hundred and twenty-six south running here. This is the edge of Olympia right here. So this is Heritage Place, this is Creek Ridge. In the Creek Ridge MDA, the city took on an obligation to construct sixty-four hundred west up to this point. There, for a variety of reasons that I don't fully understand. There is about a hundred and thirty feet here for an eighty-six foot road to go through. Or a hundred and thirty, I think there's like fifty feet of what we'll call no man's land. Of buffers on both sides, total combined between the two sides. So there's two things that we are requesting. What what we're offering to do is, assuming we get the PIDs approved, we would bear the responsibility to construct this road. And the associated landscaping and trails that need to come through there. But what we're requesting is. And we can do it through a reimbursement agreement or an offset, again, of some other thing that we owe the city for, or one, however we wanna document it. Financially, that's, I'm not as concerned about that. What we would like, again, the city's already obligated to take the road from here to here. We would like them to pay for the rest of this as well. I mean, the reason the city to pay for it, the city to pay for that. Again, we would, we'd front the money through the PID, we'll go take the burden on, you know, constructing it. We're just requesting that there's reimbursement for that. What do we figure that this was about forty percent?
Who's responsible is it to do that now?
I'm sorry, what?
Yeah, I thought you were reading it to because. Help me understand the why.
Okay, so again, city's already obligated to deal with forty percent of this. There's this ra- remaining portion of sixty percent. I don't know why in the Creek Ridge MDA they. Why it stopped there. I really don't. I mean, the only thing that's logical is that there's a connection being made to Heritage Place and and that's where it stops. When we have developed in Harriman, we have always been obligated, like in Teton Ranch, which sits right here. We're obligated to construct the rest of the roadway and the associated improvements as the adjoining developer. What I don't understand is why the city didn't obligate, say, Creek Ridge to do the same thing. And so what we're requesting is that the city be consistent in how they've treated us here and in other locations. And we're just saying, we just like them to.
What's what's the cost of that portion?
We think it's around two million dollars based off our. No, we think just this section. With the with the landscaping, because then you got fifty feet of landscaping, you got trails that need to go through there and. Yeah.
It's a big ask. I mean, I I I get that it's. I'm I'm not necessarily, I I think it's a reasonable ask. Like, I don't think it's an unreasonable ask for you to say, we'll build it, but. Why are you making us pay for some of this? Really, we should have been done by somebody else. I I understand that. It's a big number and uh I would need some. Input from finance before I could even begin to truly go down that road. I I'm I.
Let me make a, let me just, sorry, let me elaborate just slightly more. So again, we again would. Uh, front the full cost of the construction of this road. And let's just say that it's the city's portion. Well, you'll have the whole portion. So let's just say it's three million dollars. I'm just making up a number, but we're probably in the ballpark. That that money is gonna sit, what I continue to refer to as the piggy bank, so to speak. Where we have a credit sitting there with the city that we could then draw against when this offsite improvement. Or or something comes up and the city says, hey, it's time to put this traffic signal in and your portion's a hundred thousand dollars, then. You can offset it against that. So again, again, it can be, you already have a reimbursement agreement. And contractual agreement with Creek Ridge, with SLR or Edge Holmes, I'm not sure where it sits today. So there's already impact fee monies coming in through the Creek Ridge development to cover this section here. So that really isn't something that we're talking about. We're really just talking about the remaining chunk and how to deal with it.
Can we get, so unrelated this discussion, I would like some info to the city as to why that didn't get. We have any, um, if you guys. On either side.
Well, the MDA is for the city to build it down to that connection, so. That's the part we are definitely on the hook for.
Yeah, which is a, which is.
But the rest of it, nobody's on the hook for it. And it doesn't serve anything right now. Without their development, there's nothing.
Because it's not, it's not, it hasn't been an issue.
Cause we didn't need it for connection.
I mean, I.
My 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 point is here on Teton, we didn't put any access points here, but yet we still have to build all those improvements. Yeah, well, I know, and that's why I'm saying, that's why I'm requesting that.
We wanna be consistent, and I can I can s- see that as a fair ask. I I don't know, I.
And it's also not just a road. For some reason, the city put in place this fifty feet of copper.
Sounds like a planning commission decision.
That I have no idea why it's there.
There there's a power quarter that runs there that that is, I think.
A portion of, yeah.
On the one side. I don't know why the other side.
I don't know, but that's a good finish, but I understand the ask.
So I I don't know. Yeah, that's the situation. That's the ask. Again, we'd take it on. It'd fulfill one of your obvi- obligations that you have currently under the MDA with Creek Ridge. So we'd get that off your, off the hook for you and then just seek reimbursement down the road somewhere.
Um, yeah, I I I don't, I'm not necessarily opposed to having the discussion uh or or putting that in there somewhere. Uh, I'd be looking for thoughts from the rest of the council, which two of them, I don't know where they went. Uh, but we're missing two of them at this time, so.
I'd certainly be willing to consider it. That's second pollination after.
But it, I'm I'm open to, like, I'm genuinely open to it. Um, like I said, I need, I would need my, uh, city staff to come in and. Give me a little bit more detail on what that would mean from our end and how that would work, but I don't necessarily think it's done in a reasonable ask.
Okay.
Uh, is it helpful to get some context about where that is on the capital facilities, places? What the eligibility of that is for impact fees? And so I'm putting Blake on the spot here for this.
Higher is on our capital facility plan. The section through Olympia is on the plan that isn't eligible for impact fees currently until it's considered in the city. And the new study would make it so, unless it's inside the project, it'd be a contract fee. The piece inside the project. What else was the other question? So, yeah, it's eligible for impact fees.
Priority.
Worked through outside the city. And it was in, I think, this southern portion was probably one of the later phases. Because we weren't sure when this property was coming in, which is, the city was obligated to build the top piece. I'm sure that's why. City didn't want to obligate itself to build the other piece, not needing it for.
Who knows?
How long. And then when it went to planning commission, the planning commission took public comment.
Make it pretty on both sides?
It to there but not connecting the road to it.
Cause, you know.
So can I ask it? Hypothetical question here? If Olympia was to just develop.
I forgot, otherwise, yeah.
If Olympia was to develop under their current MDA and the county. Then who would have to build that other piece of the road with it being within Harriman City?
Um, if they were to build it, I think legally would be required to reimburse with impact fees.
Say that one more time.
We, the city would legally be required to reimburse with impact fees over time.
To the developer.
We would be on the hook to build it.
Wait, it's in our city and somebody else's.
So ask it built either way.
We don't have to build it.
This portion, yes.
Yes, that portion.
We don't have to build it. If we wouldn't, how, if there's not a requirement for us to build that portion of the road anywhere.
It was on our transportation master plan, so we were collecting impact fees for it.
Did we collect impact fees for it?
It's on the plan, so yeah.
So yes, we did.
So if they were going to build it and dedicate it to the city. And it was built according to our master plan, then yes, we would be all chasing.
So so. So essentially, either way, we're on the hook for it. They're giving us an option to let us, to let them build it, take care of it. At the process and do it through some sort of reimbursement or offset agreement, as opposed to us going and having to. Uh, do a RFP and go through the entire process of building road. Is that what I, is that what I'm understanding is, is what we're getting out of it? And what they get out of it is a built road?
Be typical of offsite improvements that he just.
And 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 this is, this is a standard business practice that we've done in the past with other, with other projects. Is that correct?
There's even one more wrinkle in that is that Olympia still owns that portion up above and you'd have to pay for it, so.
So i- in that opinion, I I don't necessarily see a problem if that's something we've done in the past with other projects.
Say that again, Bruce, just so everyone's clear on that.
This Olympia owns the the property for the part of the road that the city also has to build, so the city'd have to. Acquire that property as well.
So it's not dedicated right of way. It's, it looks like it is, but it's not.
It's my understanding.
So Olympia owns the stretch in between those two development?
That is owned by the last holdout, I think.
So even better, we were.
Now we're not on the hook for the land.
Well, but what my point is, is to complicate it even more. We were obligated to build a road on land we didn't own.
Yeah.
There you go, we're obligated, okay, so.
That worked out really well.
That works out, that that to me makes that whole conversation a different thing. We are obligated to build a road on land we don't own. Now we're gonna. Be able to get it built without having to worry about that. That is, I think, a positive.
Oh, we own it, look at.
We we own that strip.
We could put a foot bumper.
Let's put the street right under the.
Yeah, let's just ride over, ride over the.
Blake, we needed a new twelve-foot cross-section approved. I, so again, I think based on. I think, again, I think it's a reasonable request based on all the other challenges. That exist with that and how we would handle things in the, in the past for us to certainly consider.
Now we pay that it's impact fee because it's impact field for the road, correct?
We could, yeah, we have that option, but if they're doing it, that would be part of the.
Or again, we could look at it, at least.
Well, they they wanna be reimbursed, right? So over time, so it's just really figuring out where the capture area is for this and how we do it.
Capture area is the whole city.
Cause it's all under one.
That's written.
It's all under one.
Nathan, it's either reimbursed or use it as a credit on this piggy bank thing against other obligations, to the extent that it could be across funds transfer legally.
We're just worried about.
Which is how we'll write it.
Yeah, right.
This kind of language already.
So so this would require.
Alan is good with how the bookkeeping is done, then I'm okay with it.
It all comes down to what the structure of repaying is.
Yeah.
What what is the mechanism, you know, accumulating impact fees, but when and where, you know, what are we, what are we doing?
Okay.
Cause we have a lot of obligations for those impact fees.
Yes, we do.
I I just wanna be clear to them, there's long listed people.
I mean. We just have to use impact fees for system.
I mean, what other option would be?
We've done it.
Yeah.
I was being, I was being hopeful there. Okay, so it sounds like we've got some direction in regards to that one. So let's talk about phasing. Can I, can I go back to this real quick?
How dare you?
So there, there are two solutions to this. One, we just have an offset provision in the development agreement. Or two, we have a, a reimbursement agreement that we execute as an exhibit, if you're agreeable with this, Bruce. To the development agreement that has an offset provision written into that development. So it's a se- it's own separate agreement that becomes an exhibit to the development agreement, or we just have a provision. I would prefer the latter option, I think, having a, a reimbursement agreement.
Whatever Chase says on that.
And then we just have an offset provision.
Talk about that tomorrow.
I, I'm fine with going on your lead on that one, Bruce. Alright, so phasing.
I don't know what, was that something that Jared had brought up?
That's what Jared had asked.
I think it was part of the uh issue on commercial and I think, I think phasing came up with everything else.
Where are the other two?
They're out in the lobby.
Why?
Let's hold on a second.
Seems like this being.
I think we just did send the police after them.
Okay, let's.
Are they not coming?
They're not?
Uh, let's take a five minute recess. It's nine o'clock, let's take a five minute recess.
You'd like to go ask?
All right, phasing, we're on to phasing, let's talk about phasing, phasing.
I don't remember what was that, an item you asked to put up there?
There was a thing I put down, it's saying, and it's, I think it's just essentially the idea that we don't want it has to wait for all the commercial coming at the end.
So as long, we've already talked about it.
So as long as there's some commitments for pieces of that along the way, and I think we do have some phasing for open space requirements, right?
That's our.
Yeah, so.
All behind provision.
Right, and I think that's good, I think we should have something similar that requires some percentage of commercial. And I understand that you have to have a certain number of houses before any commercial can start, so we can push that out to a certain point, but, you know.
Okay, so let's, let's save that and come back to commercial, that, we need to.
That's part of the commercial.
It is, it is.
If that's what we're talking about, because I think the Mark one is already addressed.
Yeah. So, so that's really the question in regards to phasing, so let's talk about roads. What did we want to talk about in regard, we just kinda talked about infrastructure already, kinda talked about.
We went over roads.
Was that the, was that the, quote un preservation?
Yeah, we went over roads.
So, it's on the list, I wanna make sure that we don't skip anybody if anybody has questions about it, like, we're not missing anything, right?
Can I follow up with what my understanding into that, please? So we are going to add a provision, that essentially says that we are going to work together, because it's in our mutual best interest to work with third parties, and we'll name who those are, to obtain additional funding to preserve corridors along.
What was this?
One twenty-six, one twenty-six east of U one eleven.
I wrote it as major corridors.
I think, I captured it.
Major corridors in my notes, right, because I think it's more than one twenty-six, we talked about seventy-three hundred west.
Why would we not wanna help them get funding and get funding and work for any of the things we can get?
We might argue sixty-four hundred.
I'd say it is.
Along identified major transportation corridors. Sorry, I have one request to expand that. I wanna put something in there that we also agreed, that it's in our mutual best interest to locate the intersection of one twenty-six and U one eleven. You know, I just wanna, it's just intent language that we're gonna work together hand in hand to go lobby, do what we need to do, to make sure we get that intersection.
There's, there's, there's option four we haven't talked about too, and that is.
What are you doing?
What if one hundred twenty-six dips south and it all came in? Then we'll be back. We got all four. Then we'll be back talking with you about an amendment to the development.
And, Brian, I think it's fair to mention that our lobbyists have been briefed on that effort as well, and, and know to help from their side, to help guide those discussions.
Isn't your lobbyist, I may be totally wrong, is your lobbyist the same the one that South Jordan uses?
I don't think so.
He used to, he used to do daybreak, but he doesn't do it.
He used to do daybreak.
Yeah.
And we have two lots.
He just got thanked for his good service a few weeks back, right?
Well, when, when the Miller group bought it.
When the Miller group bought it, they have their own.
Oh, I see, didn't need it.
So, yeah, like, like you say, we've, we've talked to them, we've obviously conveyed our desire to make sure that that's, do everything we can to locate that there.
Right.
Their, their, I guess, information is, is that that, that preferred alignment probably will be decided for still some time.
Yeah, I think it's probably a year, they're doing their environmental studies.
They're just starting to do it.
About a year.
Yeah, so like eighteen months.
They have chosen. And again, that's why, you know, kinda with this phasing, we've always said, we would come in, we'll come build sixty-four hundred west, and we're gonna start down here, and we're gonna move this way. Because, again, this has already been funded by the state, there's no reason for us to go spend tax dollar, right, impact fee eligible, you don't want us to go build that road and then say, hey, reimburse us, even though the state, you know what I mean? So, it doesn't make sense for us to do that, um, so we'll start down in this area.
Um, I have no problem if the language is something along the lines of within Harriman City boundaries. Doing a, doing a, I, I, what I don't wanna do is I don't wanna say it has to be in this exact spot. But, but within, within Harr, for, for me, if it's within Harriman City boundaries, as you will be part of Harriman City, I don't have any problem.
I would say, I would say at least on or within.
Yes.
Because this puts it on.
On, right.
Yep.
Yeah, we got it.
Oh, I just, I, I wanna like.
I, I want it all, but, yeah.
But on, on or within the Harriman City boundary, um, yes, that's would be my, just wording that way, so that it's not, it, it seems as if it's a city issue, not necessarily a specific development project issue.
I agree with all of that, as long as we do specifically call out the east-west, because it, if it's not specifically said, we lose that conversation.
And so again, we're talking about this piece from the new U one eleven here.
So what we say is the corridor preservation piece. What we say is that section and other major intersection, and other major roadways within the project, that's all you have to say.
Yeah, the city will see corridor preservation.
As long as Chase is okay with it, I'll be okay with it, he does a pretty good job protecting us.
He does great, worked his ass off, by the way.
All right, so, um.
I'm serious.
How much finance discussion do you wanna have, Sherry, because you were the one that requested finances?
Yeah, I, I, I guess I was crunching numbers on some of that stuff.
I know, so, let me, because at first you caught me off guard, uh, but let me tell you why that's actually real. So, think about it this way, if I put five units per acre, single-family homes, right, which is five thousand square foot lots roughly, those lots today, in today's dollars, are costing me around eighty to eighty-five thousand dollars per lot to improve. So those five homes, five times eighty thousand, let's just say, is four hundred thousand dollars, that acre is costing me four hundred thousand dollars to improve.
No, I, I did the exact same thing with that.
So, what I'm saying is, if you take, when you were saying that our infrastructure costs are budgeted at four hundred thousand dollars an acre, yeah, because we have all. Okay, four hundred twenty-five thousand, that's, these are looking at today, and there's a lot of contingency and stuff in there, but that isn't.
There's a huge amount of contingency, thirty percent is way above what's normal, fifteen percent is kind of more typical.
But, you're right, except for, we're looking at things in today's dollars, and knowing that we aren't building all the infrastructure today, so we have to have a huge contingency to deal with inflation. So, and again, we aren't requesting, we're not gonna go bond for four hundred, our, our impact, our contract fee would be a hundred thousand dollars a door.
Nobody would underwrite it.
Yeah, so.
That's why we have seven pids, just so that you can do that.
So we can adjust for inflation as we want.
The whole seven.
Well, the other, the other reason the contingency is thirty is because it hasn't been total or engineered at all, usually a contingency is ten after it's been engineered, this is thirty because it hasn't been engineered.
So, so then I guess, so you're at four twenty-five, but that's, so that's sixty, I wanna say it was about sixty-five thousand dollars a door. And then, in addition to that, you have land costs on top of that, because that's only infrastructure, so I have no idea what you're planning for land, but even if you paid a hundred thousand, you're at eighty grand a door.
Yeah.
And, and right now apartments in, in good areas, like next to infrastructure, are at about forty grand a door, so you're double.
But that's a different density.
Different, different density, so our improvement costs are substantially less for apartments, per door than a single-family home.
Right, but, but I guess if you do the numbers on the apartments and you calculate it and the costs and stuff, you're still, your costs exceed what the rents are in our area now.
No, not really.
I guess, I guess my question is, would you let us look at your pro forma?
No.
Well, this is not a, this is, has nothing to do with the pro forma, this is, that is a hundred percent, uh, created by our engineer.
I know, I know, but, and, and, and I respect what you're saying, but, I guess the question, the reasoning is, is because anytime that you're looking at allowing a huge development coming, you wanna make sure that it's gonna be able to happen, that the finances are.
The underwriter is gonna make sure that this happens, because they've got their ass on the line, big time, uh, to sell these bonds, so if they're happy that it's gonna happen, and they're getting paid a massive amount of money to evaluate the finance and economics of it, before they represent to, to bond purchasers, those numbers are gonna be solid.
But you're only, when he was here the other day, he said he thought he would only, only bond for about a quarter of it.
That's true, but they're still gonna be evaluating the entire, the entire viability of the project, right, Steve?
Yes, they, they, they will.
Those numbers brought me to the stark realization I went into the wrong profession.
Was it, was it these numbers too?
Yes, those numbers, right there, those are, those would be the ones.
Yeah.
Those numbers don't include benefits.
So, uh, like, this is a public meeting, I think this is, without going in to disclose any specific details. You're, you're asserting that your economic forecasts and pro formas account for these really high infrastructure costs, and that the development can go forth.
Yeah.
If, if I may, if, Sherry, tell me if this doesn't kind of address what you're getting at, at least what I think you're getting at. What I want to see in the final wording of this thing is that there is no way, shape, or form that the infrastructure can be left undone and the city holding the bag.
Yeah, and I guess, I guess that's why it's important, even the phasing conversation, right, you just have to understand that, yeah, this phase is completed and everything's done before you can go into the next phase and the next phase and the next phase, because.
Are there any backdoors where the city's gonna have to pay for that water line or for that?
That, I would look at.
We, we've seen that.
I would look at Chase for that question, not at, not at the development.
That's hard, man.
They provisioned our development agreement currently, as proposed, that requires them to demonstrate that they are able to put in the infrastructure prior to a development application being approved, and if they pull out before that, um, infrastructure gets installed, but the approvals have been already granted, they have a requirement to finish those improvements before pulling in.
So, in your opinion, as our attorney, we are a hundred percent solid covered in that particular regards?
Yes, so, I believe this scenario, because it will happen again at some point, in my opinion. There's a recession, and buildings slows down or stops, and those things have not been improved, and whoever it is that's responsible, that corporation will no longer exist. What does the city do?
I mean, at that point, you're going after an empty well, right?
It wouldn't.
There's no requirement for us to do it.
Building there, though.
And then, and that's the point, right, they, they would have to have the infrastructure in.
Can they, can they bond again, for the cost of the infrastructure?
Yeah.
And they do the subdivision?
Yeah, there's two ways to do a subdivision under Utah law at the moment, you either build the improvements up front, and then record the plat, which is the only time you can sell the lots, so there's nobody on the hook there, or, if you wanna record the plat first, you bond for the improvements, and you're not, nobody's taking bonds that are gonna fail anymore, by the way. So cities are taking bonds that are valuable, they're not dirt bonds, they're not, uh, basically, they're, they're cash, cash, I mean, many cities take cash or letters of credit, um, from A-rated financial institutions, so ain't nothing, uh, nobody's gonna come in and say, you've got an obligation to do it, because it's raw dirt at that point, it hasn't been recorded.
My guess is you're likely to see the former of those situations in this development, where coming in and selling the infrastructure, and then coming and recording it.
Ninety-eight percent of development nowadays is done for that version, and so.
Pretty common how we do it, currently with other subdivisions in the city.
I like.
So I'm not, and it's nothing against Chase just saying this in general, the last person in that seat made similar assurances on previous plans, and that's why he's not here anymore. So no pressure.
I guess, I guess, there was one, one other thing on that, would you again clarify that these numbers you presented to us, you know, paid estimates, because we just had that, that conversation, if you're clear, these numbers do not include any money you're receiving from any other taxing entity, county, the state, anything, because, because the U one eleven, that is not included in these, right?
Correct. Now, again, if the state were to come in and say, for whatever reason, that, hey, we wanna take one hundred twenty-six south, all the way up to the current U one eleven instead, right? Which isn't the plan today, but they could do that for some reason, because it's gonna go to Tuilla, um, then these numbers would reduce, I mean, this, this is nothing more than a snapshot for you to look at, this is, that number could be way bigger and it could be way smaller, I mean, again, some of those things, so this was just to demonstrate and look at, what's it realistically gonna cost for public improvements? There's no sewer in there, because we pay impact fees to the sewer district, so we can't double debt, so we can't build sewers, anything in the sewer system with the bid money, it's totally separate. So, anyway, and again, we haven't put a cap, or requesting that we don't have a cap on the amount we can bond for, because we may decide that it's more cost-effective for us to bond for a higher amount and charge, instead of a twenty thousand dollar contract fee to the builders, maybe we charge them a thirty thousand dollar contract fee. But, but then, yeah, the infrastructure gets in, or more infrastructure gets in, they're not gonna pay for thirty, they're gonna say, hey, the normal's twenty, and then I'm gonna be paying for the ten by reducing the lot cost by ten, so that, we talked about that before, that I'm paying for it one way or the other, it's just maybe a better mechanism to finance, because there's some desires to see some amenities and different things go in on the front end that they normally wouldn't, so those are some things that we're exploring for sure.
So, does that answer your question, Sherry, does that help?
And, and I think that is one of the profound improvements over the county situation, is tying up all those loopholes and loose ends, so that it, it, it is. All of the costs are on them, none of it's on the city, and if through the process they get to a point to where that isn't economically feasible for them and they can't complete it, they are in default on their agreement, and it all goes away.
Right, and then I guess, and the other reason, and, and I know that this, this might be, you might not like this as well, but when it, when you're talking about these kind of costs, and then if it changes, and then the state comes in and starts assuming some of those costs, and that means the taxpayers are suffering for some of the developments, you know what I'm saying? So I think that's important to understand, if our taxpayers are contributing to this development by paying for one hundred and twenty-six and those types of things, that's why I'm asking, are you getting money outside, rather than just the bond money that you think you're responsible for, are the taxpayers helping fund some of this infrastructure in here? Not, not through the city, but through the county and state, that's, that was all my question.
Yeah.
And I think it's important to disclose those quite briefly.
Potentially, there could be, yeah, if the state or county determined something had more regional significance than what we've already know about, then absolutely, they could come in and do that, I'm not, I don't think I could stop them, right?
Well, we can, we, we don't have to turn over, these are city roads, we don't have to let them take a hundred twenty-five.
Yeah, but we've already reached out.
Right, I'm just saying, but, but there's a decision to be made by this body that it happened.
Right.
So, as far as I can tell at this point, we're down to basically the first three items, so we've gone through the lists, really what we now come down to in, in regards to the MDA is units slash density, particularly in the mountain center area, whatever we're gonna call it, uh, commercial footage, and open space, more specifically, the, uh, where the programmable space is gonna be. That, to me, is how, at this point, I understand that this conver, that we, we are too in a, in a conversation and a negotiation, am I incorrect on this, as I look at the council members?
Other, other than I, I would add in, uh, I think what Jared asked, and I, I think it would just be nice, and I know Bruce alluded to this too, was, was show me the, um, wins for the city, you know, and maybe just, just kinda highlight what you think is the, are the wins for the city, other than, you know, the one-time money, what are, what are the wins that you see? You know, you're getting this, you're getting that, those kinds of things, above what would happen if it went to the guy.
I believe that Chase has added a bunch of whereas, uh, conditions at the beginning, to highlight a bunch of those, actually, so that they were in there documented at the very beginning of the MDA, and those have been there for the last.
That's something we specifically asked him to come up with.
Yeah, I guess, I guess I wasn't, I wasn't dazzled by it, so, okay.
So, so a bunch of them are already highlighted there, um, that Chase has put in there, so.
It's because he wrote it in clear, that's why.
And there's some of we, some of we've talked about that aren't included as well, we're gonna add more as well.
I guess, uh, the, if you, if you think it seems like what you were just saying earlier, this, this commercial piece or something like that, that would be good, just to document that we're all, you know, just.
Yeah, okay. So, on you, maybe Chase, if you could bring up the land use plan again, I think, and I, again, I don't wanna put words in anybody's mouth, anybody's mouth, I think we were fairly close to coming up with a solution for some sort of a density per unit, or, sorry, a number of units per acre in this area, rather than it being unlimited.
You, you were talking about putting in an upper limit.
Right, and, and whether it's just here, or if there's a desire to bring it, let's see.
Right there.
This, this one, right? So if we wanted to include these as well, for some reason, and I don't know, so we, those are kinda the things that we talked about, I don't know, again, so, trying to figure out this, this concept or concern about, um, stacking a bunch of units at the end of the project.
And, and I think that's exactly what it is, is I think that as a body, we are concerned that, what we've seen in the past is, well, we're not using them here, we're not using them here, but we keep getting told, they're gonna come, and we're gonna use them, and basically, we're just gonna throw them all at you at the very end when we can, and so what we want to do is we want to avoid that specific.
Gotcha.
Issue, and so by putting a max cap on those couple of pods, uh, it would, I think, go a long way to alleviating some of that concern that we're gonna run into a situation where, oh, we've still got five thousand units that we can throw in, because that's what we want, guess what, they're all going right here on the corner of the mountain.
Uh, I, I understand the concern, so, uh, let me ask one other thing, we kinda went back and forth on whether the height, if there needed to be or should be a height restriction in those particular areas, it seemed, again, it seemed that there was more comfort with a higher, um, building type here, but I got kinda mixed signals about whether or not we liked the idea, or didn't like the idea of taller buildings at the mouth of the canyon, you know, kinda like immigration canyon type thing. So, again, I think, is it, maybe they're two separate issues, they kinda tie together, but they're kinda separate.
It didn't seem like it was a disagreeable thing to you to say, five stories and twenty units an acre, like, I mean, is that a?
I, I, I'm willing to do that, the only caveat up here would be, I would love, if we could get a hotel, a cool hotel up there, I would really love to be able to go underground with some parking and maybe get, I would be fine.
You have a hotel, you can make it as big as you want, I don't care.
Well, and that's the thing, it's, it's, I would be fine stability.
Language in the agreement that would exclude.
You just take hotels, you just take five, five stories residential units.
Residential, yeah. Yeah, residential for me is the concern, the, 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 yeah, you get, you get a, uh, whoever the heck wants to come and put in an, an eight-story hotel, that's, you know, high, super in, great, let's, let's have that, let's have that chat, let's make that happen.
Or to five over two.
Five over two.
And it becomes a market, yeah.
So, are we talking about here only, or are we talking about all the way down to here, what would you guys like us to do?
Would you go down to there?
I'll go down to there, if that's, if that's what we need to do, because it's nine-thirty, so.
Yes, we did it.
Okay.
What that road is, that land number, we'll call it that way.
I'm looking for some input from Michael here, Rock.
I'm just curious, would we be willing to allow the five over two if we could get below-grade parking?
Yes, I would.
Yes.
If it's below grade, absolutely.
Absolutely.
So do we create a subzone, or do we hatch this area and say that this one has these restrictions in place?
I'll take precaution for you and Chase.
Yeah, well, Eric, I'm asking what, and this is gonna show up in the design standards.
Hatch it on here, we'll, we'll name it something, call it West Bench overlays.
Call it, yes.
Overlay, just call it overlay.
Okay.
So it'll be an overlay.
I like West Bench, that's what everybody refers to that whole side, and that's what we're getting into, and that's the sensitivity.
West Bench overlay.
West Bench overlay.
So, because it's really where it's on the upper side of.
Yeah, whatever that road is.
Yeah.
This is the.
Can you give us a coordinate on this road, it's, it's the one in Hidden Oaks?
I thought it was seventy-three.
No, seventy-two, seventy-three.
Seventy-three is U eleven.
It's Eightieth or Eighty-Second, somewhere in that range. Well, I guess you're gonna hatch it, right? I'll, I'll get it to Chase tomorrow, when I get GMS open with coordinates, I'll. Okay, so, so the, these areas above this road are gonna be capped at twenty units per acre, and five stories, if it's residential.
And that's everything that's currently designated.
Five stories above grade, you're okay if we go sub, or underground?
Or pedestal, yeah.
Okay, but underground pedestal.
Yeah, underground pedestal, yes.
That's not podium, but that's okay.
Yeah.
Same, sorry, it's late.
I know, we're good.
We all knew, and accepting a hotel could go as long as it's tall as a rose.
Well, it's just residential, but we're talking in a situation.
Or somebody wants to put a big old giant, you know, one of those magic tech company wants to come out and put a big old headquarters up there.
So, not to muddy the water, but let me ask one other scenario, what if it's mixed use, so you've got ground floor, commercial, and then residential above? Are we saying, are we still sticking at five?
Sorry, say that again.
If we have ground floor, commercial, and then you have residential on top.
Great question.
That's, that's where you go to the podium, the five two. What do you, Michael, is that a?
I agree.
Yeah.
I think anything to get either commercial.
If it gives us the commercial.
Yeah, or below-grade.
It's five two, it's five two podium if it's commercial on the ground floor.
If it's vertical mixed use.
Is I think what we define.
I kinda of okay with that, because if it's.
Because then we're getting the.
The battles in the.
Well, you start to get that village center, that center feel that people walk down.
You get, well, and especially if you start to get the, more of a resort feel.
Look at the canyons, guys, that's how the canyons is all set up, all those ground floors are commercial, and they're.
How many, how many ski shops at a resort have I walked into that have got hotel rooms above them?
Yeah, that's, I mean, that's how they are, every building's that way.
Pretty much everyone.
That's, that's what I'm saying, is I'm okay with that.
So five two, five two.
So, so it sounds like where we're left with is.
I'm sorry, I've got five people talking, I'm having a hard time hearing who's actually going on Chase.
So after all of these conversations, the only five-story requirement is on truly residential units, everything else can be five two.
And it's fi, it's five above grade.
No, it can be, it can be, I think up to ten is what the.
Way I understood it is, you can have, you can have that, as long as you have vertical mixed use or underground parking, is the way I understood it.
For which one?
Well, because they were saying.
Residential.
They want, okay, sorry, yeah, you're, you're bringing.
Here's, here's one of the things, right? I, I, I think that in general, if you're willing to put in commercial as a part of a building, you know, having a commercial storefront, I'm much more inclined to allow additional units there, right? That makes sense, that's part of the design program, if it's going to be just strictly residential, then that's why we wanna have a cap on it, right?
Yep.
Now, I don't necessarily know that if you put commercial on the ground floor, that we still want nine stories above it, I think that's what we're trying to say, right? I, I think what you said is there's three things, number one is if it's residential only, it's five stories above grade, number two, if it's residential mixed use, uh, with commercial on the bottom, then it's five two, if it's hotel or other non-residential at all, then it's, who cares?
It's the ten.
Yes, it's the ten.
It's the ten, okay, so ten, so ten for commer, I got it, so, so ten for commercial slash hotel.
And the five two podium would also.
Should ask you now, or you go.
Below-grade parking, right, or parking below.
Yes, yes, yeah.
That would also be.
Five over two.
Right. Wait, did we get, uh, agreement on something?
No, we're, we're, we're butting heads still.
How dare us, so does that resolve the majority of, not every minor, tiny little concern, does that resolve the majority of the council's concern when it comes to the units and when they're going in, how?
And the types and.
And the types and whatnot. Does that, so, did you hear my question?
Sorry, no repeat, please.
So does this agree, is this what we're agreeing to, does that bring us to resolution of the majority of the concerns in regarding to units and where they end up? Particularly at the end of the project, where we wanna make sure that we don't, that, that we don't have them all just thrown in at the end.
It does for me, yes.
Okay, uh, Sherry?
I, I probably shouldn't comment, because I have to go back to my premise from along, from the whole, the whole time, is that I feel like that it's way more dense than the rest of our city, so it's hard for me to say, yeah, that's great.
Okay.
I just, I just don't agree with the whole sentiment, right?
Okay, and that's, and that's totally valid, totally fair, and I don't think there's anything wrong with that particular sentiment, Steve, in regards to, uh, your concerns overall, in regards to density, to where it ends up, between this.
So, I, I, I'm gonna be careful how I answer this, so. Based on sixty-three hundred units, sixty-three hundred and thirty units, and the percentages as they are currently constituted or proposed, as far as the organization and timing and stuff with the units, I'm satisfied, put the timing in, I'll just put it that way.
Okay.
All right.
Assuming, assuming all that other stuff.
Okay, Jerry?
Give you a sim, similar answer, based on, I can't say I'm agreeing to anything we talked about tonight, I've had a good discussion, and I'm used to seeing what is put before us, yeah.
Okay, so, so.
We can't agree on any.
Well, and that, and that's, we're not technically, yes, but as far as what I can tell, the direction that you're, that we're giving as a body.
We have discussed each of those things, and I have said everything I need to tonight.
Awesome, so, that's what we, we would like to see Chase work out and bring back to us, so that we can start making actual decisions on that type of issue. In regards to the commercial, let's discuss that, where were we, where were we in regards to commercial?
Six fifty?
One point five nine. So, let, I wanna talk, let's not talk numbers, let's just talk concept first, and just see if we can.
That sounds like a tricky thing.
I know.
What, what we're proposing again, and it, there's different road scenarios that we have to kinda deal with, so this is gonna be one of those, if this, the. So this is gonna be one of those if this, then that, if not this, then that, right? And it's gonna have three different, at least, if this, then that. So we definitely like the concept and are willing to agree to a, a limited, like, what we're proposing is ten thousand square feet. We don't see this being, you're not gonna get a Smiths, this is not a location for a grocery store, that kinda thing. This is super boutique, maybe a neat little restaurant that's kind of a cool place. So again, we're, we're proposing like ten thousand square feet up here. So that kind of carries through in all three scenarios. The main one that we're hoping for is that, again, we end up with half of the intersection of U one eleven and one twenty six in this location. So we need to come up with an idea or a square footage number for this area and, and one for this. Then, then the concept comes in, if we don't end up with this intersection, that's when we start talking about these other two rings. Of saying, look, we're not gonna get the big stuff, now we're gonna look at more of the boutique, the more village and neighborhood type feel stuff where you get the nail salon, the coffee shop, the bagel store, and it's, because the grocery store, like I said, for this area is going to locate on this intersection, whether it's on us or off of us, it, this is where it's going. Harman's right now is constructing a new store in Daybreak. It's seventeen thousand square feet. The store, twelve, it's two stories, the store twelve thousand square feet, that's it. And five thousand square feet up above is offices and culinary classes, like classrooms and stuff. So.
It's a little, it's right by the lake, it's a little.
It's a neighborhood market.
Basically the same store in, uh, Holiday. Holiday, they built the same one as well.
My, my client of mine developed that property, so.
So we're definitely seeing a trend towards more people buying things online, or going and having, you know, their groceries delivered to them, or picking it up in the parking lot of the store. Amazon's got a warehouse down the street. We really, this is not a cop out. We really are seeing a huge shift. And I can speak from experience on Anthem, we're seeing a huge shift. We cannot get a legitimate sit down restaurant to go to Anthem right now. I'd love to get a Chili's or an Olive Garden or some, you know, something.
Hey, you know what? I love, I love Chili's. I will go eat a sit there anytime.
Now, I'm seeing this making a comeback.
Yeah, I like Chili's too. I like Olive.
I'm just, I'm just saying, I'm talking about something.
No, 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 no.
Yeah, R and R.
There you go.
Okay, I know. So I'm just saying, it's really hard to get something more than the fast casual, because that's what people want right now, and so.
That, that's all residential supports. To get sit down restaurants, you have to have a daytime population. If we don't have employment centers, you're not gonna get those things. It's actually back to my whole thing about balanced plans.
We're not gonna have an employment center.
That's not how our residents do, because I still continue to constantly, and if you even look at Facebook, people still nag and constantly, nag is coming. Still are upset that we don't have enough sit down restaurants and all we have is that cheap. So our residents do require sit downs.
Yeah, I would love it.
And so will these.
Right.
And if people didn't stop going to the, to the restaurants, even during the pandemic, you could go in, sit down, and take your mask off. People, once they open them back up, they filled up.
Right. So sit down restaurants. It's actually been a shift even pre-COVID, um, it, this, the, I'm trying to think what they call it, but the more formal restaurants, the Outback Steakhouse, those types of places, they have all, the last several years have really stopped growing in a big way. And it's, um, just, I think we're getting more impatient, and it's kinda like, we like Cafe Rio, we just, we wanna, we wanna drive through, we don't wanna get out of the car anymore.
Tell you what. I'm gonna take Garage Grill's year one receipts to our retail recruiter, and we'll see what happens.
Yeah.
No, I think they would kill it.
Is going to be.
They're going to.
That would be the only, yeah.
They're gonna be so freaking busy.
So, so coming full circle, I, again, I just wanna reread what I had proposed, and let's, let's talk it out. So what I heard Steve say is that he wanted somewhere in the three fifty to four hundred range across the whole site. And what we had proposed was a hundred and fifty, and again, that was assuming we have the intersection. What, what we had proposed is a hundred and fifty here and ten thousand up here, so we're at a hundred and sixty. So we need to come up with some sort of number that we can agree to there. Um.
Why don't we just stay on that one for a minute?
Okay, we had a consultant, one of our consultants gave us a two hundred thousand square foot number, and another one gave us a hundred and fifty five, right?
So that's three hundred and fifty.
No.
Each consultant.
Right, the, the city's consultant gave you a number of two hundred thousand. So I, I think we've kind of identified a pocket, so again, maybe we need to be a little bit more proactive, maybe.
Here's my question.
Okay.
If in five years I do another study and it says four hundred and fifty thousand, are we gonna increase it by two hundred and fifty thousand in the quarter?
Again, this is a minimum, not a cap, right? So if there's demand for it, why would I not do it?
He makes more money off of commercial than anything else.
Why would I?
Housing is the.
It's not what we're seeing.
Hou- housing is where the money's at.
Cause to Bruce's point earlier, if you don't preserve that space, then it will be.
Right.
So.
Not quite what I said, but.
Let, let me, let me articulate it this way.
Try it. I said it wrong.
Harriman and its history, and I'm, I'm not the original, um, source of this thought here, so I'm, I'm not getting somebody else's thought, but. Ha- Harriman's history is really good, is we build all the houses, and then they build all the commercial across the street from our houses that we built.
Right.
Right? Mountview Village, you know, the Smiths up there, and I don't need, like, that's, so we do really good. And without some commercial component of this, we're gonna do the same thing. We're gonna be a whole bunch of houses, so somebody else can come in across the street and put in all the commercial, because all this residential will support that. Um, I, I just don't think that's, I, I, I don't think that's a good plan.
I, I don't want that.
Um, and I know you don't. But I also know that you're an impatient in terms of wanting to get the land developed. You don't wanna wait. Was it fifteen, fifteen, twenty, thirty years is what you said?
About thirty on most of the, most of Harriman. There was, there was, uh, Highland had one corner that developed for twenty five years. The difference here is, this is the corner. Like, when we talk about Highland and Alpine, uh, if you go, if you go put a pin on where the furthest east location of commercial is, and then go to the mountain, you're miles. Here, this is the mountain, this is the corner. So I really don't think it's a, I like Highland and Alpine, I don't think that's even a reasonable comparison.
The whole town of Cedar Hills is to the east of the, they had the, what was called the four corners intersection there? And for years, the, there was one corner of the four corner intersection developed, and it was a Smiths. And the rest of the four corners sat vacant for god knows, and still one of those corners I think is vacant.
So I just wanna, I, I'm just, I'm not trying to be unreasonable, I'm just trying to come up with a number. So I, again, if we're talking about this area here, these two areas, I guess we can, let's try and take the easy one. Is, is ten thousand square feet enough to, in your opinion, in this area? Because i- if there's not any further connection, I, I think that's a really, a pretty good number. Again, if we end up with a hotel, then that number gets blown out of the water.
What if there is a connection, and we didn't preserve any commercial for our connection there?
I'm sorry, what's that?
What if there is a connection? You said there's no connection. What if there is a connection and we didn't preserve any?
So the problem is, is that.
Oh, sorry.
This is, the, 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 cause I think you're asking a really good question. Normally, we have zoning tools that plan for it. It's not how many square footage or what's gonna go there, it's, we want commercial in this area. We don't, we don't really have that tool in this development, right? That's, that's not how this is gonna work. So the only tool that we have, the only thing we can do is say, we wanna have this much square footage of space. I mean, I, I guess we could turn it into acreage, but that doesn't necessarily mean square footage either, right? I, I mean, there's, there's different ways to do it. If we wanna get off of the square footage and we wanna turn it into an acreage thing, which preserves a certain amount of space for commercial in the future, I mean, we can have that discussion instead. Um, but I think that's the, the conversation we're trying to say is, we, we need to preserve commercial. We, we've gotta find a way to do that. I know that you only think it's two hundred grand, but as a city, we'd like to plan for a lot more than that. And, and. But what Ryan's. So many of the things we get planned that are really good and sweet commercial places, they put school on it.
So I got two things on that one, just to noodle on, um, to that point, the studies are done on this piece in Harriman, correct? The studies you wrote.
Yeah.
Brokers. So it doesn't include any of the land to the north that would feed into it as well.
You mean on the Kennicott property? Yeah, because we don't know where that'll be.
So that's just kind of point number one. Point number two, yep, while these places take ten, twenty, thirty years to build out, everything on fifty six hundred was completely blank for, uh, however long the city's been around, right?
Twenty years.
Twenty years, when I first came into office, it was all still, there was, they had, they had bookends, the gas station, and the subway. And that was like it, right? And people was talking about zoning, zoning, said, just cause you have it zoned, doesn't mean it's gonna be there tomorrow, has to build around it. But if it's not zoned, it can't be there. Now it's all filled in, now it's, you know, five, it took twenty years, twenty five years. If I'm not mistaken, this M D A is contemplated to take how long to build out?
Um.
I think twenty seven years or something is what the total.
And then it has automatic renewals.
Somebody said to me in the hallway earlier that, but this, none of us will even be around by the time they, they get to even the back half of it. It seems to me that there's plenty of time for this to be built out to preserve some space that would support it.
So I always wanna respond to that. The difference about fifty six hundred, fifty six hundred west and this, again, we're talking about this westmost corner.
All right, that was just here, you can take, as example. I get that, that there's a cost to leaving it there, it's more economical to just build it as you go, but that's how we get what Steve is talking about. So this is really a well.
Years. Okay, so the, the, there's only, wow, there's more than one. The main difference between this location and fifty six hundred, fifty six hundred west is there is no more land. I mean, unless God shows up and creates it, it isn't there.
I'm not concerned about, I'm not concerned about that location. That's pretty good, making holes.
They're making holes, but they ain't making flat stuff.
So we're just trying to focus on this location first, but again, my, that's my point is, and to your point over here on Kennicott, let's, again, the scenario we're discussing is that we only get half the intersection. Well, they're certainly gonna put commercial on their side of the intersection as well. So.
Which, which does alleviate some of the services.
Right.
Potentially em- employment, but not balanced economy revenue.
That side of the road, that, that Kennicott side of the road would be a great spot for, you know, a charter school.
Not if it ends up in Harriman, I don't think you'll say that.
Nope, sure won't.
Yeah.
So the.
So.
Go ahead. Oh, I was just gonna say, Ryan's put a, a couple of numbers out on the table, which is a hundred and fifty, uh, at the intersection and, and ten over here. If that's not enough, then what's the city's number? I mean, four hundred is, is, is too high, uh, uh.
But would we not be more creative, do something like we did with the, I hate to say the automall property, but it, and if then, then this, and maybe it's not square feet, but like you said, acreage in a given area that should have that potential. And if not by whatever date, then it can go to hassle.
We, we moved to square footage because that's what staff was talking about as opposed to acreage. We'd started talking about acreage, uh, a month ago, and, and, and people decided to talk about square footage instead. So we moved off the acreage discussion and went to square footage, because that's what people were concerned about, was the usable nature. Because again, the maverick, well.
Concept.
Well, but the maverick, for example, is, you know, a lot of, a lot of square, a lot of acreage, but not very many square footage. So, uh, you, you gotta sort of pick your poison here. It's extraordinarily difficult to write, so we're when we, we went to the square footage, the proposal was a hundred and fifty plus ten, if you want, if.
I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not, I'm not arguing square, square footage or acreage, I'm saying make it whatever you want. The concept is, what about a phase out, a time period?
No, we're talking about, but we're talking about it permanently. We're talking about guaranteeing that that will be there, a hundred and fifty.
That's, I mean, that, that number should be there, no matter what.
I don't, then I.
Are you saying if we wanted a higher number?
We wanna hold out more.
And then.
Right, and if, and if by whatever time it's not feasible, write it however we want, then, so if it's Steve's four, what did you say, three fifty, four hundred? For whatever that higher number is, we want, we wanna hold that out as part of it, for whatever date, right? And if it, if it's not feasible, it doesn't have to miss way.
Every five years, reduce the requirement of.
I don't know.
Of, like, I.
Again, concept, there's smarter people that can figure that out.
Ryan, what's your, in, in the way you've got this kinda laid out in your phasing to, to start, obviously, on the east and then move down and, and around in, um, that area to again, get the rooftops before that, what's your at least anticipated timeline to get to that point?
You're saying to get back where we start working on this?
Yes.
Well, so first benchmark is the state's gotta get, you know, the road constructed, which is three to five years, is what we're being told. So our order of development would be to come in and start here and work our way. We would kind of come right in here, but we'd spin around that, and that would more or less stay, you know, again, we may get in here and do some of this, but this area generally, you'll start to close in on a little bit, but we'll have to spin around it and create the upstream people to go downstream and shop there. So I think you're, I think you're probably ten, I mean, again, ten years, maybe seven, I mean, it really depends on the market.
Uh, hey, it looks like Michael might have a question or input. Jason and I were talking about this topic earlier. We knew, of course, this was gonna be a big issue for the council. Um, I'm wondering if we could actually do an all of the above. What if we had a minimum commitment, uh, maybe closer to the number you've been outlining, Ryan? But then we have what Jared's been talking about, some kind of clause where we're saying, okay, we're gonna swing for the fences, maybe that's the three hundred and fifty thousand. And then over time, we're willing to look at drawing that down if the marketplace doesn't come. But we have a floor. We're not gonna go below something, this number. So maybe there's a kind of a combination. The other thing I'm a little bit concerned about.
You said it much better than.
Yeah, I, I would like to see if there might be, I think part of this is, we wanna have some development of commercial throughout the course of the project, right? And I would suggest even reserving the land, which should be awarded or credited. If, if, and, and maybe Chase at something we could work on with, with Bruce, but maybe it's kind of an all of the above. I think these are all really good ideas. We set the.
So you're saying even if they haven't.
We start with a ceiling.
Built a square footage benchmark, they reserved a certain acreage, and they could move on, and then that acreage stayed commercial was reserved.
I think that's where you could actually use the best of all of these ideas.
And the reason I asked the, the question, Ryan, was really getting at that is, is if that's gonna take ten years and we look at putting, say, a threshold, that, a, a clock on it that will start to reduce that is, what's realistically what that clock be?
Yeah.
I mean, I think, I think if you're gonna take ten years to even real, potentially ten years to get to the point where you have everything around it, to be able to really start focusing on that, does that then mean that?
You start to, you start.
Fifteen years is your threshold, when you start.
Start the clock at phase three.
Well, I mean, you could do it. Again, I'm just trying to.
That's actually not a bad threshold, because.
But I like, I like Michael's idea a lot too, that the longer, I think, maybe you hold out on developing some of that area and something other than a commercial slash retail use, you know, and, and preserve that for a little bit longer, that that should count for something as well. I, I really do like that idea.
You know what, I, I, here, here's, here's what I, I see, and I, I think as we're going back and forth and having questions about what are we asking for them and what are we getting from them, right? We're asking them to hold on to commercial land, like, they're, they obviously, as Steve pointed out, they, they asked very, you know, they've, they wanna get developed, they wanna get, uh, they wanna get paid, right? Like, that's completely reasonable. We also want, when we look at open space, we wanna say, hey, look, like, you know, we don't wanna, you know, we, we want you to, to give us this open space, right? We want you to improve these trails, those kind of things. We're asking them to hold off on land, they're asking us to get credit for that steep grade that they're putting a trail on. You know, for me, that seems like a, a reasonable back and forth to say, all right, look, you're gonna help us with commercial, we're gonna give you a little bit something and, and maybe not fight you quite so hard on that, that graded on, on the open space. To me, that's a way to help resolve some of the conflict when we have the open space, that we're also possibly getting some, some benefit to the city on reserving the commercial space long term. That's a thought to me, I don't know if they're open to it or not, I have not talked to that. But to me, that seems is a way that we're now looking at, hey, how can we benefit each other? And not just, how can we, you know, how can we squeeze every little, you know, thing we can?
So can I?
Speak for yourselves, I like, I like to.
Well, I like to squeeze everything I can too.
So can I, can I just throw out a suggestion, and?
Yeah.
At least in terms of some numbers, but I think the language to help shore it up would have to be something that Bruce and Chase would have to work on, something.
Chase would have to work on, something along the lines that we've talked about here, but. Again, just, if we wanna get to a starting point to start talking about something. If we say four hundred thousand is really the goal. And that's kinda the, we wanna hold that much for X amount of time. Again, we kind of figure, we have to figure out what that timing is. Let's say four hundred thousand is what obviously we're aiming for, and we figure out some parameters of how to hold that. And that, again, provided that we get the intersection, four hundred thousand, two hundred thousand for a, for a bottom. As we negotiate that down or is that times down to two hundred?
It's two, that one of yours said two thousand and, and ours.
Our said two hundred.
So, again, shoot for the moon, put some parameters in there, give you some credit for holding on to that, figure out what that language is to help protect that and that timing. Two hundreds are, are floor, the, what we really wanna say, again, provided we get the intersection, and we do a little bit. Now, I was gonna say, maybe we could even look at something similar out there, but again, if you get a hotel, that kinda throws, that blows everything out of the water. And I would love to see that out there, but, um, honestly, I think that ten to twelve thousand is, is really realistic out in this area. Again, knowing that if you do get a hotel, that changes that drastically and immediately and, and blows that out of the water. And I think that that's something that will just, will look more realistic over time, but I don't know, what's your thoughts on that?
I think, I think we're on, I think that could work, but it all comes down to the, how long, what, you know, what's the time?
Yeah, and the timing.
Right?
And again, I don't know that we can sit here.
We start at thirty years, and if you go beyond that, you start cutting it down, you know? Five thousand every year after that, I, I think it's very.
You know, I, again, based on the anticipated timing, and I don't wanna necessarily lock us right into something. I want it to be a little bit of fluid based on what the economy dictates and, and the development schedule and all those things, cause obviously that's gonna be very fluid. But I think that there's, I think that these two guys can come up with some, some language that helps incentivize you guys to hold on to that for a little bit of time. I don't know if that's fifteen, I don't know if that's seventeen, based on some development parameters, but then it starts to scale down as things. Potentially don't happen out there, and, and we have a, a bottom of somewhere around two hundred thousand that we're, that is the, the bottom floor that we go to.
Okay, so let me, let me say it slightly different, see if, see if this will work. What if we agreed to two hundred thousand square feet, but it's across the project? So, if I do put a restaurant or hotel and I end up with twenty thousand square feet up there, then it would come off of that. So, we have a, we're saying, overall, the goal is that we're gonna do a hundred and ninety here and ten up here. But if we get more up there, right, it, we've, we've accomplished the same thing, which is to get people up there, people working, job centers. So, it's two hundred thousand, it's really across the project is what we're saying, rather than maybe you can find just one area.
But you're saying that is the floor, we're obviously wanting to start at something.
Well, okay, so that's what I'm saying is two hundred thousand is, is, I mean, again, I don't, I just, I don't know, Bruce, what's your?
I think we should talk outside for a sec, I'm, so.
Cause anyone, they might go, oh, that little corner works really good.
I like the two hundred thousand across, across the project. Again, are you just proposing that that just basically be the flat, the flat minimum? And, and whatever goes over that, potentially goes over that in the development, kinda back to where you originally were, is that what you're throwing out?
Easier, well, it's definitely easier to figure out how to deal with.
Absolutely.
The other one, it's like, how do you, how do you dissolve square footage over time? You're not dissolving acreage over time, so.
It's easy, but how?
So, I'm, yeah, so I'm gonna suggest that we take a, a, a five minute break, um, I know it's already.
Let, make it ten if you.
Before you go, let me throw out one more idea.
That's why I said five.
We are, we have, um, sought a proposal for a feasibility study for an art center. For Herman, so that's as far as we've gotten. We still have to fund feasibility study, then we'll have to figure out work and figure out how to pay for it. We're a long ways away from that. We have, um, a potential five acre parcel in another development that could be used for that if we, if that was a feasible place. Um, there may be some other places that are more feasible.
Is this indoor outdoor?
Sorry, like an amphitheater or?
No, like a, like a theater.
Performing arts.
Performing arts center, yeah. If, if the feasibility study were to determine that this is a reasonable area out here for it to be, you know, maybe in the town center. Close to these bigger intersections or something, um. I, I would be willing to say something like. If, if that comes out and you donate the land for that or something like that, we might give you extra credit for the square footage of that. Does that make sense? So, if it's a thirty thousand square foot theater, we might give you sixty thousand square foot credit. Towards the commercial space, does that make sense? Or if there was an employer that you brought in that employed over a hundred people or a hundred fifty people or something like that, we would give you extra. Credit towards the commercial of that. The reason is, is because we're talking about, we need an employment center, we need, you know, so, some of these civic uses. We need some amenities out there, we need some of those things. I think if we can find a way to deliver on some of those things, maybe we need a little less. Okay, uh, just some, some consideration, I don't know what the rest of the council thinks about those things, but.
I also think that if we're including buildings for fire, please, museums, public, public municipal buildings, like a library, those kinds of things. If we're gonna count those to commercial, it supports asking it to be a higher number.
I would agree.
Because you got, you're gonna have to have higher, you know, you have to, if those are buildings you're gonna have to have.
Higher, I mean, there's no reason to include.
And, and we're including, we're including that, so if you're gonna ask those to be included in the number.
The reason we put that in there, that those would be counted, is cause we were asked to put that in there by a couple of members of the city.
Thank you for your feedback.
And the intent, from what we've understood, is the commercial isn't just about tax revenue, but creating job centers, which I've heard over and over tonight.
It is like, like, like a hospital.
Hospital of a certain size short, but, I mean.
Civic, the civic things, like either those, you know, library or police station or fire station, it's like.
So, a service thing at a, at a municipal, a municipal building, right? Well, that's a different thing.
Alright, so we're gonna take a quick break and we'll be back in just a few minutes.
Okay, are we almost done though?
I think they were gonna.
They need to, they're trying to.
Okay, Jackie? Okay, so, uh, it sounds like we might have a little bit of another, uh, discussion point here, so. Bruce is gonna go over maybe their proposal and how to stand out and see what we got.
So, what I, what I did was I tried to listen to what. What I did is I tried to listen to what everybody was saying, and, uh, and I took part of what Mike was talking about. And it seemed like you guys had two concerns. One, number one, was to protect some areas for the commercial to go for a longer time. And number two was to get a floor, a, a floor and a hope for. Uh, recognizing that time will move both of those things, so I tried to blend those into a hybrid. Uh, and again, uh, this is, this is a concept, I don't expect the numbers will be exactly what anybody wants. Uh, and, and I'm, and I'm doing this sort of on the fly. So, what I, what I thought I heard was, uh, a sort of a wishes and a dreams number, I know Steve, you were higher than that. But I put like three hundred as a wishes and a dreams number, and two hundred thousand as the number that developer wanted to do. Which is actually higher than what they wanted to do, so this is sort of starting out as three hundred for, um, I'm gonna say fifteen. I just said fifteen years is the, is the hope for, but if it doesn't happen in fifteen years, it drops down to two hundred thousand. So, that's, that's that, but then the question is, how do you preserve that space for that, uh, that, that amount of acreage? So, what we thought about was, where's the laser pointer, of kind of hybridizing the, oh, I got it in my pocket.
Can I do that?
Hot, yeah, exactly, hybridizing, so what we, what we're proposal is, is that we would protect twenty acres. In this area here. Hybridizing, so what we're, what we're proposal is, is that we would protect twenty acres in this area here. Protect it for twen- for twenty acres, we'd protect the twenty acres for ten years. At the end of ten years, if we hadn't developed it, it would protect down to ten and then it would protect down to fifteen.
Fifteen, fifteen.
Fifteen and then ten.
Thank you. So five every five years after ten?
Yeah, five every five, five every five and those would drop down. Now, if we get, if we develop land anywhere, we would get credit for that, so the acreage would release on a pro rata basis. So if we've got a commitment for, again, we'd have to write this out, if you've got a commitment for three hundred thousand and you developed fifty thousand of it, that's a sixth. So part of this commitment would get released pro rata as it develops, because that only makes sense, because you don't need to protect the land for commercial, because you've developed the land for commercial. So this is all under scenario number one, which is the intersection where we all hope it is, at the node right there. So, and again, this gives us the ability to develop anywhere we want to. So wherever we developed, if it happened to be out here with a hotel or something like that, or if it happened to be over here with a, a C store or something like that, or if it happened to be over here with, I don't know, a nail salon or something in the ground floor retail of a, of a vertical mixed use, those would all come off on a pro rata basis, these preservation lands. Now, we could add, but I didn't do this, we could add some kind of double credit for a particularly favorable or preferential version. I mean, you could get double credit for an art center, you could get double credit for.
An employee over a hundred and fifty.
Exactly, some other version of that and some, something like that. So that's the, that's a basic outline of a concept. Now, we could write that up fairly easily. And, and the same thing would essentially apply to the other two scenarios. For example, in scenario number two, where the intersection of one eighteen, of one eleven and one twenty-six is down here, but one eleven still goes forward. What we'd do is we would preserve, in this case hypothetically, we commit to, again, fifty thousand square feet and we'd preserve five acres for it at probably this node and this node. So we'd preserve those and the same thing would apply, as development happened, the preservation would go away pro rata. And the third option would be, of course, the horrible option, which is the road comes down here and the actual ability to develop commercial is really, really reduced, in which case you'd probably reserve basically an acre here, an acre here, an acre here against thirty thousand square foot total, again, with the same pro rata kind of credit. That's the theory to attempt to square the circle conceptually. I don't know if it works, I, I hope I'm not too tired and completely screwing it up, but it's something that we'd sort of thought about as a compromise before to meet what I think everybody's legitimate interests are.
Chase, do you see any immediate red flags that throw up from a legal standpoint in regards to this?
No, I think this would be pretty easy to draft. No, I don't have any issues with it. It's a policy question at this point, right?
I guess I would ask why the three hundred thousand would like start to reduce after fifteen years, but we're only preserving the acreage for ten years with that.
Not only preserving the acreage for ten years, the acreage preserves for a total of, some of the acreage preserves for a total of twenty-five years.
I guess I just mean that it, it starts dropping at ten years when we think that this one would be ready to develop for about ten years.
And, and that number could change. I mean, if you're starting that number at fifteen years, that's a different, that's a policy issue. You could say it starts at twenty for the first fifteen years and then drops down to fifteen years, fifteen acres at the fifteenth year. That's, those are.
Are you saying that the twenty acres is above the two hundred thousand?
No, it's, no, it's where the.
It's the physical site.
It's the physical site for the reserved square footage.
Another way of looking at this, how I'm working it out in my brain is.
It's a zone.
Your three hundred thousand square feet requirement, yes.
Thank you.
It doesn't fill the whole twenty acres.
It's creating a twenty acre zone.
Right.
That's reserved.
In fact, as it decreases, your fifteen acres still would fit the three hundred thousand square feet.
Easily.
Your ten acres would still fit the three hundred thousand square feet and your five acres would still fit it. It's just that the acreage that's being preserved for that three hundred thousand square feet is being reduced over time.
Correct, and you can still put that acreage as well on the, on the ground floor of multi, of multi, a mixed use, for example. So you can still, you can still play with it in other ways, but I heard a couple of you saying you wanna make sure that there's physical land preserved for this. And this scenario preserves physical land and it also provides the square footage that you were talking about. So I tried to hybridize this, sort of, I mean, Mike, Mike said it and I'd sort of was thinking about it, but I didn't wanna bring it up until we had a chance to talk about it. And Ryan and Kirk are okay with it, depending upon, you know, how.
So without, without commenting on the specific numbers, blah, 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 we can, we can have that debate. A couple of concepts that I think would be relevant here. One is, is that let's, let's say you hit it out of the park and there's huge demand at this intersection and you're gonna build three hundred thousand square feet in ten years, right? It just goes crazy and you have markets and hotels and Sam's Club and the whole world.
Now, what if you were a firstborn child?
Just saying. What I'm saying is if all of that happens.
Give me mine.
I still think that there needs to be some minimum amount of service slash thing in each one of these other nodes.
That's an easy thing, right?
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
So even if you happen to build it all in the first phase, you still must build at least a minimum in each one of the other phases, just because that's an element of each one of those centers, right?
Well, if we do three hundred right there, then that middle one, I was saying, we probably would have a.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe, maybe not in the Olympia, but in the foothills in the west bench, there would be a.
At least ten of them.
A minimum requirement.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah, for sure, nothing in the Olympia one.
So Olympia, Olympia, Olympia was only if this one went.
Yeah, totally.
The theory was if we built in this one, then we'd only build this one as well, because this one is gonna be close enough to this one, so this is sort of the area that it would build. So that was the original theory, was that if we built this one out, then this would.
I'm, I'm willing for those to be different amounts in each village center.
So ten, eight?
Some, I don't know, I don't know what the number, what I'm saying is, is that in the design guidelines, we say that those intense land uses are gonna be focused around that kind of design. So I, I just can't abandon that element of those.
So Steve, so Steve will agree, the agreement would be to put those, we wouldn't reserve dirt in here, but we'd agree to commit to.
Still to a minimum.
We, we commit to ten and eight within quarter mile of these nodes. Ten over here, eight within this node, and then the home run hopefully over here.
Whatever it is, we're gonna commit to those ten and eight.
This is probably mixed use, right?
And I don't, I don't know what the right numbers are, I'm not committing those, I'm saying, but conceptually, yes, that's what I'm talking about. Might be a standalone, two thousand feet on the corners, but mostly they're gonna be mixed use in the basement.
So again, what we were proposing, I don't have my.
They're commercial, that's it.
Some of the forms require that, right Eric? I mean, in order to have a mixture, apartment on a corner in a village center, it has to be over a commercial corner. Some of those uses require that.
Yeah, it's too late for me to.
Yeah, yeah.
Agreed. And by the way, I ran these, I didn't make these numbers, I didn't pull these numbers out of my head. I asked Eric to say if these are typical numbers that would be supported by that kind of acreage. And it's a rough, because you recognize that, for example, a two-story office building doesn't take up anywhere near as much footage, footprint on the ground or a three-story office building as a maverick. I mean, a maverick, you get four thousand square feet of gross usable area and take up a full acre. If you've got a twenty thousand square foot, three-story building, you take up two acres, but you, the ratio is like five to one, ten to one. So you're sort of having to ballpark and average these kind of things, so that's all we, Eric and I tried to ballpark and average those quickly.
Right, and it, and it, it's a reserving a space that's conservative, so it's a traditional kind of commercial center type development. If it's more of a mixed use, we won't need that much space, but we can definitely get the square footage in. This'll make sure that if it is a.
Standards.
Corner maverick, then, yeah, standard stuff.
We tried to make sure that you were getting enough that you felt comfortable, that we were preserving the space. Not the whole four corners intersection at Highland and not for thirty years, because that's just stupid. But if you preserve it, a smaller corner, for a shorter period of time, that's a reasonable compromise for everybody, so that's what we tried to do. And we can fix, we can, we can come back and play with some numbers and write this concept up, and it's not that hard to write this concept up. And we can play with some numbers.
So the question now comes to the council, as far as what's given us, as a concept, not numbers yet, but as a concept, do you guys have issues with this concept?
No, that concept.
Okay, so.
There's always that.
So.
It's open space too.
So, concept, it sounds like we're fine on. In regards to rough numbers, let's talk about the, the actual, the actual footage. So two hundred thousand, I think we've all kind of are good with it as a base. Is three hundred good for the, the dream, or are we looking for something different?
I, I would much prefer a higher number and then give you double credit for something, so that we have a common interest in fixing something.
What would be?
Does that make sense?
What would be your number?
I think an employer is a huge thing, right? If we were to get a, a big employer that provided, you know, a hundred and fifty jobs or something in our community, that's a big deal. That's a hundred and fifty cars going the other direction, takes a little pressure. I, I would be willing to get double credit for that, right? But not from three hundred.
So where, where would you, where would you wanna start?
If we're gonna do any double credit of any kind, I would, I think we need to start at three fifty.
Three fifty, but double credit for some sort of substantial civic, whatever, or a, or an employer over a hundred and fifty.
Oh, employer over a hundred and fifty.
You see, were you saying one employer over a hundred and fifty, or a building that would employ over a hundred and fifty? I think you'd be wanting to be saying a building that would employ over a hundred and fifty, because most office buildings don't have a single employer. They would have, you'd have three stories of twenty thousand square feet, which is gonna give you a hundred and fifty people, but you're gonna have twenty different employers in that building.
You just mean a hundred and fifty jobs?
Yeah, I'm talking about a hundred and fifty, I'm saying a hundred and fifty jobs in the building.
Could you just call it an employment center that has at least a hundred?
Yeah, I'm okay with that.
Hundred and twenty jobs. It's not specifying what business, type of, any of that, but an employment center that has X and F.
A, a single employment center, let's just put it that way.
Okay. Or unique employment center, some, Chase, the word that appropriate.
Yeah, we, I just didn't want a hun- a single employer. I mean, you can get a, look, it's a, in the fancy world, it's an Amazon substation warehouse, right, for the southwest area, and it's got three shifts of people, you know, and you've got.
It's got six, no, it's got six robots for God's sakes.
Just, just.
They count robots?
Right, I mean.
Robots are people too.
Those are the kind of things I think would be, that, that's such an amenity that we have a common interest, we're still gonna pursue those things as a city. If we can work together and find a solution for that, get those numbers down.
So as far as the credit on the years, or on the acreage on the years, so are we good with a fifteen, it drops down? A fifteen years, it goes from three fifty to two, two hundred?
And you're anticipating this at ten years?
I really don't know, I can say yes to that, I mean, the answer's the same as what they said, this is a starting point.
I know, I'm trying to provide some guidance to staff.
How about we relate it to a phase?
The trouble is, relating it to phase is extraordinarily difficult to write if you tie it, Steve.
Well, because the thing is, is that if you build all that out in ten years, and there's no commercial.
That's where you reserve the acreage.
That's where you reserve the acreage.
I'm reserving the acreage.
But it, but it drops to ten years, not number and you can change it.
I, I know, but it's dropping.
That's why I'm asking, that's why I'm asking the council, is.
Well, here's the other, but the other side is, what if it takes you twenty-two years to build out before you can get.
Still have the obligation to put two hundred thousand in, I just haven't reserved the acreage. The pacing requirements for the commercial is really hard, but we've talked about that. It doesn't do you or us any good to go build a vacant office building. It, it's not field of dreams.
I heard it, if you build it, they will come.
I know, I know, I, I heard that too.
I, I think that's actually a maverick now.
Michael, did you hear some input?
Sorry, I'll wait.
The location of that twenty acres that we're trying to preserve is almost as important as the twenty.
I agree.
And I said it's within a quarter, it's within a quarter mile radius of the main, of the, of the U one eleven.
Which is, this is a quarter mile radius, right?
It's within that circle.
Within that circle, and then for the, for opposite scenarios, two and three, they're gonna be within a quarter mile of those other nodes.
And maybe even looking at specific intersections.
Well, that's why, that's why, that's why I put the nodes.
That's why he's got the nodes in there.
We could reduce the radius, we could reduce it to an eighth of a mile.
You guys work, identify the locations, identify it, line up the numbers, whatever those years are, and make your proposal digested this week.
But, but are you, are you, I mean, what you're seeing up here is nothing's gonna, is giving you like massive, like I'm gonna vomit if this comes back to me. We're not telling staff something that they're gonna go off of sort of these numbers, and if we say we want something different when we come back in three days, that's not for our staff.
Again, and everything else is exactly the way it is, I'm not gonna vomit on this.
Okay.
And, and that's.
I'm just saying, it's in a vacuum, right?
I'd like to avoid vomit.
Like this, this particular by itself, sure.
I, I just, I wanna set staff up for success and I don't wanna put them in a situation where they said, well, this is what you told us, this was what was on the board.
And it probably isn't a huge deal just to change the number or something for you.
Probably not, but I would rather start with what we want.
Send, send the structure up is what the more important.
Yeah.
Changing the numbers. Again, or, or, you know, instead of fifteen years, sixteen years, or thirteen years, eighteen years.
I don't wanna be drastically off on our numbers though.
That's, that's my point, is I don't want.
I think we can tweak those potentially, but I think we need to have a good idea.
So, I know we had a comment about the twenty acres in ten years, and then somebody said something about fifteen.
Well, just because it coincides with the three hundred thousand for fifteen years.
So fifteen is what we're looking at, right?
Yeah, I think that's how I would write it, I'll propose it, but you can alter it differently on the board.
I, I think the concept, we, we, we're, we're gonna with the concept, we'll, we'll massage the numbers.
Okay, there might be a little massaging one way or another, but, okay.
I just tried to square the circle fairly, that's all, recognizing everybody's got legitimate interests and I always try to play it straight up.
So the only, so at that, we're, we're looking for some staff to bring something back to us and that, and I think you guys have what you need. The only other issue that we have to deal with then is the open space. That's the last thing that we've gotta deal with and at that, then we're, I think we're ready to get something formalized, put together for.
I think specifically on the open space, we were only kind of left with talking about maybe programmable parks.
Right.
Well, I think there's two questions. What, what credit do you give for non-buildable space and, and programmable parks? Those are the two remaining questions. Your point was you needed, you wanted to count all of them. I, I was asking, I was asking, or just kind of sidebar.
All of it at twenty percent instead of somewhat twenty-five percent, it was different.
So, I was just asking Eric, how much really unbuildable space is there? Like, where's the?
Depends on how much steeping you go.
Right, so, I mean, there's, there's, you know, this really steep slope right here, you know, that's, you're not gonna build a house on that, right? Okay, so, but the total acreage of this is probably not that great. I mean, it's a hillside by this deep, like, I don't know.
It's hard to tell.
It's high, it's tall, but in, you know, in depth and width, it's, it may not be, it might be, you know, I don't know. All of this and maybe there's a little piece over here, what, I mean, it, it might not even be ten acres, right? So if it's, if it's ten acres of buildable and it's a huge deal that we, you know, we don't wanna give full credit for the buildable space, we're talking seven acres of open space. I mean, that doesn't seem like a deal breaker amount of open space here. So I, I, I'm not saying it has to be one way or the other, but I'd like to understand what the actual measurement is here, so we know what we're talking about. I guess we could be arguing a principle that has no material difference.
My line is always, it does, it only makes a difference if it makes a difference.
Exactly.
And, and, and my theory is this plan is, is pretty damn good as a plan, however you calculate it, and you should look at the calculations rather than arbitrary rules. You should look at the picture rather than arbitrary.
It's not an arbitrary rule, it's, it's, it's a policy that this council has adopted as how we look at open space, right?
I understand.
So if there's a way to reasonably apply that without being burdensome on you, I mean, that's the thing. Let's see how significant this really is before we.
Can I?
Beat each other up over it.
So, just a couple of thoughts. One is, yes, we could go in and grade that to make it all buildable, okay? One is, yes, we could go in and grade that to make it all buildable, okay? We could knock that ridge down. There are some really cool rock outcroppings and things along there that I think would be really cool to put a trail alongside. Some natural features that I think would be. I, I really, truly would be sad to, uh, go up there, just take a drive and go look at some of the cool rocks and stuff. I'm kind of a rock guy. So, I really don't want to do that, but yeah, if you said you get penalized if it's such and such, then fine, we'll fix it.
We'll flatten it.
I would just grade it out.
The five percent that you, that were, that would regret the twenty-five versus twenty, in that small amount. It would have tempted for you to grade all that out and do all the grading work to.
Sure, would I have to pay the same price per acre, whether it's a cliff or I flatten it out? My cost is identical for the land, they don't give me a, oh, no problem, I'll sell you to that, that at twenty-five percent on, you know, twenty-five cents on the dollar.
Buying it worth it all.
So, so when you say.
Here's the deal, if it's two acres of land, two acres of land may not be the same as the dirt moving cost, right?
That's, that was what I was.
Yeah, I, 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 I don't know, I'm just.
But again, I think we're saying the same thing, we wanna know what the number is.
Or here's the deal, if it's only two acres. There's no advantage just beating you up over it, right? I mean, let, let's just find out what that is, that's all I'm asking.
If we applied the, the same standard to this.
Right.
What would change?
What would change?
I see.
Yeah, I guess I'm just looking at and saying, your standard is a different zone, it's not in this zone as well. Just another thing to consider is, you're not breaking protocol, this is a different zone.
Right, but that's good to know that, cause we need to put that in that zone, cause then you can't work habits.
After, after this project, you split it, we can, we can add that. Thanks for bringing that up. So.
Well, so let's, I guess we need to talk, is that the last issue, or?
That's what I'm, I'm.
The other part is programmable park space. So what do you want?
What's, what you want, cause that, that's, that to me, in all honesty, is not.
Can Wendy talk to us? Just for a second, about the trail. I just want you all to realize that this is a regional trail system in coordination with other communities, right? Um, and I don't know how often, trails are the most requested thing that we get on every outreach thing that we do. People love their trails, so I don't want the importance of the trail system in our community to be diminished. Because of that. Do you know, do you see what I'm saying?
Wendy, can I say that I'm in agreement with you, that's why I'm asking for the number.
Right, great, I just wanted to give my opinion on that, because they are, um, very important to our community. And we are asked for them, for more trails more than anything else.
Wendy, how much were you involved in selecting locations for these, um, for these parks and?
There is a natural, and we find it with all parks and trails, right? There's a natural flow to the way things work. They, Eric did a, and I'm assuming you guys, um, laid, laid kind of the backbone structure out, and it makes sense. Um, while also being able to tie in. I've been meeting with South Jordan and Riverton, as Ryan said, about how our trails all interact and connect to one another. And I believe Michael was on a call with Regional Growth Committee today, that, that's one of their new initiatives, right? It's connecting trails across communities.
Creating a new green infrastructure regional coordination plan.
So, it's not just our section of the world, it's gonna be countywide, right? And so that's what we're really working towards. Um, and the thing that we didn't start with when we started talking about this was having the parks located along those trail systems, right? We want people to walk from park to park. It's kind of that concept of what we're trying to do at Juniper Canyon, where we're spreading out the playgrounds along the canyon, right? We want people to, to get those extra steps in to get to the next place. Um, so I, I just, I would be remiss if I didn't.
How in line is this plan with what we've done in the rest of the city?
For.
Just in regards to what the parks and their layout and how.
This is really similar, really similar to Rosecrest, right? With the trails and the park connectivity and how it all lines out. Um, I do know that there is a need for programmable parks, we hear it all the time, just like we hear the need for swimming pool.
And a pickleball court.
And a gun range.
And everything else.
Rugby.
Rugby.
Indoor mountain biking.
Indoor mountain biking?
Don't, don't laugh, it's Lauren's idea.
Someone else on planning.
And I just wanted to tell you, we have fifteen parks and just under fifty acres of programmable space right now. That we actively rent out to athletic clubs to practice. That includes some specialty things like baseball and softball, right? So you have to consider that, there's some specialty uses there, do we need more? Absolutely. When we contemplated the Parks Master Plan, we did not contemplate the density that's being proposed out there, right? So yes, we do need more active playing space. But what I also want you all to think about is, what are you willing to pay for? Not just the park that we're gonna build in conjunction with Danzy, but ongoing maintenance and operations of these parks. Trails are the cheapest maintenance we can do, right? And you get a big bang for your buck on trails. You're gonna pay for a ten acre park about a hundred thousand dollars annually in maintenance and operations. So you have to consider that as well, when you're considering what you want. That forty-three acre park, um, what did we see the estimate was on that, twelve-five?
Yeah, I think.
And that's just grass and land, that's just grass and water.
Was that on your Creek, Creek Ridge Park original?
And that was two thousand nineteen dollars, right? So I want that to be part of your thought process too, and yes, we do.
Well, it is, there's other places that pay that money, you know, my thoughts on that.
And I know you guys, you guys talk to you about that every year, and so that's why I'm bringing it forward, just to say, yes, these are all great things to have. And we want really unique amenities that draw people out and, and get them out using our parks and getting gas at our gas stations and eating in our restaurants. And spending all that money, but they also cost a lot of money, so you really have to consider that as well. Um, I don't know, I mean, we've talked a lot about it and, and. Tried to come to some resolution of what works, we've got a, a great flat fourteen acre park right there that's split with the Danzy project. Maybe if there was a little bit more on phase one, um, to kickstart it, maybe that is an option. The park that, and you should speak to what you're planning out here with the, the thoroughfare that's gonna ultimately collect. Sorry, ultimately connected to Daybreak into being a creek regional park in South Jordan. Um, we talked about doing a Patriot Park there with some, with a lot of references to American history. And possibly line that up with the cemetery. So there's a lot of things to consider there, but I, I, I think what you all wanna know, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is what do you want? What is your starting point, right?
Yeah, no, it's totally fair, I mean, and again, we have to recognize that the site, the topography is what it is. So when we talk about programmable, programmable space, you're, you're typical programmable, right? The football, soccer, baseball, all those types of things that need flat terrain. We need to really be looking generally beneath this line here. Because you can see the line start to get really a lot tighter, and we see these areas up in here, we, there's enough space, there could be some really neat. Uh, pump tracks and cycle parks, maybe a skate park and different things like that, where we can play into the topography. But what we need to talk about is, is really more in this area, if we need to make an adjustment. I think this park right now is showing at about five or six acres here. You've got this one here that's fourteen or fifteen-ish, kind of right in there. This one is not intended necessarily to be your traditional programmable, maybe frisbee golf or something like that, but.
No, no, oh, sorry, whoa, sorry.
I just didn't wanna get clutched started, it's already ten fifteen.
Okay, maybe not that then. So if we need to do something else or expand something, then we need to hear that, we, we haven't really known exactly. Where to hit this one exactly.
I guess I just, I get, for me, it would be helpful to understand at twenty percent. Is this, cause I just was told, you know, there's.
This isn't all, uh, this doesn't.
This is about half of the twenty.
Twelve percent of the twenty percent.
Okay, so. That doesn't include your HOA.
Correct.
And so how much of your HOA stuff, is that the rest of the eight percent?
Potentially, yes.
So this would be, this is everything, but excluding acres, right?
That comes to the city, we'd be responsible.
Yeah, it doesn't mean that something couldn't grow, right? Here, we're making a commitment to match acreage wise what they do. When we lay the roads out, if it works out better and we end up giving you an extra acre there, like, we're just making commitment to match, right? But again, as, as we get further down the road, I don't think you're gonna be upset if that were to happen, but. So that, that park on the very east end, this one right here, how big is that?
Five acres.
That's five acres.
But keep in mind. Five acres is what, two soccer fields, maybe?
That's the upper, it's three fields, it's the upper level of, of Butterfield.
Three football fields.
But it doesn't get you parking, right?
So you get two, you get two fields there with parking.
What would we need to do to make that three fields with?
Just, just the, not that part, that's just that part.
So would making that seven acres allow for three fields and a parking lot? So would that go, i- is that one of the things that would help this body see the, the programmable space they're looking for? Uh, in a, in conjunction with the other things that, cause that's, we're talking two acres, right?
We need to figure it so the rugby team can practice it.
Yeah, absolutely.
I, I guess my question to you earlier is kind of the same, it's like, or maybe I didn't ask. Um, if you're gonna put sixty-three thirty homes in here. Well, how much programmable space would you anticipate those residents need?
Do a little calculation here. But I also want you to think about, we don't anticipate the household size to be the size of.
Same size.
Yeah.
It's going to be smaller.
Yeah.
What we assume.
We're, well, we're already seeing, we're already seeing that.
It's already seen our household, our household size dropping.
The three as opposed to four and a half, yeah.
Instead of the, what, three-nine?
Three-nine, that's what was the four, yeah.
We were one point, we were the biggest in the state.
What's your household size?
I think we just, we, I think we just went off the state. Yeah. Two point five?
I thought it was three and a half.
Two point five, I think it's just kind of the state's. Yeah, we used to, for the traffic standards, in the county, we used to.
I say nationwide, it's like two point three.
Yeah.
You're not in.
So, so in regards to the programmable space itself, we've got what's going down I, N K. What is that other park called up on the east side, what do you call that one?
East side.
The east side park, great. The Chase and Tracy Park. So Chase and Tracy Park over there, if we add two extra acres to that, it gives us three programmable fields plus the parking lot. Or maybe we can even squeeze, squeeze in a bathroom, but that's a big ask. Um, but that gives us three fields, plus a lot, plus the fields we get down at the K Park. Plus everything we're gonna get up in the big park, uh, that's not on this property, plus all the trails. And it still is under their, their open space requirement. So now they're making that effort to mitigate the open space requirement issue. Alright, with specifically the programmable space issue that we have.
Okay, but the, the parking lot and bathroom also, that's.
That's the extra two acres.
Right.
Yeah, it's a lot of extra expense.
We have to do it.
Wendy already beat us up on that. If we, if any parks that are three acres or larger, we have to build a bathroom.
So they'd have to do it anyways, so they're already doing it, they're just basically adding more acreage so that we can get the third field up there.
Be done some different ways.
So.
You know, kinda, we can put something together.
So now we're looking at, what, five fields, five, six, seven fields in this area?
I just need to find that.
Well, I think you can get three there, but this park over here would have lots of space.
Yeah, so we're looking at five to, you know, five to ten fields in this project, plus everything we're gonna get up in the north.
Plus Creek Ridge is.
Exactly.
Huge, right, yeah.
So now we've got the programmable space that, you know, some, it's not gonna solve the entire pro- problem, but it's there, right, for use. And we still have the trail system, we're still under, they're still gonna have to put in more open space, so we're not, like. To me, what I see is I see that we're now finding ourselves in a place where for a couple extra acres, now we're kinda all seeing. You know, at least some of what we wanna see is, am I wrong here?
Mayor, Mayor, can I add one thing to that?
Sure.
A, a lot of those, you can't rent modern apartments without some amenitiesations in them. So an awful lot of the, uh, apartments are going to have things like pools and gyms.
Has all that stuff on site.
My point is they're all gonna have that, so, I won't say all, but.
If they're bigger, they're going to.
You don't rent modern apartments without an amenity package, uh, in them, it just doesn't happen.
So to answer your question, with, using the assumptions, cause we're all making assumptions right? You can count sixty-three thirty. I use the three point nine one household rate on my calculation, which is higher than we anticipate for there. You need ninety-one point eight two acres per our Parks Master Plan.
Programmable?
That's just park space period.
But how much of that would you anticipate needed to be?
I don't have that calculation.
Okay, and I was just curious.
I'm sure somebody has.
And keep in mind, we have to basically give you double that.
Yeah.
No, I understand, I just, I just wanted to know, and I'm not arguing that trails aren't good, trails are good. Trail connectivity is good, that's one thing I dislike about the way they developed the base that I live in is, there's no trails. So, so it's unfortunate that that wasn't pre-planned and things like that, but, um, I, um. I also believe that there's a need for programmable space. I ha- I hear it from my neighbors, it all constantly, how come these guys are here, how come they can't ever use this?
That park is, it's gonna be built early.
Early. With the road.
Making it larger. Uh, but it balances that out, that's, yes, that's more of what we're looking for.
Can I say one other thing?
I mean, that whole area has no parks, the cemetery is the only park.
Well, there's Creek Ridge.
Yeah, just up, that blue line is gonna be, yeah.
We've got a park right there.
Yeah, not, not that any of us know or we gotta have one, it's right, it's like several miles around, we're gonna access it. My, my point is that. Making that bigger does help balance it, cause you do have the seven plus the seven that's bigger there.
The mayor, the mayor, the mayor negotiated it out.
Makes sense.
You didn't see the stink eye? Here's the stink eye that the mayor did.
I did, and they said, yeah, we'll do it.
You didn't, nobody else saw the stink eye?
One other benefit to this actually increasing in size even more, um, is I heard there was a little storm event the other day. That may have rolled through that area, that would have helped intercept that, that would be right in the path of. But, but, but let's be clear about his liability there, sorry.
So.
What about those three in the middle there where it is dense, you said that's not those, that's, those aren't traditional, what is that?
It's Central Park. It's trees and walkways, it's closets.
Event center.
Gathering place.
That is the, that is the kinda area that I, that I'm personally concerned about in these, and that I see with these other apartment areas is. Although there's those amenities, like, there, there's the, the spillover effect, right? You gotta have a place to throw a frisbee or kick a ball or whatever.
Right.
It doesn't necessarily have to be a ball, full size ball field, but there's gotta be enough usable space for that.
I don't, I'm not gonna commit you to this, but I kind of thought, how rad would that be if Harriman were to do something kinda like what Sandy's been doing? They have a very linear park by their city hall with the flags around it. I mean, how cool would that be to, I mean, that would be a city park there.
It's a cool place, you, there's music festivals they do there.
Maybe farmers market, and it's gonna have families that are.
You do what Holiday does, they have their food truck Thursday, like you guys have out there.
Really?
I just said it, I just said it.
What are you doing away?
It's just like you guys have out, I just said like you guys have out there, your food truck parks are great, I wish you had these council meetings those nights.
Oh, we can change it Thursday.
I'm serious, your food trucks are great.
Alright, so, so. It sounds like we're a lot more comfortable with those. Sounds like Chase has some direction on how to get this wooded, what we wanna see. Do you, as a developer, have any more questions or concerns that we need to hash through? Well, I think we got, I think we got to the list, so.
And by the way, it was really helpful with Steve to send that list, uh.
Council members, do you have any other items that we need to hash out?
Not tonight.
Understanding they're gonna bring us something that we wanna, we're gonna start looking at to make decisions on, so I wanna make sure that we're clear that that's where we're at. Okay?
A decision on the twenty ninth, not next.
No, but, but this, this is the draft, we're gonna start working off for.
Process.
Yep, so, alright, with that being said, I'm open to a motion to adjourn. I'm pushing a second all favor.
You just, you, you missed eleven o'clock, I had over.